Evening, everybody. And if I could have your attention real quick. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I don't know. Okay. Thank you. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Before we start, I would like to ask Rabbi Bernstein to lead us in our invocation.
Yes, sir.
It's an honor to be able to represent Milton Fire and Safety Department in giving this invocation. I've been the chaplain here, starting for a couple of months. I just wanted to, as we start this meeting, call us to a sense of purpose together. One of the things that I have been able to experience and to learn, being at the fire stations, is that while we think of it as the moment that an emergency happens, that is when our fire and public safety are mobilized, the work really happens behind the scenes. The preparation and the ability to be ready, but also to be able to see things through for the long run. And that's true as well with our connections with each other. We don't just see each other and then know how to be kind, know how to be grateful. We have to work through that to understand. And that has to do with a recognition of our own gratitude for our own lives. So by the many names that we call God, and by the many ideas that we have that shape our lives, may we be able to experience our own lives with gratitude so that we may see each other with a sense of kindness. May it pull us together and never tear us apart. May our passions bring us to ends that are good for all. And in discussions, may we always have sight of what in our tradition, we end with a prayer that is given through the priests of the Israelite nation. May God bless you and keep you. May God shine God's face to you in kindness. May God lift God's face to you and make for all of us and all of you, and all of those who do the work of this city and the work of our public good, a path of peace.
Thank you, Rabbi. I'd like to call the meeting, the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 19th, 2021, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your public comment cards up to our city clerk to my right here as soon as possible. While the Milton Rules allow a speaker to turn in their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Will our city clerk please call roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 19th, 2021, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on your item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outburst, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carolyn Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Rick Morick is joining us via Zoom. Councilmember Morick?
Here, and I'm in Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Thank you.
Thanks for rubbing it in, Rick.
It's been raining, Joe.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Good evening. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. And while everyone's special and important, I also want to recognize a former councilmember, Matt Kuntz, is here. And also see on elected official Senator Brandon, State Senator Brandon Beach walked in. So thank you guys for welcoming you here, as well as everybody else. All right, Tammy, if you'll please sound the next item.
That item is approval of meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 21206. Mayor?
Okay. I'd like to make a couple of changes and move the new business items and the unfinished business items to proceed the consent agenda. Is there any other agenda items or changes anybody has? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Moore to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. All right. Next item is public comment. General public comment. A general public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. City encourages you to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak on any item, bring your comment cards to the clerk. Do we have any general public comment?
We do, Mayor. We have one, Mr. Matt Kuntz. If you, we invite you to the podium.
Thank you, Tammy. Matt Kuntz addresses 730 Sable Point Road in Milton, Georgia. I'm actually here to talk about the YouTube contract that was recently signed. You know, it was interesting, in 2016, I don't know if you can recall this, but there was an interesting situation that came up where people were asking about the rights and protections of the city granted citizens, and whether those rights and protections extend to not just the city, but also those entities with whom the city does business with. At that time, there was actually an open records request looking for the private emails of one of our contractors, Don Broussard, in 2015, that was requested by our citizens. And Ken Gerard said specifically at that time that, yes, those rights and protections do extend to those of which we are doing business with. And I agree with that wholeheartedly, but the question I have now with regards to the rights and protections, you remember, we look at not only the laws of the state of Georgia, the laws of the city of Milton, but also the Constitution of these United States of America, and that includes the First Amendment right to free speech and those protections of fair and equal protection under the law. But we have since signed this YouTube contract. And there's an issue I have with that because right now YouTube, Facebook, and a lot of other social media providers, Twitter, have taken the behavior of censoring public opinions that they do not necessarily agree with. Now, I'm not going to get into what those are tonight, but my question is, is as they are doing that, they are doing that not just to ordinary Americans. They've done that to political candidates, they've done that to politicians in office, including our own president of our own United States of America. Now, the issue that I have here is that the city has signed a contract with one of these providers. Now, what happens if, just if, it hasn't happened yet, but what happens if YouTube decides that they want to censor an idea by one of our citizens here that might speak on an issue politically that they have been making the behavior of doing so over the past year? What if they come along and we have an issue with regards to the election in 2020 and Fulton County, or, which people here might even talk about tonight, or the vaccines, or whatever? But those are getting censored. Now, the issue I have is, is they may say that they're a private entity. However, we already have precedent that says that anybody doing a contract business work with the city is afforded those same rights and protections. And if those rights and protections are then not granted, then that puts the city liable for failure to provide protection of those things. That's the issue. And so as taxpayers, we don't want to have to pay from a lawsuit from failure to provide protection for the First Amendment rights and privileges. I know that's not your intent, but how do we monitor that? Now, the good part is, is the market is making a lot of adjustments right now versus the YouTube's and the censoring. You've got Rumble, you've got Bridie on, you've got many others that are out there. But right now, tonight, we've got people that may speak on these issues. What would happen if YouTube decides in a public comment, and they just say, you know what, we don't like that section, because their Google algorithms are actually going to see those words, and they just cut it out? Is it now the onus on us as citizens to actually look to see if our rights and protections are still being maintained? Or is that going to be on you to do that? And obviously, the city clerk will watch the tapes and see that everything's there, but what happens if there's all of a sudden just a gap and it's just a disappearance of that? So my question is, is this right? You know, I have a concern about that, especially with regards to First Amendment, especially with regards to our rights and protections, especially with regards to freedom of speech. No one should be censored, as crazy as some of us are, and I've heard it all, I've been in your seats before. But the issue is, is that everybody has a right to be able to express themselves in our former government, and no entity, no matter how big or how powerful they think they are.
One minute.
Can't do anything, should have the right to be able to take that away from any one of us, anybody in this city. So that is why I'm here, and I would hope that everybody here will have the freedom of speech afforded to them in tonight's meeting, as well as any meeting coming further on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more general comment, but it will be read into the record.
Okay.
It is from Mary Williams. She's at 15270 High Growth Road. Please include plans for overflow parking when needed as plans are developed and being implemented for the former Milton Country Club parking recreation events. Using the neighboring subdivision Wood Valley as a parking lot is not acceptable and contrary to your FMCC master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if that's all the public, general public comment, I'll move on to the consent agenda. You, Tammy, would mind reading the, sounding the consent agenda items?
Thank you, Mayor. That first item is approval of the June 7th, 2021, city council meeting minutes. It's Agenda Item Number 21207. Our second item, approval of the June 21st, 2021, city council meeting minutes. It's Agenda Item Number 21208. Next, we have an approval of the financial statements and investment report for period eight, May 2021. It's Agenda Item Number 21209. Our fourth item, approval of an amendment number one to the services agreement between the city of Milton and Meritage Systems, Inc., to revise the terms and conditions. Agenda Item Number 21210. Our fifth item, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and MCCI LLC for scanning services. Agenda Item Number 21211. Our next item is approval of subdivisions, Plats, and Revisions. The name of the development is Manor Estates at 3320 through 3370 Long Street Road. It's land lot 253 and 324, District 2, Section 2. It's a minor plat to create six three-acre lots from three existing parcels. Lot sizes will range from 3.05 acres to 3.70 acres. It's a total acres of 19.52 with a density of 0.31 lots per acre. It's Agenda Item Number 21212. Mayor?
Okay. I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we can move on to our next item, which we moved with our agenda.
And that first item, Mayor, is the consideration of a resolution reappointing members to the City of Milton Green Space Advisory Committee. It's Agenda Item Number 21213. Mayor?
I think, yeah, Bob should shimmy down, but I don't believe he's in, in town, so Robin?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So tonight, I'm here to present the staff report for two items, but the first one...
I'm sorry, Ron. Yep. This is on...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Green Space Committee.
I was just so excited to get started. I took over your thunder. Sorry.
Sorry, that's okay.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I wasn't actually, I didn't realize I was supposed to come up here at the beginning of this. As you are aware, we have a proposal before you to reappoint four members of the Green Space Committee. We reappointed the other three in March. Their terms had expired in 2020, and these members expired in 2021. The bylaws indicate that they will continue to serve until they're replaced, but, you know, legal wants to make sure everything is tied up nicely, so we have them before you tonight for your consideration of reappointment. I have Mark Wally, Robert Brannon, Robin Gray, and Curtis Mills.
Okay. All right, so, you know, first thing, I just want to say thank you to those that have served, both that we're, are voting on tonight and the other people in the committee. For the audience, these are the guys that go out and are finding and assessing property that the city was able to purchase and will in the future to preserve indefinitely for green space. So, you know, the things that you guys are, have been doing and will do in the future, our kids and grandkids will all appreciate, so thank you for doing that. So with that, do I have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing on that, and I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make it. Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve reappointing the esteemed panel members to the City of Milton Green Space Advisory Committee, Agenda Item Number 21-213.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second, I mean, from Councilmember Cookerly, with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if Mark and Robin and Curtis and I be able to step forward, I'll add them to their oath. Guys, would raise your right hand and repeat after me. solemnly swear and affirm.
I solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
As a member of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee.
As a member of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
That I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Congratulations, and again, thank you very much for your service. If you guys wouldn't mind standing up here, and if the council will stand, either join us or stand up there, and we'll get a picture. And I guess you guys should be impressed that all these folks came here tonight to see you get sworn in. Okay. Tammy, if you'll please sound the next new business item.
Mayor, that item is consideration of an agreement between the city of Milton and Southern Conservation Trust, Inc., for a land management implementation plan for the former Milton Country Club. It's Agenda Item Number 21214. Ms. Teresa Stickles.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was waiting for the presentation to show up. Before you, for consideration tonight, is a contract for a land management implementation plan for the former Milton Country Club. I'd like to mention, in addition to the brief presentation that I will make, and you're welcome to ask any questions, Sarah Leaders is also here on hand. If you have any questions, that would be in her area, which is most of it. The contract amount is $10,000, and if approved, the professional services will be provided by the Conservation, Southern Conservation Trust. So is there, my presentation's not showing. Is it? It's...
Are they working on a couple?
Oh, okay, that's okay. I'm sorry. I mean, yeah, we can. So I'll go on. The Southern Conservation Trust is a land trust founded in 1993 to conserve green space. In some cases, land is conserved by acquiring it outright, in others, by utilizing permanent conservation easements, which ensure the land will remain intact and unchanged in perpetuity. The 501(c)(3) is located in Fayette County, Georgia, that they have conserved more, oh, there we go. Sorry, let me get... There we go. They have conserved more than 57,000 acres across 11 states. That's Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, Arkansas, Louisiana, Kentucky, Texas, and Colorado. Stewardship or responsibly managing public and private lands is an important part of their work. Stewardship can take the form of oversight of the easement properties, restoration of habitats, and/or active management of properties. If the contract before council is approved, the Southern Conservation Trust will provide the city with an environmentally sound land management plan for the former Milton Country Club. The Southern Conservation Trust currently has eight public nature areas totaling 1,100 acres. The site of Sam's Lake Bird Sanctuary, which is pictured up here on the left, held a drained lake bed that is now being reverting to a natural meadow. You can also see in that photo, it's also big, there's some wetlands that are being restored there. The city of Atlanta is sponsoring that restoration as part of a mitigation that they're required to do. Morgan Grove, which is pictured on the right, is a 60-acre retired working forest which showcases both natural succession and active management. A vibrant butterfly garden is maintained to attract pollinators to the area. So you'll see that both of those have elements of what we're envisioning for the former Milton Country Club. The trust has also recently acquired its own 375-acre failed golf course. The scope of work, there are five components to the contract. The first is a baseline study of the current natural state of the flora and fauna and soils. The remaining four components will all be guided by the master plan adopted in 2019. The trust will recommend vegetative features to provide permanent erosion control of the disturbed areas along the trail, the trail that's being moved and pulled up, moved now. The trust will create a planting plan of appropriate native plants to promote water filtration. The trust will advise on processes for the removal and eradication of invasive species and the introduction of additional native plants and trees. In addition, they will recommend installations where appropriate to establish and support wildlife, for instance, nesting boxes, as well as wildlife observation areas for park users. Finally, the trust will provide a document that the city can use in seeking grant opportunities. The contract work is scheduled to be completed within 270 days. And that's just some pretty pictures of some southeastern meadows. Any questions?
Laura?
I have a question. Thank you very much for sharing that. I just would love to also make sure that the adjacent property owners to the former Milton Country Club are aware of this initiative when we start to... Yeah, I knew you were going to be on it. Social media, just make sure that as we, you know, we have, this particular group is, has experience with transitioning a golf course. So I know it's probably not easy, and it's not going to be beautiful. So as we move into that direction, I think it would be good to share the plans with, especially the adjacent property owners. Thank you.
And I believe that Greg has shared in some of his recent dispatches, the website for the trust, and I invite people to go there and see the work that they've done. I think that everybody will find it tremendously impressive. I think we're lucky to be able to work with them.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you say Sarah was, was Sarah planning of speaking, or just...
No, she was just here in case you had any questions.
Do we have any public comments on this?
We do not, Mayor.
I'll close the public hearing on this, and also, yes, I agree with this, great that we were able to do this, have this opportunity. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Milton and Southern Conservation Trust for the land management patient plan for the former Milton Country Club.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Teresa. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Tammy, if you'll please sound the item.
Mayor, that item is consideration of an ordinance of the city council to authorize Fulton County to conduct the 2021 election. It is Agenda Item Number 21200. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you this evening, proposed ordinance and intergovernmental agreement that will authorize the Fulton County Board of Elections to facilitate municipal elections in the city of Milton. This is an intergovernmental agreement that we have approved in like-kind before in the city. Obviously, the greatest variable we have are the rates. This has actually got a fairly short clock on it. This intergovernmental agreement runs to the end of this calendar year, which of course will be a municipal cycle. The duties with respect to Fulton County Board of Elections and what will be required by the city of Milton. The duties with respect to the city of Milton will be as have traditionally been taken by the city. The rates are the anticipated, remember seconds, 2021 general rates are $84,671. If there is a runoff, the rate would be anticipated to be $70,368. Georgia law specifically contemplates that municipalities can contract with county boards of elections for this very purpose. Of course, there is an entitlement under state law for cities to have their own municipal election superintendent as well. I would say that is not as frequently done as it is to contract with a county, and I'm not sure that Milton is in a position right now to do that upcoming election. But this is the IGA that Fulton County has provided, and my understanding is, is most of the other metro cities are reviewing the same election, IGA. Mayor, that's my presentation.
Okay. Any questions for Ken at this point? Do we have any public comment?
We do, Mayor. I'd like to call the first one, Lisa Colley. You're invited to the podium.
Hi. My name is Lisa Colley. I live at 14680 Freemanville Road in Milton. I'm requesting the city council to not authorize Fulton County to conduct the November 2021 election. I would like to...
Mayor and Council, thank you all for your service. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for allowing me to represent you in the Senate. I just wanted to come, I'm not trying to ask you to do either way, but I would just like to point out a few facts. This year, we had 80 election bills come before the General Assembly. We had problems in this last election, but when you look at this election, it didn't just start in Fulton County here. I've been a resident of Fulton County for 27 years, and on their best day, Fulton County Elections is incompetent. They do not know how to run an election. We wait till 2:00 in the morning to get results, whether it's two city council races and a bond referendum, and that's unacceptable. I will tell you, and it won't help you for this election, because this election's this year, Bert Jones and I are sponsoring a bill, Senate Bill 233, that will allow counties and municipalities to do their own elections and not use the Dominion machines and go give them the option of a paper ballot. So I would just ask you to maybe look at that.[617.12][617.12](applause) Look at that in the future, if you want to do some kind of task force, to look at how you could take elections into your own hands, one from a cost savings, but more importantly, to make sure that you get it right, because you can do it better than Fulton County. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. Tammy, do we have any more?
I just have two more, Mayor, that I'll read into the record.
Okay.
The first one is going to be from Ms. Kathleen Kinworthy. She's at 3505 Peacock Road. She does not want to authorize Fulton County to run the Milton City elections. Our final election comment is from Mary Mayer. She's at 16070 Henderson Road, and she is in opposition of the election.
Okay. Is that all our public comment?
That's all.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and then open it back up for any questions to Ken or staff from council. Do I have any?
Go ahead.
No, I was pointing to you.
Okay. Okay, so I heard, Lisa, that it was doable, but then, Brandon, it sounded like a bill needed to be passed. Where are we for this November?
That bill will not help you down this...
Right.
If we don't go back to session until January, we're in the second year of a biennial, and we can pass it next year for future elections to give you those opportunities as a municipality. But it will not... I didn't know tonight that this was for the November elections. I thought this was for the 2022 elections, but...
But right, the question is whether we can have the opportunity without the bill.
Brandon, you have to use the Dominion machine.
So we could still manage our own election, but it would be with the Dominion machines?
Correct.
And then after this bill, if it passes, we could manage our own elections without the Dominion machines?
That's what our bill will do.
And then do we have the wherewithal to pull it together for this November?
You do not.
No, no, I'm asking our...
Right. I mean, obviously, we'll have to defer to the city manager, but I do think you've got, it looks to me like you've probably got qualifying sorted in August. It's gonna be a challenge, to pull election superintendent and pull off an election by November.
Yeah, I would say, first off, I pretty much in general agree with all the public comment on this. I'd be willing to think probably the majority of council feels the same way. My biggest concern is time constraint, and for this, we have about three months, I think, before this election starts, but even if that's the case, I certainly would support. And I've talked to our city attorney and our city manager, who said they're willing to see what it would take and all that if the council wants to go forward with that in the future. So I would certainly recommend, you know, even if we go forward with this contract one more time for this November's election, that we would, I would like to direct, if council agrees, our staff to look in and work with the citizens that have spoken and others that, and also Fulton County, to move forward in a different direction next year. But that's my opinion on that. Paul?
Thanks, Joe. I would echo your comments. I'm in full support of a thorough review to make sure that we restore election integrity at all levels, and I think that it's time for change. Fulton County has disappointed us forever, and I think it's appropriate to take another path as soon as one is available to us. I posed this kind of question to council as well as the city manager. At this point this evening, I'm assuming you've made measure of what we have before us, and is it your recommendation because of your measure that we go forward currently with the plan, with the opportunity in future elections to make that change? Or you have a confidence that we can be nimble enough to accommodate the request of change by the community this evening?
That's a big question. I don't know what it takes to run a municipal election, but if it's the direction of the council, I will do everything in my power to make it happen.[695.12][695.12](applause)
Do you value in... Is there enough timeline for us to take into consideration the expressed wishes of the community this evening? Express wishes of some of the members of council tonight to... Can we defer this for until our next meeting? Is a couple of weeks enough time to make measure, or are we already behind the eight ball?
Well, I think it is gonna be difficult. I think it is gonna be difficult to turn this quickly and pull off this municipal election by using your own municipal superintendent. I think the better approach for the council would be to set in place the wheels to do your own elections for the 2022 election cycle. But again, I'm your attorney. I'm not your manager, and if that can be done quicker, that's fine. There's a lot of scrutiny on elections, obviously, in all quarters, and best intentions notwithstanding, we don't want to mess one up worse.
And again, I'll reiterate, I'm certainly 100% in support of this, but you know, my concern is, right now, we're behind the eight ball. I know the county is, but it doesn't surprise anyone. But without a plan, without a firm plan to vote on also tonight, I'd be concerned about it.
Yeah, Mayor, I mean, we did become a city for local, more local control, and I fully support it for 2022 for sure. I just want to make sure we get it right. I mean, the last thing I want to do is, we have qualifying in less than 30 days, and the last thing I want to do is mess up a municipal election, and then all of a sudden, we're on the front page of the paper. So I think it's important that we get it done right. I'm fully in support of more local control, and I fully support it.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Ken, can we do a hybrid, whereas if we keep it intact just to get through this municipal election, can we have extra oversight of our folks? Can they tag on to the process, so that we have more confidence that things are done correctly?
In theory, that would be possible. You're talking about sort of like poll watchers, et cetera?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I will concede that that's gonna involve a degree of working with Fulton County, the Board of Elections, that I'm not sure is gonna be obtainable, because what I'm hearing is wanted and desired is truly local control over these elections. I fully get that, and I tend to think that once you, sort of a binary decision, once you go that way, that's the way we need to go completely, and so sort of distance ourself entirely from Fulton County. I think that's the objective that's being discussed here, and that's what it sounds to me like the council, where the council wants to go, and just wants to do it carefully and judiciously, is what I'm hearing.
I just have a comment. Had a conversation with Bob Ellis today about the importance of our citizens that are here and have concerns of being involved in the elections, and I think he is moving forward, and I offered any support I could give, and I know this council could give for you all that are here and feel strongly about this, to become involved at any level. So I'm happy to bring Bob, you know, in to do that. He's fully vested in that.
I'll also reiterate, I had the same conversation with Bob too. Would you?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's interesting to understand the complexities of what happened in 2020. I don't know. We need to be careful in terms of how we interpret the...
Library who had their votes taken from them. The City of Milton needs to manage and staff their own elections and resources to ensure the election process integrity. Didn't we become a city to manage our own affairs? The buck stops here at the Milton City Council, not the Fulton County Board of Elections. I urge each council member to provide each citizen in the City of Milton an election with fairness and integrity and not pass the buck to Fulton County. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy?
Next, I'd like to call Mr. Brandon Beach to the podium.
Brandon Beach, 3100 Briarfield, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for your service. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for allowing me to represent you in the Senate. I just wanted to come, I'm not trying to ask you to do either way, but I would just like to point out a few facts. This year, we had eighty election bills come before the General Assembly. We had problems in this last election. But when you look at this election, it didn't just start in Fulton County here. I've been a resident of Fulton County for twenty-seven years, and on their best day, Fulton County Elections is incompetent. They do not know how to run an election. We wait till two in the morning to get results, whether it's two city council races and a bond referendum, and that's unacceptable. I will tell you, and it won't help you for this election, because this election's this year, Bert Jones and I are sponsoring a bill, Senate Bill 233, that will allow counties and municipalities to do their own elections and not use the Dominion machines and go give them the option of a paper ballot. So I would just ask you to maybe look at that.[105.14][105.14](APPLAUSE). Look at that in the future if you want to do some kind of task force to look at how you could take elections into your own hands, one from a cost savings, but more importantly, to make sure that you get it right, because you can do it better than Fulton County. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.[123.11][123.11](APPLAUSE). Tammy, do we have any more?
I just have two more, Mayor, that I'll read into the record. The first one is going to be from Ms. Kathleen Kenworthy. She's at 3505 Peacock Road. She does not want to authorize Fulton County to run the Milton City Elections. Our final election comment is from Mary Mayer. She's at 16070 Henderson Road, and she is in opposition of the election.
Okay. Is that all our public comment?
It's all.
Okay, I'll close the hearing and then open it back up for any questions to key in our staff from council. Do I have any?
Go ahead.
No, I was pointing.
Yep, Carol.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I heard, Lisa, that it was doable, but then, Brandon, it sounded like a bill needed to be passed. Where are we for this November?
That bill will not be passed until January.
Right.
If we don't go back to session until January, we're in the second year of a biennial, and we can pass it next year for future elections to give you those opportunities as a municipality. But it will not, I didn't know tonight that this was for the November elections. I thought this was for the 2022 elections, but...
But right, the question is whether we can have the opportunity without the bill.
And you have to use the Dominion machine.
So we could still, we could still manage our own election, but it would be with the Dominion machines?
Correct.
And then after this bill, if it passes, we could manage our own elections without the Dominion machines. Got it.
That's what our bill will do.
And then do we have the wherewithal to pull it together for this November?
You do not.
No, no, I'm asking our...
Right, I mean, obviously we'll have to defer to the city manager, but I do think you've got, it looks to me like you've probably got qualifying sorted in August. It's going to be a challenge, a municipal election superintendent to pull off an election by November.
Yeah, I would say, first off, I pretty much in general agree with all the public comment on this. I'd be willing to think probably the majority of council feels the same way. My biggest concern is time constraint, and for this, we have about three months, I think, before this election starts, but even if that's the case, I certainly would support. And I've talked to our city attorney and our city manager, who said they're willing to see what it would take and all that if the council wants to go forward with that in the future. So I would certainly recommend, you know, even if we go forward with this contract one more time for this November's election, that we would, I would like to direct, if council agrees, our staff to look in and work with the citizens that have spoken and others that, and also Fulton County, that to move forward in a different direction next year. But that's my opinion on that.
Paul?
Thanks, Joe. I would echo your comments. I'm in full support of a thorough review to make sure that we restore election integrity at all, at all levels, and I think that it's time for change. Fulton County has disappointed us forever, and I think it's appropriate to take another path as soon as one is available to us. I posed this question to council as well as the city manager. At this point this evening, I'm assuming you've made measure of what we have before us, and is it your recommendation because of your measure that we go forward currently with the plan, with the opportunity in future elections to make that change? Or you have a confidence that we can be nimble enough to accommodate the request of change by the community this evening?
That's a big question.
Notice.
I don't know what it takes to run a municipal election, but if it's the direction of the council, I will do everything in my power to make it happen.[368.62][368.62](APPLAUSE).
Key value in, is there enough timeline for us to take into consideration the expressed wishes of the community this evening, expressed wishes of some of the members of council tonight to, can we defer this for until our next meeting? Is a couple of weeks enough time to make measure, or are we already behind the eight ball?
Well, I think it is going to be difficult. I think it is going to be difficult to turn this quickly and pull off this municipal election by using your own municipal superintendent. I think the better approach for the council would be to set in place the wheels to do your own elections for the 2022 election cycle. But again, I'm your attorney. I'm not your manager, and if that, if that can be done quicker, that's fine. There's a lot of scrutiny on elections, obviously, in all quarters, and best intentions notwithstanding, we don't want to mess one up worse.
And again, I'll reiterate, I'm certainly a hundred percent in support of this, but, you know, my concern is, right now, we're behind the eight ball. I know the county is, or it doesn't surprise anyone, but it'd be, without a plan, without a firm plan to vote on, also tonight, I'd be concerned about it.
Yeah, Mayor, I mean, we did become a city for local, more, more local control, and I fully support it for 2022, for sure. I just want to make sure we get it right. I mean, the last thing I want to do is, we have qualifying in less than thirty days, and the last thing I want to do is mess up a municipal election, and then all of a sudden we're on the front page of the paper. So I think it's important that we get it done right. I'm fully in support of a more, more local control, and I fully support it.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Ken, can we do a hybrid, whereas if we keep it intact just to get through this municipal election, can we have extra oversight of our folks? Can they tag on to the process, so that we have more confidence that things are done correctly?
In, in theory, that would be possible. You're talking about sort of like poll watchers, et cetera?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I will concede that that's going to involve a degree of working with Fulton County, the Board of Elections, and I'm not sure is going to be obtainable, because what I'm hearing is wanted and desired is truly local control over these elections. I fully get that, and I tend to think that once you, sort of a binary decision, once you go that way, that's the way we need to go completely, and so sort of distance ourself entirely from Fulton County. I think that's the objective that's being discussed here, and that's what it sounds to me like the council, where the council wants to go, and just wants to do it carefully and judiciously, is what I'm hearing.
I just have a comment. Had a conversation with Bob Ellis today about the importance of our citizens that are here and have concerns of being involved in the elections, and I think he is moving forward, and I offered any support I could give, and I know this council could give for you all that are here and feel strongly about this, to become involved at any level. So I'm happy to bring Bob, you know, in to do that. He's fully vested in that.
I'll also reiterate, I had the same conversation with, with, with Joe.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's, it's interesting to understand the complexities of what happened in 2020. I don't know, we need to be careful in terms of how we interpret, interpret the detail of all of that, but I would agree with everybody that I've never felt like we got great service from Fulton County when it came to running our elections. I've run for office three times, and I won all three times, so some of me says that they did a great job, but aside from that, these kind of things, you never know exactly how much time, energy, and effort it takes to get them implemented. And so the only thing that I would say is, we ought to really look and see if there's something that can be done this year, because I would hate to start down this road, realize in January, oh, we could have gotten that done for last year, and then have missed the opportunity. So the, the only thing, the only thing I wanted to say, the only thing I wanted to say was, you know, if we could actually take a look at, you know, what might be involved and see if there's a chance, but know that we need to get the ball rolling for 2022 regardless, so.
Okay, I think Councilmember Moore wanted to say something.
Correct, yes, he'd like to make a comment.
Okay, thanks. I echo what Joe Longoria just said. I think we need to take a look at it before we say we can't do it, and Steve, I guess, if the council agrees with this, my suggestion is, let's take a look at it, not, let's not just approve this tonight. I think we've got people in our community that have been involved with votes in the past that would be willing to jump in and take a look at it, maybe work with your staff, and then let's come back with an assessment to say, what are all the, can we actually do this this year? So I would say before we just say, hey, we can't do it, it's too short, let's make an assessment of what it would take to do it. And then the second item is, I noticed when I read the contract, we have a rate in there that is set just for municipal elections. This election, we also are going to have a countywide election on the T spot, T-splas, a county election or vote countywide, so they would have to stand up the election even if we didn't have the municipal election. I guess what I'd ask staff to do in the meantime is actually go back and talk to Fulton County, because I don't think we should have our, our citizens bear the full costs as if we're just running a municipal election. They would have to staff part of this just for the T-splas. So those are the two comments that I have.
Okay. Peyton?
I just got one question. So when is the drop dead, dead deadline for this?
What I would tell you, Councilmember Jameson, is if we're going to go the route of attempting to see if we can pull off a municipal election in 2021 by November, then we need to set up some special call meetings of this, and staff needs to be given an all hands-on deck, because we've got no time.
Was your question about when do we have to let Fulton County know?
That was my, I was, when's the follow, that was my follow-up.
What I'm hearing right now is there's two issues. One, Councilmember Moore is concerned about the negotiated rate in the IGA. That, that's simply a business deal, where we need to go back to the Fulton County Board of Elections, say, we don't like your price tag, you've got a countywide election anyway, don't make us pay this amount, make us pay something less than that. They may say no. All right, but the other issue I'm hearing is, is we want to look at just discarding this deal altogether and doing it ourselves. That's another deal, that's another, that's an issue of a different degree. So I'm simply suggesting to you, what is the drop date? We probably could get away with not signing the IGA for one more council meeting, if that's, if that's the concern. But if we're talking about hiring a municipal election superintendent, otherwise doing our own election, that may necessitate some special call meetings with the council.
So if we deferred, if we deferred the decision until our next regular meeting, which would be the first meeting of August, is that past a deadline for Fulton County?
Tammy, do you know?
Well, qualifying will begin eight seventeen, so we, we under, under the gun on the timeline.
Yeah, I don't know the exact answer. I do know in conversations that with Fulton County, of course, no surprise, they were behind the ball as it is right now, and if anybody went to or watched their meeting, you could tell that. And I do know they're wanting the answer ASAP every day, they're calling to know if we've, you know, if we pass this or not. I don't know if that's, you know, if they're just pushing or not, but it doesn't sound like just in conversations that, you know, hey, you can have another month or whatever, but I don't know the answer to that.
I mean, my, my only issue I'm having here is, we deferred and we go through the motion, and maybe we can see if we can make it work. I want to know what that timeframe is to where Fulton County says, oh, too late, and now all of a sudden we don't have all of our ducks in a row.
I mean, Councilmember, that can be knowable. I mean, we could pick up the phone and call up tomorrow and say, what is your drop dead date, where you absolutely will not conduct our election, and we can know that, and if it's the day after tomorrow, we can then hold a special call meeting and come in and approve this thing. So I mean, this is, this is probably doable. I'm simply suggesting, the comments I'm hearing, we're sort of at a crossroads then. We're either negotiating under this IGA, or we're throwing this IGA away. We've been down the negotiation route before with Fulton County.
Yeah, I don't think that's job one. I think job one is for you all to decide whether it's doable, and I would think at your expertise level, you could perhaps give us some feedback, and I realize, and it's kind of like whack-a-mole, there's so many things that staff has that were on deadlines. This is incredibly important, I just, I think, very interesting, and I'm hopeful, but I also want to be realistic, but I just think if you all could do what you think is necessary to see if it's truly doable. It does have to be a win for us, though. We can't mess this up first time out. We cannot get this wrong.
So the date, the date of that qualifying starts is when again?
Eight seventeen, I think she said.
Eight seventeen, it's eight seventeen, August the seventeenth through August the nineteenth.
Just a, a quick, a quick clarification, Tammy, isn't qualification, isn't that locally handled? That basically is going to tell us who is going to be on the ballot, but that doesn't involve Fulton County. That would be a separate thing that we do as a city, and then we feed that to whoever's going to administer the, the election.
That is correct, Councilmember Moore.
But I think we have somebody engaged to run the election before that happens.
Oh, well, yeah, and I think, again, that's where I'd, I'd ask staff, if the council agrees with it, I'm in favor of waiting at least until, put it off, defer until next meeting, council meeting, so we could actually take a look at it and see what all is involved, and is it even possible to do effectively?
Paul? Yeah, I think if we can take some quick action to make that assessment, Steve and, and Ken, sign me up. I'm happy to be available for those meetings.
I would also.
So may I make a motion, we defer this?
That's my, we defer it to the next me, or is there a special call?
To a special call, or?
No.
We'll get on with Fulton County tomorrow, find out what the drop date is, I'll inform you all, and we'll, if we can, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my only concern, we don't know what the answer's going to be yet before we make this decision, but to, to Steve's point, you know, maybe the decision, you got, you have until next meeting, but I would doubt it, so we'll probably need to have a special call.
Table this, and then whatever the next meeting, yes, we could pick it up.
I was going to ask Councilmember Cookerly, I think that the right call is, is to defer it to the next regular meeting with the understanding that it may be on a sooner special called agenda, if, if, if warranted, just to make sure that the citizens understand there's some flexibility in that hard date.
Okay, but I guess we'll find...
That works.
The answer is to, whether we may have to come back and, you know, make the call to approve this or not, if we're able to, if, if Fulton County...
And what's the date of the next special, I mean, our next regular?
August the second.
August the second, okay. Are you ready?
But we're going to use the language, the next meeting, which is August, August second, or, yeah, you don't have to, or special meeting.
Okay. Mayor and council, I move that we defer consideration and ordinance of the City Council authorized Fulton County to conduct the 2021 election, our next regularly scheduled meeting on August second, or whether we have a special called meeting. That is agenda item number twenty-one dash two hundred.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion as read from Councilmember Cookerly, with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That's unanimous. All right, thank you.[1187.44][1187.44](APPLAUSE). Okay, tonight, we don't have any items under reports and presentations, first presentation or any public hearings, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. Tammy, if you'll please read the zoning rules, and then sound the first item.
Thank you, Mayor. When the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda, those items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting, which includes a zoning agenda. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of ten minutes to present its, its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebuke. The applicant may choose to save some time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains within the allotted time. Those speak called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of the tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and their recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have already been submitted to the Community Development Department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years, immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, can campaign contributions aggregating two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application. It shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant statute, state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed two-hundred-and-fifty dollars or more to a council member, and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U-2101 slash VC-2103, it's at 2105 Bethany Way, containing multiple parcels for a total of eighteen point zero seven acres by the PFAJ Revocable Trust dated 217-2019, to request a use permit for agricultural-related activities. It's section sixty-four dash one seven nine seven, and a two-part concurrent variance. The first, to allow the existing parking areas, wood pavilion, horse arenas, and driveways within the one-hundred-foot activity setback, it's section sixty-four dash one seven nine seven D. The second, to allow the structure housing's animals to be located one hundred feet off of a property, I'm sorry, one hundred feet of a property line, it's section sixty-four dash one seven nine seven E. It is agenda item number twenty-one one sixty. Ms. Robyn McDonald.
I will try again. So good evening here in City Council, so I'm here to present staff's recommendations for this item, as Adam, City Clerk, has already read into the record. It is an application by the PFAJ Revocable Trust dated 217-2019, and the applicant is represented by Ellen Smith of Parker, Poe, and Bernstein. As stated as well, it's eighteen point oh-two-seven acres, it includes multiple parcels, and the existing uses contain a single-family residence, equestrian facility, winery, and other accessory structures. Again, a request for a two-part concurrent variance, and we'll get into that as we go through the presentation. This is a location map, you all know where it is. It's on the southwest quadrant of Bethany Way and Hopewell Road, and as I said before, contains multiple parcels. This is the incredibly exciting zoning map of everything around it, and itself is zoned AG1, so. This is the future land use map. This beige color is AEE, agricultural, equestrian, and estate residential. This is the original site plan that was submitted January twenty-fifth of 2021, and then subsequently, on May twenty-fifth, the applicant submitted a revised site plan, and as we go through, I can talk about it more specifically. So again, it is zoned AG1, totaling eighteen point oh-two-seven acres, and just to note, the applicant recently purchased 13760 Hopewell Road, in which the City of Milton will be constructing a portion of the new roundabout at Hopewell Road and Bethany Bend, and that parcel is within this site plan that was before you. Again, it contains a single-family residence with a detached garage, an additional garage with a residence, a small cemetery, a swimming pool, small wood pavilion used for entertainment, various barns, two uncovered horse arenas, vineyards, and other smaller accessory structures on the property. The Painted Horse Winery currently operates on the site, which is allowed by right within the AG1 zoning district. There is a tasting room currently located within the basement of the house, as well as areas on the lawn behind the house to sit and listen to background music. There are vineyards located on the property as well. Based on the applicant's letter of intent, Ms. Pamela Jackson and her family acquired the first tracts of the property in nineteen ninety-one. In nineteen ninety-six, equine barns were built and horses were moved in, and in two-thousand and three, the farm at Panalot, Inc. was formally incorporated. According to the applicant, starting in nineteen ninety-seven, the farm started hosting a variety of uses and events, including equine breeding, boarding, and training, animal husbandry, an annual Easter egg hunt, ticketed live music events, and various corporate events and weddings at the property, including using valet services as needed. Ms. Jackson states that these uses began in two thousand and two and continuously since then. Further, the applicant states that the farm has hosted summer camp as a week-long day camp for children, birthday parties, and other boy and girl scout types of events. There have been a variety of ancillary uses to the farm, including various fruit tree and apiary agricultural uses historically for more than twenty years. In two thousand and eighteen, according to Ms. Jackson, she planted her first vineyards, and in two thousand and nineteen, the farm became licensed as a city's and Fulton County's first farm winery. The applicant states that an additional four acres of vineyards are being added this year. During the summer and fall of 2020, the city received various complaints regarding an increased number of visitors to the site, issues with off-premise parking, and loud music coming from the property. The city asked to meet with Ms. Jackson and her legal counsel to discuss their programming on the property. The city, including community development director, zoning manager, and city attorney, met with Ms. Jackson and Ms. Smith, her legal counsel, three times total in November and December of 2020. At that time, the applicant asserted that the activities that she was holding were uses that were quote-unquote grandfathered or potentially legally non-conforming uses, and that she did not need use permits to bring the variety of uses in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance. As stated in the applicant's letter of intent for these subsequent requests or applications, these applications are being filed in good faith by Ms. Jackson to further resolution of disputes between Ms. Jackson and the city regarding permitted and potentially legally non-conforming uses of the property. These are being submitted without waiver by Ms. Jackson of her rights, claims, interests, or defenses with respect to prior, ongoing, or future events, uses or operations at or are on the property, and without admission by owner of the need for such permits or variances. On April twenty-first, 2021, the applicant submitted a revised set of proposed conditions uses for the agricultural-related activities. So let me just go back a little bit. After those meetings, the applicant and had agreed to go ahead and submit three special use permits, two of which are before you tonight, the agricultural-related activities, and the rural event facility. At your last meeting on June seventh, you all withdrew, per the applicant's request, the event, event indoor/outdoor use permit. At the June twenty-eighth meeting, so anyways, at the June twenty-eighth meeting with the community... at the June 28th meeting with the community and city staff, the applicant provided building sketches, plans for a temporary tasting room. So let me go back again. So at the June 7th meeting, I think that you all discussed that you were willing to defer the item to this date of July 19th to allow further discussion between the applicant and the community, with city staff facilitating that process. So then, we get to June 28th, which was the meeting that was planned based upon those discussions on June 7th. And at that meeting, the applicant provided building sketches slash plans for a temporary tasting room for one of the existing barns on the property in order to close the existing tasting room located within the basement of the house. So, back to the public involvement throughout this process. The CZIM meeting, Community Zoning Information Meeting, was held on March 23rd, and the applicant was present for this meeting here at Milton City Hall and via Zoom. There were approximately eight members of the community who signed the attendance sheet. There appeared to be more in attendance. There are various issues that were raised. Among them were traffic caused by the various current events and concern over the speed of existing traffic on Bethany Way, noise coming from music at the winery impacting enjoyment of nearby property owners, parking off-site at the Bethany Oaks subdivision pool area, concerned with people leaving the venue intoxicated, do not mind the children-related events like birthday parties, painting horses, day camps, and equestrian-related businesses. The next meeting in the process was the Design Review Board on April 13th. And the following comments were made by that board, stating, "The majority of members expressed supporting the existing uses on the property, such as the winery, equestrian-related uses, children's activities, but not to expand the uses as requested." Part of the process of the use permit is for the applicant to hold its own public participation meeting, and staff is not part of that. They did hold it on April 19th at their site on Bethany Way. And there were 16 people in attendance that signed the attendance sheet. Their concerns were the following: noise primarily during ticketed live events, traffic congestion, off-street parking at Bethany Oaks subdivision swimming pool. The response from the applicant was indicated on the public participation report that we received on April 21st, stating, "Measure noise levels at events. Proposed conditions to onsite parking mitigate noise, including additional limits on allowable decibels, hours of operation, frequency of events, and numbers of ticketed attendees. Requests on social media through parking attendants and off-duty police were onsite parking. Attendees not to park off-site and coordinate with Bethany Oaks HOA." So on April 28th, 2021, the city of Milton Planning Commission recommended approval conditional of this use permit for the agricultural-related events. And the two-part concurrent variance with the following conditions: There shall be no more than a total of 25 attendees per day, Monday through Friday, and no more than a total of 50 attendees on Saturday and Sunday for camps, birthday parties, and educational events. And the next condition they recommended was maximum continuous levels of 60 dB A and a maximum peak sound level of 75 dB A property lines. Music associated with the activities shall only be allowed to be acoustical. And as I referenced before, on June 7th, you all, as the mayor and city council, deferred the item to tonight. And with a vote of five to two to allow the applicant to meet with the interested parties and city staff to discuss possible resolution of the above requested use permits and associated concurrent variances. Also, at that June 7th meeting, you all voted to withdraw U 21-03 VC 2104 for the events indoor/outdoor in a vote of five to two. So on June 28th, 2021, citizen-appointed members of the community, the applicant and her attorney, and various city staff, including the city attorney, participated in a meeting to work out various issues of the requested use permit and associated farm winery at City Hall. Several outstanding issues were established by the city attorney after a healthy discussion was held at the meeting. The applicant agreed to address these issues for a possible future response from the community. The applicant and her attorney submitted a response with a supplement and amendment to applications' proposed conditions on July 8th, 2021, to the city. After review of the responses and requests, the community representatives did not anticipate an agreement with the applicant's proposed conditions. With that, I'm going to go on through with the city staff comments on the requested use permit. The city arborist states the canopy coverage calculations and any specimen tree recompense will be calculated when they submit for the land disturbance permit. The proposed parking locations do appear to involve tree removal, but appears not to be any specimen trees involved. Based on the size of the parcel prior to a combination plot, the canopy coverage requirement will be 25%. This is based on any parcels that are three acres or larger that was within the tree canopy ordinance. The development engineer states stormwater runoff from all new impervious surfaces created by the construction of new buildings, gravel parking areas, and miscellaneous structures may be managed by stormwater facilities located either within the parcel boundaries or a shared facility off-site. The fire marshal reviewed the site plan. At that point in time, he reviewed the original one with a 12,000-square-foot structure. Now, it is being proposed as 8,000 square foot for the wine tasting room and the production of the wine. And he had several different comments, including hydrant required within 100 feet of remote FDC location. There must be a hydrant within 600 feet of the proposed structure. Show existing and proposed, if needed, hydrants. Flow tests required at LDP. Fire access road shall extend 150 feet of all portions of the structure. ADA accessibility is required. Gravel drive minimum width is 24-foot. 20 to 24 is okay with fire lane signage every 50 feet on both sides of the road. Gate width 15-foot minimum with knock switch access. Auto turn apparatus from Bethany Bend to proposed structure. Show accessible spaces in close proximity to proposed structure. Incorporate a fire department turnaround since the new entrance does not appear to fully connect with Bethany Way interests. Interests planned subject to an in-depth review at the time of application of the LDP. So now it's time for me to take a little drink. Before I start coughing. In regards to transportation, site improvements, including driveway locations, fencing, and stormwater ponds are to be coordinated with the underway Hopewell Road at Bethany Bend Way intersection improvement project. The Director of Public Works may determine that a traffic study will be required based on traffic generated by the site impacts, the operations of Bethany Way or Hopewell Road. In regards to environmental site analysis, the report was completed. On the site, there is a stream on the property which identifies the appropriate state and city buffers. Further, there are no floodplains, steep slopes, archaeological/historical sites, endangered vegetation, or wildlife on the site. The applicant has not submitted a tree survey, but will be required to meet the tree canopy ordinance at the time of LDP. So now, we're going to move into the use permit considerations for the specific requests. The zoning ordinance requires that all use permits in the interest of review certain items. And so we're going to go through those eight or so items that are required to be reviewed. The first one is whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. The proposed development is within the agricultural, equestrian, estate residential land use category on the city of Milton 2035 Comprehensive Plan Map contained in the Plan Update 2016. The proposed use permit for agricultural-related activities is permitted in AG1. Although the proposed use permit is consistent with the land use plan, but when considering it concurrently with the already-by-use of the farm winery and the equestrian-related activities, such as riding lessons and boarding of horses, as well as the request of a rural event facility for a maximum of 100 attendees Monday through Saturday, the proposed agricultural-related activities use permit is not consistent with the following plan objectives: We will seek opportunities to provide pleasant, accessible public gathering places and parks throughout the community. We will encourage development that is sensitive to the overall setting of the community and will contribute to our community's sense of place. Number two is compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the property for which the use permit is proposed. So basically, just looking around what is around the existing proposed development. To the north and northeast are large lots developed with single-family residences, as well as equestrian-related facilities. Staff notes that a festival event indoor/outdoor was approved at 13895 Hopewell Road to be used as a wedding facility in 2014, but has not operated in that capacity. To the east are scattered single-family residences in the Bethany Oaks subdivision zoned AG1 and North Park subdivision. To the south are large lots developed with single-family residences and equestrian-related facilities. To the southwest is Cooper Sandy subdivision, zoned AG1, developed with single-family residences. To the west are large lots developed with single-family residences and equestrian-related facilities zoned AG1. Based on these surrounding uses, which include single-family residences adjacent and nearby, the proposed agricultural-related activities use permit is not compatible with surrounding land uses since it would operate concurrently with the by-right uses of the farm winery and the equestrian-related activities, including riding lessons, boarding of horses, as well as the request of a rural event facility for a maximum of 100 attendees per event every day of the week. The applicant has included a list of issued uses that they agree that shall not occur on the property, which include exotic animals, kennels, or no overnight camps or events. These will be included in a set of conditions if the mayor and city council choose to approve the request. Number three, the proposed use does not appear, does appear to violate ordinances or regulations governing land development. And the proposed use effect on the traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets is impacted by not only the proposed use, but the other by-right activities of the farm winery, equestrian-related activities, including riding lessons, boarding of horses, as well as the request of a rural event facility for a maximum of 100 attendees per event every day of the week. All of these activities collectively will cause a burden on the adjacent and nearby streets at various times and days of the week. The location and number of off-street parking spaces. The locations are scattered around the approximate 18 acres. There are 12 spaces near the western portion of the site and additional six spaces to the north of the 12. Based on aerials, the six spaces appear to be where trees would be cut based on the overall tree canopy coverage. It would not compact, impact the overall site if they were located there. In addition, there are 37 spaces located on the north, central, and eastern portion of the site, of which portions of these spaces are located within the required 100-foot setback for activity areas, which includes parking. It appears that there is sufficient room to relocate the spaces that are within the 100-foot setback as required in section 641797-2D. Staff notes that the agricultural-related activities use permit does not have a specific off-street parking requirement, but staff will use the same requirement as a rural event facility use permit, which requires one space for 2.5 attendees. The applicant has agreed to the planning commission's recommended condition that the maximum number of attendees may be 50 on Saturday and Sundays, and therefore, 20 parking spaces will be required. In addition, there are two other use, there are only one other use permit being considered, as well as the existing winery, which may require that parking be provided for these other uses concurrently. The by-right activities, such as the farm winery that concurrently operates during the following days and times: Thursdays 1 to 6:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday 1 to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the Pamela Farm that operates riding lessons and boarding requires sufficient parking for their attendees. In addition, there is one additional use permit being requested that, if approved, may operate concurrently during the above activities, which requires additional parking and would be a burden on the site. Lastly, based on the submitted site plan, it is difficult to determine where attendees can park, especially in those instances when several events may occur at the same time. The amount and location of open space. Although the site provides open space, since there is approximately 18 acres, including a stream that cuts through it and provides a required 75-foot buffer on either side of the creek, as well as pastures, vineyards, and other open spaces. The site is not large enough in size to accommodate the proposed use as well as the other uses by right mentioned and the requested use permit for a rural event facility, and not impact adjacent and nearby properties in a negative manner. Seven, the existing vegetation that is located on the property and in most places located along or near its exterior property lines is not sufficient to ameliorate noise, light, and activity from the proposed use, as well as collectively the other uses by right mentioned and the requested use permit for a rural event facility. Eight, hours and man, sorry, hours and manner of operation. The applicant has proposed the following days, times, and operations: Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the agriculture-related activities. Although these times are less than the allowed per the standards of the use permit, staff will recommend that a further reduction in hours of operation occur on Sundays, which should be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Sundays if the mayor and city council chooses to approve the request. Outdoor lighting. The applicant has not indicated any additional lighting on the site, except if it is required for life safety and will comply with the night sky ordinance. Ingress and egress to the property. There are three existing curb cuts on the property along Bethany Way. The most western curb cut is located within the 100-foot activity area setback. A future curb cut will be built by the city at the time of the new roundabout is completed at Hopewell Road and Bethany Bend. As mentioned above, when considering not only the request for the agricultural-related activities, as well as the by-right use of the farm winery and equestrian-related uses, and other requested use permit for a rural event facility, the existing traffic on Bethany Way and Hopewell Road may be negatively impacted depending on the activities occurring at various times and days of the week of the site. On the site, based on the evaluation of the above use permit considerations, staff recommends denial of U 21-01 for agricultural-related activities. In regards to the site plan considerations, it is the intent of this division to allow certain agricultural-related activities with a use permit in compliance with the development standards below to preserve the nature of agricultural areas. Such uses shall include, but not be limited to, petting zoo, educational tours, dude ranches, picnicking, and pay fishing. So this is a chart that outlines all the required standards for this particular use permit. And on the left are the development standards, and on the right are whether the applicant meets those requirements. And as you can see, under D and E, no, they do not, and therefore, would require a concurrent variance. So the first requested concurrent variance is to allow the existing parking areas, wood pavilion, horse arenas, and driveways within the 100-foot activity setback. The site plan indicates existing driveways, parking spaces, barns, portions of horse arenas, and small fenced-in areas primarily along the eastern portion of the site that are associated with equestrian uses. Staff recommends denial of part one of VC 2103 to allow the existing structures to remain as shown on the revised site plan received by the community development department on May 25th, 2021, based on staff's recommendation that the proposed use permit for agricultural-related activities be denied. The second concurrent variance is for all structures housing animals shall be set back a minimum of 100 feet from all property lines. Site plan indicates structures housing animals within the minimum 100-foot setback on this site plan. They are small in size and located within the eastern portion of the property. Again, staff recommends denial of VC 2103, part two, to allow the existing structures housing animals within the 100-foot setback to remain as shown on the revised site plan by the community development department on May 25th, 2021, based on staff's recommendation that the proposed use permit for agricultural-related activities be denied. The applicant submitted a revised set of proposed conditions uses for this use permit on April 21st, as outlined below. I won't go through each and every- I won't go through each and every one of them, but many of them have been discussed throughout this report. The proposed agriculture related activities use permit is inconsistent with the city of Milton comprehensive plan update twenty sixteen and objectives. In addition, the proposed agriculture related activities use permit is not compatible with surrounding land uses since it would operate concurrently with the by right uses of the farm winery and the question related activities including writing lessons boarding of horses as well as the request of a rural event facility use permit for a maximum of one hundred attendees per event every day of the week. Therefore, staff recommends that U twenty one dash oh two be denied. In addition, staff recommends that V C twenty one dash oh three parts one and two be denied. If the Marin City Council choose to approve the requested use permit and concurrent variances, staff has provided a set of recommended conditions below. First, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follow. Agriculture related activities excluding exotic animals kennels and overnight camps or events on eighteen point oh two seven acres. And the owner's agreement to abide to the following substantial compliance with the site plan received by the community development department on May twenty fifth. To the owner's agreement of the following use permit, uh use requirements, I'm sorry. Days and hours of the operation shall be the following, Monday through Saturday eight A M to nine P M, Sunday ten A M to seven P M. There shall be no more than a total of twenty five attendees per day Monday through Friday and no more than a total of fifty attendees on Saturday and Sunday for camps, birthday parties and educational events. Limited farm animal petting primarily associated with other events no more than once per week for a limit of three hours, the barnyard experience. And D, maximum continuous levels of fifty D B A to maximum peak sound level fifty five D B A at property lines. To the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations. Provide adequate temporary bathroom facilities including handicap accessible unit which time permanent until until which time permanent bathroom facilities can be provided. Said facilities shall be located at least a hundred feet from any property line and out of view from Bethany Way or Hopel Road. Trash receptacles shall be located at least a hundred feet from any property line. Five, to the owner's agreement to abide to the following requirements dedications and improvements. A, access to the site and frontage improvement shall be subject to the approval of the city of Milton Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a business license, land disturbance permit subdivision plot or certificate of occupancy, whichever comes first. Entrances and frontage improvement shall conform to chapter forty eight, street sidewalks and other public places and chapter sixty four zoning of the city of Milton code of ordinances. B, if at such time the director of public works determines the traffic generated by the site impacts the operations of Bethany Way or Hopel Road, he or she may require the owner to conduct a traffic study to determine if the development warrants any additional improvements at no cost to the city. If the improvements are determined to be warranted, owner shall not install those, owner shall install those at no cost to the city. And lastly, a stormwater management concept plan shall be submitted and approved by Milton Public Works Department prior to submission of land disturbance application if required. And then separately, if you so choose to approve of the concurrent variance, it would be A to allow the existing parking areas wood pavilion, horse arenas and driveways within a hundred foot activity setback part one and allow the structures housing animals to be located within a hundred, within a hundred feet of a property line. And that's part two. And with that, that's the conclusion of this staff report. And so I'm available for any questions that you might have. And I'll be happy to go back to the staff, I mean to the site plan if that might be helpful as well.
Okay, I'll start out and if there's any particular questions for Robin right now and then we'll hear a public comment after that, but Laura?
Just a quick question, Robin, your staff report, you considered the entire the rural agricultural activities, the winery and the rural event facility when you
As well as the equestrian related.
You looked at all the activities, but we're hearing this first public hearing is for the agricultural activities use permit.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that your recommendation was based on everything.
Correct, it was comprehensive, yes.
Onto the, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions at this point? Then we'll open up. Obviously, we've got public comment. And as as usual, mayor and council are certainly open and want to let everybody have an opportunity to speak and hear everything that you have to say. I would just ask with with this and I'm sure there's going to be a lot. So if everybody will be respectful of their time and if there's somebody that speaks before you and, you know, has the same same input if you just kind of piggyback on that, but just be respectful of the time. But that being said, while our typical rules only allow about ten minutes on each side and a lot of jurisdictions, ask our city attorney, stick to that. We certainly have always had a practice of letting everyone that wants to speak have an opportunity to speak. But I I say all that and just ask everybody to be, you know, respectful of of the time. So anyways, our first public comment, please call that.
I'd like Ms. Pamela Jackson.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Pamela Jackson. I live at twenty one oh five Bethany Way. First, I want to thank all of you for the time, thought and effort that you have given this situation. I especially want to thank those of you that came out last week to tour the farm and winery and see for yourselves what we really are doing and what we're really about over there. That meant a great deal to me. Thank you. I'm not going to take a lot of time to go over points of these applications. This has been going on for a long time and you know what they are. What I want to share is about my farm and my winery and that it is a passion that runs deep within me. It makes me happy and it brings me joy and it brings joy to so many other people in our community. Through the years, we have been a haven for children to grow in the agricultural world. Many started with us at the age of four and are in their twenties now and are still with us at the farm. We employ several special needs people and I have watched their lives change dramatically at the farm. We are a working farm and exemplify everything agricultural, but we are so much more than that. We are a place that has supported the people of this community through some very hard times. Most of you know the devastating circumstances I had to face four years ago and know about the events that led me to start the farm winery. Aside from my children and David, nothing means more to me than my farm, nothing. But I have to be able to financially sustain it and it has to make financial sense. With respect to my neighbors, I have heard them. I withdrew the third application which was what was most disturbing to them. It was that application that also made the most revenue for my farm. I continue to respect them and I have tried very hard to work with them on finding a place in the middle where we can coexist peacefully and I can still operate my business in a manner that will make the money necessary to financially sustain it. Then after all of that, the city which has fully supported me by recommending approval of all of the applications suddenly switched their position to denial even after I withdrew the third application. I have lived in this area for over fifty years now. My grandchildren whom also live here are the fifth generation of my family in this community. I now feel like my city has turned their back on me. I understand the concerns that have been raised by some people, but there are ripple effects and unintended consequences in things. I have been transparent since the beginning of this. I want to continue to be transparent. I have now spoken with two developers, one of which is interested in putting high density housing on my property. As you know, my property is a large plot encompassing the corner of both Bethany Way and Hopewell Road right at the new roundabout. It is highly desired by developers. I don't share that as a threat. I share this because of where I am in my life. Since the last city council meeting, David and I have spent a lot of time thinking about our future and how we want to live out our remaining years. I am nearly sixty years old. David is sixty three. Together, we have ten children, all of whom are grown, independent and on their own. We are past the empty nester stage. We are in the next stage of our lives. I have absolutely no mortgage on any of my property and I have found out that I can sell it for at least fifteen million dollars, maybe more. For me to stay here and maintain the farm, it has to make financial sense. It has to be able to sustain itself financially. If we are struggling to make ends meet because I cannot run the farm in a manner necessary to bring in the revenue to support it, why would we stay? With fifteen million plus dollars, we could live anywhere we wanted and have one hell of a wine cellar. Though what my real desire is is to maintain my farm as a true working farm for generations to come. My children are committed to maintaining it as a farm. However, David and I are in a place in our lives where we don't want to just pour money into something that has no way of sustaining itself because of the restrictions placed on it. Mr. Garrett, right now you have a beautiful vineyard in your backyard. Without your support, you will have other people's houses in your backyard.
The comments need to be directed to the council.
Okay. Also with the canoes is right now they have acres of trees, acres of tree buffers and pasture land filled with horses in their backyard. Without their support, they will have someone else's swimming pool in their backyard. With respect, I have heard all of you and I have tried very hard to work with all of you. There is a ripple effect that happens. This has been a long and difficult process. I have been personally attacked. My integrity has been questioned by people who don't know me. I have received obscene anonymous threats in my mailbox by cowards. Mayor and council members, I come to you with gratitude for all the time you have given this. I know it is a hard decision, but really it shouldn't be. Every one of you ran on a platform of keeping Milton rural, promoting agriculture and maintaining the farms. It is my hope to keep operating a thriving farm and winery. It is my family's desire to help preserve precious green space, retain Milton's equestrian populations and support Georgia agriculture and community education. And I need the support of my city to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause till after everyone's spoken.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ellen Smith. I'm an attorney with Parker Poe and I have the pleasure of representing the applicant before you this evening. You have heard a lot and first I should say thank you and I echo Ms. Jackson saying thank you. You have spent a lot of time considering not only winery related matters and everything else over the past year, this application that's before you. And I also want to say thank you to staff, the city attorney. We have met and we've been meeting and talking about this. This is not an easy problem that you have before you. What you have is a situation where the city code doesn't match the uses on property that have been made on this property for a long time. And if we're talking about specifically agriculturally related activities for this application, that includes horseback riding with birthday parties. So it's been the city's interpretation, as soon as someone gets off a horse, that's where the equestrian use of the property ends. If they eat a piece of birthday cake, that's where a birthday party begins. And that was the rationale for applying for agricultural related activities. We went to the city, we said, here's the list of uses that we have on property. Tell us what you think we need. We divided them up into use permit applications and that's what you received. With respect to staff, you know, we disagree with those interpretations, okay? But to get through this process, to allow particularly with this set of uses, those uses to continue, we filed the application. With respect to Robin, her report that you've heard doesn't include the limitations that we've proposed most recently on July eighth. It doesn't include and it contemplates that there's going to be an addition of all of these uses. And so there's going to be a stack of parking required and a stack of hours of operation. And our goal in proposing to you on July eighth that we consolidate the applications into one application was so from the city's enforcement standpoint, you would know exactly how many people were going to be on site at what time and for what use. And with respect, I would highly encourage you to consider that. I know we're going to run out of time, but I I would be remiss if I didn't say this. I submitted to you affidavits this afternoon. All of the people who provided those affidavits are here tonight, including or available by phone on Zoom or YouTube, I think it's on now, including the farm director. It provided a lot of details in terms of how many children come for for lessons, birthday parties, what days of the week, what times of the day. And we're happy to go through all of that in detail. Similarly, with respect to parking, you don't want your code enforcement officers to come onto a property and say, okay, you can park here if you are riding and you can park here if you're going to the winery and you can park here if you're going somewhere else. The goal was to provide a comprehensive, limiting set of conditions, but also to allow these applications to move forward. We respectfully request that you approve this use permit application. We had planning commission unanimous recommendation of approval after, I don't know, two hours worth of robust public comment and hearing and discussion. We had a list of conditions that the applicant agreed to and we respectfully request you approve this application. Or if you want to hold it, hear the next one and make a comprehensive decision, we would request that as well. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have the next public comment in support?
We do. I'd like to call Ms. Judy Birds.
Judy Birds, one one six five Green Drive here in Milton. It's been well established that the farm of Pamela has been a long, long operating equine farm here in Milton. And most recently, the Painted Horse Farm Winery was licensed both here locally with the state and federal. And as a result, is governed by both federal, state and local laws. This caused me to look into some of these laws, especially with some of the perplexity I saw because what you were trying to permit here was already already permitted by right in the state of Georgia. Specifically regarding educational and entertaining tours. The Georgia law fifty seven seventy allows under its agritourism educational and entertaining tours to be conducted on agricultural project projects. The Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the tours state by right. Georgia law fifty one three, sections twenty through twenty six encourage the recreational use of agricultural private land. Specifically, they call out fishing, petting zoos, picnicking, nature studies, which I think extends to photography. Georgia law, of course, that you're familiar with more with the winery, three, six, twenty one dot one C subsection B allows a tasting room on the property. So state law allows a law by right of what they are and have been doing and are proposing to do that you seek to try to permit. You know the history. You permit, I watched as you permitted them as a farm winery. I also watched as you revised the alcohol chapter to incorporate farm wineries. I'd call your attention to section four dash eighty five F three that specifically states that a farm winery's alcohol permit extends to any wedding facilities that are on site. A reasonable person should assume that you intended that there would be a wedding facility when you granted that alcohol permit. With the withdrawal of the concert, I'm a little confused as to whether or not they're actually asking for a noise variance. They already have the right by right under section twenty dash six sixty of Milton code to operate between fifty and fifty five decibels until eleven o'clock at night. Furthermore, section twenty dash six six E of the code also says that no permit shall be given if you so choose that allows operation above seventy peak decibels. No permit. You violated that before. I'm also confounded by staff's previous recommendation to approve these permits and a change of its considerations in support of denial. What changed even after the planning commission supported this? What changed even after the Planning Commission supported this? We all know that Milton Code is not perfect. There's nothing in there about parking on farm wineries. There's nothing that says this is what you have to have, how much you have to have. A lot of other uses, but not farm wineries. The other thing that I think is a little problematic is Milton does not have the bright line that some of the surrounding municipalities have in defining what an event is. It does call out that a concert is an event. They have withdrawn the request for a concert. So the other uses they have do not clearly, in the definitions that are in Milton's Code, talk about and qualify as an event. And so I, what I am recommending, since they have by right the ability to operate these items under Milton law, under state law, and are federally licensed, that the city withdraw pursuit of these permits and let them operate. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me if you please call the next public.
I'd like to invite Kevin Crowe to the podium, please.
Kevin Crowe, 1153 Breen Drive, Milton, Georgia. Since we're limited on time, I won't go through my points I was gonna make here, to be fair to other people in attendance, but I'm here after reading the June 10th Milton Herald article about the Painted Horse Winery, and I was amazed at the quotes from that article from the city council. I'll just kind of highlight it. You basically said you were disappointed with the Save the Farm campaign, but you were supportive of the Save Matilda's campaign when that was going on. The article stated that you're at 12 homeowners around the property spoke against these permits, but during Matilda's, there were 40 Milton residents around Matilda's who spoke against that. That wasn't enough to support a denial. Per the article, the city council said the applicant has engaged in disinformation campaign and compromised public discourse. However, during Matilda's application, a current member of the city council showed active social media campaign support for Matilda's and tried to tie it to seven acre restaurant in the public mind, and that's called polluting the public discourse. Per the article, you stated that you were upset about the Painted Horse Winery's social media posts, but you're perfectly okay with Matilda's applicants publicly deriding Milton residents in their social media posts. Not a word from the city council about that. You stated the applicant is loophole hunting, but you were perfectly okay with shoving a square peg in a round hole. Your characterization of Matilda's, not mine, when that was the applicant was seeking the most special use permit variances in the history of this city. It's ironic to hear that the noise level of 55 decibels of the winery is too much when we in the Milton community begged for twice that sound level for Matilda's, and you said, no, that's unreasonable. We want to make it three times higher. You also said that people were operating at a very high density level at this location, but you were okay with approving up to three times that same density at Matilda's. Basically, what I'm getting at here is it appears the decisions are being made more for personal relationships rather than relevant facts. The local businesswoman is being treated 100% different than prior applicants who got more than they originally asked for. But those are for long-term friends of the city. As a taxpayer, I advise you to approve these variances in these permit requests, because I think if you keep going down this road, the city taxpayers are going to have to pay for a lawsuit or settlement due to your obvious and easily documented inequitable treatment of Ms. Jackson's small business versus other entities belonging to campaign friends. Thank you.
Ken, I'd ask you, please hold your applause. Please call the next speaker.
Next, I'd like to ask Stacy Jackson to come to the podium. Okay.
Okay.
Next, David Jackson.
I'm David Jackson. My wife Stacy and I live at 2055 Bethany Way. We're the house immediately to the west of the winery. We've been there 10 years, and all of these birthday parties and weddings have been going on for 10 years. It's never been an issue for us. The winery, I don't know, it's been going on for a year or so, and to be honest, it's never been an issue for us. We've actually met more neighbors in the past year at the winery than we have in the 10 years prior. So we appreciate the winery being there. It's kind of a gathering place for the city of Milton, for our immediate neighbors especially, and we appreciate what she's doing there. Kids' birthday parties, we hear kids' birthday parties in the neighborhood directly behind me more in Cooper Sandy, more than I hear birthday parties at the winery, just because of the location of where they do all this stuff. It's far from where all the residences are. So I don't understand why there needs to be a permit. It's never been an issue in the past, and the biggest complaint that I think we've heard through the planning process was traffic. And to be honest, there hasn't been an issue with traffic either. We've been there for 10 years. There's more traffic cutting through Bethany Way to get to schools in the morning, and the biggest problem is turning left onto Hopewell from Bethany Way. If you can fix that, there's not going to be any traffic on Bethany Way because of the winery. So we appreciate you hearing us, but as far as my wife and I are concerned, it hasn't been an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, what's the time elapsed so far?
So there's 38 seconds left in this first 10 minutes for the in-support of.
I'm assuming you've got some more.
I do, I have at least 10 more.
I'm gonna go ahead and just, not that we have to use it, but recommend that we add 30 minutes. And then obviously that would go to both sides, but you know, doesn't mean we have to use all 30 minutes, but.
Mayor, can I clarify an additional 30 minutes or an extra 20?
Additional 30, well, additional, I'm gonna say 30. Council is okay with that, and hopefully we won't have to go back for that. So I'll need a motion.
Mayor, I move that we add an additional 30 minutes is just recommended. Second.
And to clarify, that's to both sides. For, I guess, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I just get a, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, long ago, whose second?
We all did, I think.
Okay. Councilman Bentley's second, I get that. And again, I'm doing that in respect to everybody here, no matter what side you are. If you've shown up here tonight, I certainly want you to have the opportunity to speak, but just ask that everybody respect the time. Okay, you'll call the next speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. And next, I'd like to invite, and my apologies if I pronounce this incorrectly, Dave Heney. Doug, I'm sorry, Doug.
So yeah, thank you so much for having me, allowing us all to come speak and extending the time. My name is Doug Heney. I live at 1994, my wife and I live at 1994 Bethany Way, across the street from David, who just spoke, I mean, catty corner from the Painted Horse. We've lived there, we've owned that property for 14 years. I actually went to Milton High School. I've been here my whole life, and to be here the rest of my life. Let me start by saying the same thing I said to Councilman Bentley. I think it's pretty awful that this seems to be something that's causing neighbors to line up on opposite sides of the aisle without having had a conversation with each other or with the folks at the Painted Horse. Tony Rich and I spoke, and we can agree to disagree. We can respect each other as people and still have a relationship. I hope that this isn't something that neighbors get so heated about, that they can't just agree to disagree and still be good with each other. As the rabbi said earlier to kick us off, and as a Christian, I completely agree, we can all work through this process with respect and dignity, and I hope that that's the case, and that there's no hard feelings with all the folks in the room or with any of you when all this is over. I think that took longer than I expected, so I'll read quicker. At first, I was against this too, as the fear, all the rumors out there was that they were going to put an amphitheater across the street, and I was totally against that. I did not want the next Verizon or Mayor's Bank or whatever it is to be put there. That's not what they're asking. They've actually pared down their requests, as we've heard tonight, to something that is not as onerous. It's not negative to our neighborhood. There seems to be a lot of confusion as to what the real issue is. There was originally three requests. It was kiddie parties, adult parties, and concert events. In the Planning Commission meeting that was just talked about earlier, where I think it was actually supported by staff, the initial part of the meeting for kiddie parties took two hours and 45 minutes, because we spent two hours and 45 minutes talking about free beer and barbecue and noise and stuff that didn't even apply to kiddie parties, because most of the people complaining about the problem didn't really understand what the problem is. The problem was number three, the big concerts, which has since been withdrawn. So an hour left with kiddie parties and ancillary music for the winery and weddings, which are pretty small weddings, and as David Jackson said earlier, who lives directly next door, not been a problem in 10 years. The real issues are noise and traffic. So let's talk about this. So noise, we've heard large concert, and again, that's off the table, so I'm not even concerned about that. What we're really talking about is noise for really small weddings, where it's not, they're not, it's not a whole bunch of people, and we're talking about noise for the ancillary music for the winery, which the last time Lindsay and I went, we decided, you know what, let's walk there along Bethany Way. It was, there's traffic for sure, but let's walk it and see when we actually hear the music for the winery. We got halfway between my house, and again, if you look at that map, proximity-wise, other than Stacy and David, we're in the south, directly across the street. We're one of the next closest houses. My house is closer approximately to where they actually have the music than anybody in Cooper City. We walked halfway up Bethany Way from my house to the winery before we could even hear the music. We were almost out there. That's at their property line. It's, to me, that's not a problem.
God, this is.
Not that big deal. So the traffic, I've been to this building a few times. The first time I came here was about traffic on my street, because people fly up and down my street all the time. There have been wrecks and really bad wrecks, and those wrecks are always, not always, mostly drivers who are speeding, and it's been pretty devastating, some of those wrecks. It's not a couple out on a date to a winery. So to say that the traffic is so bad, there's not a ton of cars either. It's just, there's just not. And again, I live, I have the worst turn onto Bethany Way from anyone else. I live on the inside curve. My left-hand turn is blind on both sides. It's awful. Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, Sundays, there's a cop that I can see from my driveway on the street because of the Painted Horse. What does that do? That causes everybody to slow down. I don't have people flying by. When my 16-year-old takes a left and everyone's going slower, that matters to me. Yeah, I live right there. I want that slower. Having the cops out there does that. This other concern about there being businesses on Bethany Way, there's always been rural businesses. Farm at Pamela was one, Pleasant Hill Farms was one, those provided for the land that kept it from becoming neighborhoods in the past. Finally, the Haygood General Store, which is right in front of David Jackson's house, the old brick structure that everyone in the city thought was so cool, they put a sign in front of it, until a speeder knocked down the sign, and brings me back to my original point of people flying up and down the street. So I'm not opposed to the Painted Horse having live ancillary music during winery hours. I'm not opposed to them having small weddings with the people limitations that they have expressed. Absolutely want those in there. But again, I don't want a ton of folks there. I don't want live concerts. I don't believe that's what's being requested. I'm in support because they aren't breaking any laws. They're not being obnoxious or a nuisance or doing anything negative for our area, and I don't like the idea of limiting our freedoms just because we don't like it or we disagree. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Ms. Christine Milo to the podium, please.
There, I'm Christine Milo at 14391 Club Circle. I am somebody who has been to the winery before, have no affiliations with them, but I just want to say I haven't been to these other meetings before. For a city who prides itself on its independence and supports its locals so much, I'm appalled that the locals are essentially trying to shut a locally-owned and run business down. A business that supports other local businesses, if you don't know, they purchase foods and goods from other surrounding businesses in Alpharetta. It's a business that creates jobs and a business that helps our local economy thrive. I'm truthfully ashamed at some of my local community members, including this council, for their actions against this local business. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, if you please call the next speaker.
Mariah Merchantani. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Call the next speaker.
And Mayor, can I please just have clarification? Bailey Stein and Tori McKinley, you did not indicate if you were in support or in opposition? So I would like to call then Bailey to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Bailey Stay, 1045 Pine Grove Drive. I'm actually the tasting room manager at the Painted Horse Winery. I have worked parties on both sides for the equestrian birthday parties of all ages, small, small children, like small, small children, too. I just worked a 65-year-old birthday party the other day. They come, they like to sit and look at the beauty that Painted Horse is. I don't know if any of you have been there, but it's fantastically gorgeous. They sit, they hang out, they might have a glass of wine, they look at, they pet the animals, and they hang about. It's not overly outrageous, not loud, not crazy, but it is beautiful, and that's kind of the best part about working there. I have lived in Alpharetta and Milton my entire life. I've grown up here. I was born at Northside Hospital, Atlanta, all the way, and I have seen so much destruction throughout my life here, especially recently. A lot of green space that I have loved my whole life has been taken away, and I come to Painted Horse every day and am so thankful that I get to see the beauty that that place is. I also get to see the people walk in and see the beauty on their faces. They come in absolutely astonished that this exists this close to a city. They come and they just want to have a good time and look at how gorgeous this city is. I'm a person that wants to keep that going. Working for Pamela, she also wants to keep that going. We love this city, and we hope that you guys can support that. Thank you. And I also wanted to, on that note of everybody being here, we have a lot of support here. If anybody could stand up that is in support of us, just so we can kind of see who we are. That says a lot. All of these people are almost all friends of mine who want to support Pamela, and I think that that should say a lot. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Let me if you please call the next speaker.
Hi there. My name is Tori McKinley. I live at 13085 Morris Road here in Milton. I wanted to thank you, first of all, for giving me a chance to speak. I'm the assistant tasting room manager at Painted Horse Winery. I sought out Milton as a city for a place to do something better for myself. Living in the city of Atlanta during a global pandemic wasn't a great place to be, and lo and behold, here I find this beautiful horse farm and winery in the middle of Milton that's outdoors, that can accommodate people and their families while we're all kind of forced inside, keeping that, you know, social aspect going on. And kudos to a business owner who can actually thrive in such an environment like that and build something for herself. You know, earlier as we were talking, the point that, you know, on the agenda tonight about the election, you said that you really appreciated some spirited people talking about upholding integrity. I can tell you, after working 15 years in hospitality, there are a handful of owners that have the integrity level of Pamela Jackson. The fact that she has dotted every i and crossed every t that she's needed to, to be neighborly, she embodies the idea of loving thy neighbor, even though her name was kind of drug through the mud on this, from what I can understand. She is constantly there, not only for us as staff, but embodies that Georgia Southern hospitality that I've worked in for so long by opening her backyard to people who, after all the building in Alpharetta, don't have much to want. It's really nice to have that open green space that everyone can get together at. In terms of the different addendums that had to happen, I know John, the police officer out there, I actually recognize him from working off-duty out front. His parents live just down the street. They weren't for it either, but then they came and visited, and they saw it, and they pet the animals, and they spent some time around the horses, and they had a glass of wine. Now they love it. And they saw it, and they pet the animals, and they spent some time around the horses, and they had a glass of wine. Now they love it. Generally, if you can seek to understand first, I promise you, you'll fall in love with the place. I would hate to see, you know, much like Bailey said, another area that is overdeveloped. And again, kudos to someone who has made their memories for so long in the city of Milton in this area that wants to preserve that for future generations. Her daughter Juliette Johnson runs a horse farm. She's director of farm management. She's also my boss. Do horse riding lessons there. Had a two-and-a-half-year-old get on the horse for a first time, just wee horsey, you know? Up to, as Bailey mentioned, older people coming out and never getting on a horse before our director of operations. I had to put her on my horse the first couple of weeks there. So the type of memories I'm making there are memories for people coming out to have a glass of wine and see the farm granted. It's for their kids that are running around because maybe they don't have a backyard of their own. And I would just really like us to consider to allow these birthday parties, these get-togethers, these functions to be able to continue and hopefully expand that. To be able to get married in your backyard in Milton would be a pretty awesome thing. But I appreciate the time for you letting me speak tonight, and I, I hope that we're able to move forward and continue to have some good times here in the city of Milton.
Thank you. Tammy, if you please call the next speaker.
The next one, I will read into the record. It's from Annalee Jackson. She's at two one zero five Bethany Way. And she wanted to, for the record, show that she was in support of the farm, this, this item. I also have another one from Mary Mayer at one zero six zero seven zero at Henderson Road in Milton. She wanted, for the record, for her to know that we are, that she is in favor of granting permits for events at the Painted Farm Winery. And we also have another one to read to the record from Kyle Reynolds at two zero nine five Bethany Way. And he is in support of the farm winery. That concludes the support on this item. I have more support for the next item in that public comment.
So now, one of those to speak that.
In the opposition?
In opposition.
I'd like to invite Ms. Casey Sturm to the podium, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Casey Sturm. I'm with the law firm Weisman P.C. That's thirty-five hundred Lennox Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three one, three oh three two six. I have the pleasure of representing Erin and Joseph Canous. Unfortunately, they could not be here this evening due to a pre-existing conflict. So when we were here last, they indicated that they had a conflict with the rescheduling. They, along with many others of the impacted community, have not been able to attend. Mr. and Mrs. Canous own and reside on property that's in the lake at Cooper Sandy Neighborhood. Property is located at eight hundred Cooper Sandy Co. They reside there with their young children and extended family. They bought the property in this area based on the fact that this was a residential community, large-scale, high-value residential community, and that the area supported kind of the family values that go along with that. In looking at the property, they also bought this based on the fact that the anticipated use for the property and the comprehensive, long-term use for this property also highlighted those consistent uses, a continued focus on large, high-value residential communities and a real family-oriented value. They have experienced extensive interruption with the use and enjoyment of their property based on activities that have been conducted and carried out at the Painted Horse Winery. Their property is catty-corner to that property, and they have experienced excessive noise has woken up their young children. They have not been able to engage in family activities at their property. And I won't go into it. I know you've heard from them before and you've heard from others. But it has been an extensive interruption and a nuisance to their use and enjoyment of their property. I recognize that you all do not have an easy task before you. And I think we all recognize that last time we were here as well. I want to say that I was encouraged by the last meeting of this body. There was very thoughtful consideration on both sides of the equation to the issues involved here. And I was very encouraged to hear this council, despite requests for you all to make a decision at that June seventh meeting, to deny these applications. The opportunity that was extended to the applicant to meet with the impacted community. Not unlike how I talk to my children, you have the opportunity and the ability to change the outcome. And one of the remarks I remember closely when we left here is a comment by the public that said, "But how are we going to ensure this happens?" And one of the council members said, "Because it behooves the applicant to make sure that the communications happen." I was encouraged by that. I was discouraged by what next happened. I expected, fully expected, that the applicant would immediately reach out to the impacted community. I was discouraged to find that it was the city that initiated communications. I was discouraged by the process of those communications. I was discouraged to find that the applicant did not appear to be willing or interested in engaging in meaningful discussion on the issues that so dearly impact their neighboring community. This is an interesting case from a zoning perspective. Oftentimes, residents come before you and they are forced to project what is likely to occur if a use is allowed. This instance is different, and that is because the applicant was carrying on these uses without the ability or authority to do so, and the impact has already been realized. It is a nuisance. It is an inconvenience. It is a burden on the surrounding community. It is a detriment to their use and enjoyment of their properties. In looking at the uses, I want to note for the record, it has already been well documented, both in testimony and comments, that there is a discrepancy in what is projected as historic uses of this property. I will not go through that again, but I think the record shows that there is a disconnect between what is presented as a historic use of this property and what long-term residents of this community, twenty and thirty years, recognize as having occurred on that property. The intensity of use, when we get down to it, as in other zoning issues, is a location, location, location. The intensity of the use being proposed for this location is incompatible. It does not coincide with your surrounding properties. It does not coincide with your current or projected uses for this area. So it is an unfortunate aspect, but it is one that was recognized and the applicant was well aware of had they paid attention to the uses. I think one of the things that needs to be considered is that when we talk about a legal non-conforming use, one, it had to occur and it had to be legal when it occurred. And legal non-conforming uses typically are also not authorized to be expanded. When we seek to expand a legal non-conforming use to the extent it is that, we are required to bring it into compliance with current laws. And what seems to be happening here is that there's a recognition that we are moving from what historically may have been a more agriculture, equestrian use of this property to what is being purported as a more events use under a concept of a winery. And it appears that maybe at one point in time, it was understood to be a boutique winery. We simply question, is that winery actually meeting the requirements that sustain it as a primary use of this property? We don't see the evidence for that. We also don't believe that there's evidence that this use supports the activities that are being, occurring in that context. Meaning that farm wineries in Georgia do have regulations on them. It doesn't mean that once you're designated a farm winery, you have no use regulations. They have regulations. They have certain annual production requirements they're supposed to be meeting. And based on those production requirements, we have authorization for things such as tasting rooms. It does not appear, from our research into this, that we believe those requirements are being met. We also have grave concerns about transparency as far as what uses are being promoted in front of you to obtain agricultural use, as well as what uses are presented to other bodies such as tax commissioners and other ten entities that regulate the property as far as the primary use of the project. So it seems to be a disconnect in what the applicant contends based on what they're trying to achieve. We would ask that, based on the recent recommendation by the staff for denial, we ask that this board take that staff recommendation and deny the application. And part of that, we recognize that there is a difficult task ahead of you in how do we isolate out different uses? And in that regard, I would say, again, it's been very clear that in this process, these use permits cannot be considered in isolation. To do so ignores what is going on, which is that the primary use of this property is no longer what it's being presented as. And that if we try to separate out the different uses, we have to be entirely clear about what those specific uses actually entail. So as written, these use permits were broad enough that all of these uses presumably, or perceivably, depending on how you interpret it, could be authorized under any one of them. So I would encourage you to consider them together and to support the staff's recommendation of denial. In that regard, I would also suggest that the variances be considered in the same light and that those be denied as well. Thank you for your time. I think it's important that you hear from the community impacted. So I am going to step away, and again, just thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Tammy, if you please call the next speaker.
I'd like to call Mr. Bill Garrett to the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I've lived there for forty-six years, forty-four years. Tell them my age now.
If you don't mind, just for the record.
I'm sorry, thirteen four fifty Hopewell Road, right next door to the Jacksons. They've joined my property. First off, I want to say this. I have been there since Mr. and Ms. Jackson bought the property. I have not observed anything that was disturbing or anything that was out of line as far as all of their activities has been concerned of what all she's claimed that they've had. The things that she's claiming that they've been doing, if they've been doing it. I haven't been disturbed at all. There was absolutely nothing wrong with it. And what that boils down to, in my opinion, is this. AG one regulations and authorized uses as they stand is all she needs. The only thing that has happened that causes me to be here with this thing is, and it started happening about, I'd say March or April, maybe. I started hearing a lot of loud music. I started observing, I'd say, a hundred automobiles moving in and out of that property down there and watching big crowds coming in and out. The noise level started up. When I looked into it, I found out that Ms. Jackson had hired or went into a contract with some music company. And this music company, they had already built a pavilion or a bandstand up there. And they was, a bandstand there, and they were putting on shows. And these people were coming, and I guess they're paying tickets or buying tickets to get in there. And so what it really, in my opinion, boils down to in this whole thing, if we boil it all down and put it in a nutshell, Ms. Jackson is trying to convert this farmland, or I should, agricultural area into a commercial operation of an entertainment venue. And this, she's wanting to run this thing on a show basis. And the only other thing that I'm going to point out to you is she point, she's, I saw it when I was at the last meeting that we had here. I saw a, a plat, and she's got an eight-thousand-foot house or building that's right outside my back door. Now, I don't know how much, how many grapes she's growing, but the only grapes I've seen is probably about an acre and a half or maybe two acres that's right outside my back door. Now, whether she's got another vineyard up on the other hill, I haven't seen it. But I know this, and it doesn't take an MIT graduate to figure it out. She's not, she's not producing enough grapes to put into a big so-called winery that she's wanting to build over there. And the only possible use that that building can be for would be more parties and more, she's calling it drink, tasting, and this sort of thing. But I also understand that she's having a caterer come in there. I think it's Q or something like that. It's bringing food and also alcoholic beverages in. Now, I don't, that, I guess they've got the, the permit for it, but this is what she's doing. And what she's doing as far as the agricultural part of growing grapes and this sort of thing, there's nothing wrong with that. She hasn't disturbed anybody with that. But when she comes in and she starts changing this into a musical and entertainment venue, and it's been described in the last several weeks as bringing Buckhead up into Milton County, uh, city of Milton. And that's exactly what she's trying to do. Yes, what she talked about here, she's needing to make money. She's here to make money. She don't care anything about her neighbors. We have had groups get together several times here in this building. And she's sat in one or two of the meetings, and she don't say anything. We've tried to work with, tried to come up with something as a solution to work things out. And I've, I've always felt like if I could work something out on a basis as far as agreement, that's better than any kind of court situation, which I dealt with for fifty years. And the neighbors tried to reach her to work something out. She didn't make anything meaningful, no meaningful opposition or anything there. So what the, my position is this, and I'm asking you to look at it. Your staff has recommended denial on this whole thing, and that's exactly what should be done here, is to deny this thing. She can still continue doing what she says she's been doing all these years, and she's saying she wanted agriculture. What is it? The grandfather, bringing in the grandfather clause. Can't think like I used to, not quick as a bee, so you just have to deal with me a little bit. But she's talking about grandfather, that's what she says she's been doing. Well, let her keep on doing like she's been doing. She hadn't disturbed anybody. But since March or April, when she starts throwing these entertainment situations in, that's what's got to go. And this thing of a big building as far as winery, she don't need that. Let, let her produce enough grapes to need something like that, and then maybe come before you. We'll talk about that two or three years from now. I'll ask you at this particular point, with no uncertain term, deny the petition. Let her keep doing what she's been doing under the grandfather clause.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy, if you please call the next speaker.
Mr. William Stample.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Bill Stample, thirteen eight twenty Bethany Oaks Point, Milton, Georgia. Resident of Bethany Oaks for twenty-five years, also served as president homeowner association for ten. So I've dealt with situations like this within our, within our own neighborhood for, for quite some time. I've also seen Milton changed dramatically over twenty-five years. All the traffic, all the, you know, hustle and bustle, right, teaching girls how to drive in this traffic on these roads. You know, and since I last spoke in front of the council, nothing's changed. The traffic is still there. The noise is still there. Came home from dinner the other night about eight o'clock with my wife, stopped at the corner of Hopewell and Bethany, heard the music, right? Went out on the back, you know, on the back deck, heard the music, walked the neighborhood, heard the music. So that continues. The traffic's going to get worse, right? We're building the, the roundabout there, starting next month, as I've seen, right? I think it's going to get bad as well. I mean, I, you see the cars coming out of, out of the Painted Horse every day, right? They're stuck there, right? They're trying to go either right, left, or straight. The people who are trying to go straight, it's, it's a nightmare. It's just going to get worse with the roundabout construction happening, so, you know? And then finally, you know, the Uber and Lyft drivers, they continue to park in our neighborhood. We see them. I see them all the time, and I, I run them off. I said, "Guys, you can't park it. First of all, there's no soliciting sign." Right? Second of all, they're, you know, they shouldn't be there, right? And so the end of the day, the bottom line is, you know, recommendation's been to deny, please deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Tammy, if you please call the next speaker.
Mr. Tony Rich. Mr. Tony Rich.
Good evening. Tony Rich, nineteen sixty Bethany Way. Thanks for your time tonight. Standing in front of this podium to talk about the Painted Horse Winery is becoming too familiar. We all have better, certainly more enjoyable things to do with our time. And today's my mom's 80th birthday, and I'd rather be at home having dinner with her. But instead, I'm here again to talk about this winery. And the reason I'm doing that is because we have to stand up for our homes. We have to stand up for our families. We have to stand up for our neighborhood. And we have to do the very best we can to protect our property values and our rural, small-town way of life. We've all seen the misleading social media pieces that the Painted Horse Winery has been spreading around on social media. It's called Save Our Farm, Save The Farm. It has been so full of misleading information suggesting that the neighbors in the city want to see this farm fail. And that's just simply not true. I think we all know that's not true. I don't want to see this farm fail. I would very much like to see this farm succeed. But we want to see it stay as a real farm and frankly, not turn into a weekend drinking spot and a private event facility. For 30 years, I found out Pam has lived on this farm. It's known all over town as a great place to keep and ride horses, for kids to take riding lessons from her daughter Juliette, and to have kids' birthday parties and horse camps. And frankly, those are all great activities that seem to have been lost in the shuffle as this winery has continued to get out of hand. Pam has taken this nice horse farm and completely distorted it with this winery, which is very unfortunate. It started out small and harmless enough. When we first heard about it, my wife and I thought it was a very, very interesting idea. We look forward to supporting it. My understanding was they were going to plant a few vines, make some wine, offer a few tastings. But quickly, in the early months of 2020, it evolved into live amplified music, selling wine by the glass in large crowds, which created problems with traffic that I think we've all dealt with. That's when it all started. There is no place in our neighborhood for an events and drinking facility that invites up to 100 people to come in every single weekend. That's a threat to our safety, to our property values, and to our peace and quiet that we all signed up for. It's bad for our neighborhood. And if it's allowed to happen, it's a very bad precedent for the City of Milton. If Pam wants to save the farm, how about keeping it as a farm? Which is where it all started. How about focusing on what has already made Pam lot a successful farm and stop cannibalizing the horse business for the drinking business? Focus on horses, focus on kids. If they want to grow grapes, make a little wine, and offer some tastings, fine. But stop bringing large crowds of people in every weekend with live amplified music. It's just not necessary. I respectfully request that our city council unanimously reject any and all uses that allow this farm to develop and operate as an event center and a drinking establishment in our residential area. For what it's worth, my wife Sarah and I fully support everything that Pam lot is doing with horses and hope that this council can figure out a way for them to continue doing what they've done for several decades without allowing this facility to turn into a commercial establishment, which we don't need. Thanks for your time. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Tammy, next speaker, please.
I'd like to call Mr. John Peoples to the podium.
I'm John Peoples. I live at eighteen thirty-five Bethany Way. My wife Leslie and I have been there for 36 years. I'm going to be very brief and just reiterate what Tony said, Tony Rich said. We're in support of agricultural activities. That's exactly what Ag One is supposed to be. That's what the neighborhood is supposed to be. But if you have to have a police officer directing traffic, and we can't sit on our back deck and enjoy our own glass of wine then without hearing music that maybe we didn't choose, that's, we're not in support of that. Thank you for your time very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Jason Joseph. Mr. Rick Steingard? Steingard, my apologies.
Good evening. Rick Steingard, twenty-six hundred Bethany Creek Court. Thanks for having us. Thanks for what you guys do. I'm sure you want to hear more about this, right? I'll simply say I agree with most of the deny speakers. Ag One use, my sister went to camps there. Great facility for the city. Concert venue, drinking establishment. We got downtown Alpharetta. Send them over there, maybe downtown Crab Apple. But that's good enough. Please keep the traffic and the noise down. We are outside the initial notify zone. I can hear that music at night. I don't know how the folks close by can, but I can hear it at night. I've gone over there to see that there was an event running. It was their music. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, I would like to read this one into the record. It is from Theodore Cox at one three eight six zero Bethany Oaks Point. There are 58 homes at Bethany Oaks subdivision. In a typical year, perhaps five are sold. We know this market is difficult, but in the past three months, four of the nine homes closest to the winery have listed and sold, including the home closest to the winery just this month. I entered, bear with me. I introduced myself to the new owner and asked if he knew about this evening. He said he didn't and seemed surprised. The selling homeowner kept it a secret. You should ask yourself why. And that concludes the opposition for this specific addenda item.
And I will close the public hearing part.
The one that you didn't speak. Can you confirm the name?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph.
Joseph, Jason Joseph.
It's Jason Joseph.
That's what the card says, Jason Joseph.
Thank you. So now I will open it back up to council for any comments, questions to staff. Obviously, you can ask the applicant if you have any question for the applicant, so. Anybody?
Well, I do.
Carol?
Some water first. Let me state that I understand your passion. Your energy is certainly admirable. And I don't think that anybody appreciates a horse farm more than I do, with the exception of perhaps some other council members. But I'm not sure that we've hit the nail on the head with why we're in this position. The issue in short, I believe, is what was presented by the applicant regarding the farm winery does not reflect the reality of operations of Painted Horse Winery. On May sixth, 2019, you were asked, Ms. Jackson, what is the business going to look like? And the response was, as far as the winery goes, for what we are talking about here, first off, I'm a private estate, and I'm going to stay a private estate. My doors are not going to be open nine to five, where anybody can walk in. We will arrange wine tastings with my master winemaker. Then people can sign up for it on a Thursday evening. You have to sign up, and that's it. Not going to be open nine to five. This is my home. This is where I live. I understand your concern. I don't want to shoot myself in the foot here. But it's when we get to the other special use one that I think you'll need to come out and look at it, because I do have other larger events. That is where the issue is going to be, not with the wine tasting. But that's not a part of this. I'm trying to clarify, that is not a part of the winery. That is part of the farm where the horses are. They are two separate things. And the special events is going to be for the farm where the horses are and that acreage, not for the winery. There will not be any traffic change as far as the winery goes. But the reality is events and alcohol have commingled across the property. And even Georgia regulations said wineries can be, says that wineries must be combined to a tasting room. Ironically, my best friend from Buckhead, who lives in Buckhead, was invited two Saturdays ago to an evening at Painted Horse Winery. I was unaware of that. She said nice things about the event. She also said that there were some 100 people on the lawn, other people walking the property, enjoying wine. Again, the issue in short is what we approved that evening a year ago was an alcohol permit for a wine tasting event in New Georgia Winery. We did not approve an alcohol permit for a bar for an expansive attendance in this kind of a venue. It wasn't on the radar. It was not what was presented. And I think before we get into discussing this tonight as a council, it's important to revisit what our expectations were because we have other parties that we have to be responsive to because they had no expectations. They probably didn't even know about all this. So I submit this respectfully, that we have responded at that time what we were told it would be. And it has not been. And therein lies the problem for me. And I have some suggestions, but I will yield the floor to my colleagues.
I did spend a lot of time looking back at what we did back in 2019. And I do want to express my appreciation for the invitation to come and see the winery and the farm. This is really complicated. And it was helpful to me to see. This is not a situation that the council or the city has brought on itself. It is a choice of introducing another use, which was the winery. We, when we approved the consumption on premises, it was a very defined boundary. There were pictures of it. And so as I watched what we agreed to, I had to go back. And I know that I envisioned a tasting room, tastings, and people deciding to buy your wine. And that is exactly what I support. I support this ag use. Those grapevines are beautiful. And it's, the setting with the farm is wonderful, too. But what we have is a wine bar. And that was very clear to me when I visited on Thursday. Yes, there's other great things going on. But as we all know, whoever's in horses, alcohol is far more profitable. So you have the right to grow grapes and manufacture wines. However, this council has issued a consumption on premises permit. And I would ask our city attorney and our manager to discuss the limitations of the consumption on premises permit that we agreed to. I feel certain, and after reading some legal descriptions, that the premises is defined as a definite closed partitioned location wherein alcoholic beverages are sold in the immediate adjacent area.
That's right. Councilmember Bentley, that's the way the on-premise consumption license reads in the code, that the footprint for the use of the alcohol and the consumption of the alcohol are to occur in a discreet premise, meaning some sort of a structure as well as the areas immediately adjacent to them. That is true.
So thank you for that. So the proposed use permit for the agricultural-related activities, I support that. It's consistent with our land use plan. I think it's consistent with this council's vision. And it's certainly consistent with your neighbors. Everyone, I have not heard anyone have an issue with your agricultural activities. However, when we are considering the concurrent uses of the farm winery, the tasting room with consumption on premises, conditions must provide separation and intensity limits to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of consumers and the adjacent property owners. Because we've just done something different than what you have said that you've done for years. And I know that. I've seen the blends on the mailbox for 15 years. And no one has an issue with that. But now this council is faced with trying to allow you to continue to be agricultural with the introduction of alcohol. And that's difficult. The single greatest variable here is the alcohol. And I think that this council is willing to roll up our sleeves and figure out a way to allow your agricultural activities to continue as well as a farm winery. That is what we've heard from the community, and that's what I support.
Robin, got a couple of questions. So right now, what activity that isn't already available by right as an AG1 property is being asked for in this request?
In this specific agricultural-related?
In U twenty-one dash oh one slash VC twenty-one dash oh three.
So it would be the birthday parties, the camps, like the summer camps.
So that activity isn't available by right?
Not, no, because this is a use permit to allow it, so.
Well, I understand. But we've heard from a bunch of people that this is activity that's been ongoing for some time.
We have, we've also heard, I think, that there's a disagreement over that. And there is between the owner and I think the city staff. So I mean, I agree with you.
I understand that. I just wanted to get the facts out, that just because there's been an inappropriate use of property or a flexing of the zoning allowances doesn't mean that it's right. The fact that I've been doing something wrong forever doesn't make it right. It doesn't create allowable use just because we've been doing it for a while.
I agree.
Okay. So the permit for the first item that we're talking about is to actually allow those activities that have been ongoing or purportedly ongoing for some time?
That's correct.
Okay. If we were to approve that use, but not to, well, now let me reword this. The two variances, how are they important to the use permit itself?
I believe they're both very important to it because they're part of the development standards of the use permit. So they are needed.
Right. So let's just say if the hundred-foot setback activity, the item number one, was not granted, does that take away the ability for the events to occur or for the activity to occur as described?
In my opinion, it would because many of the, if not all, the accesses cross through that activity area. And much of the parking does. So that might be used for that.
Hey, this is the reason I'm asking this question. Because we're not talking about building new parking areas, are we? Is this the existing parking areas that would have the problems?
Yeah, let me go to my site plan. Give me a second. Okay. Make it bigger. So here we have, the orange is the property line of the property. So it cuts out the corner here. So that's the orange. The hundred-foot setback, that activity setback, as well as it happens to be that barns are supposed to be 100 feet away as well, that's depicted here. It was a yellow with a red line. Yellow sometimes doesn't come. But here, it's the largest setback or demarcation here. So that's 100 foot. So the blue is depicting driveways and entrances and parking, existing parking spaces that are within that 100-foot activity area. Okay? So speaking to the first variance of the activity area. So we have parking and we have driveways. And one could say that even certain buildings, not knowing exactly what their business model is, where do the birthday parties actually occur? I'm not sure about that. That's, but let's That's, but let's say if they occur around some of these barns or covered or fenced areas, then that would be within the activity area. So that explains the activities that are currently occurring within that setback.
Okay. For the second item, the animal structures, are those the pink boxes?
Within, they are the pink. Not all of them, this is the house.
Right.
This is a barn. But within the 100-foot, yes.
No, the ones that are part of the variance.
Right. They are the second part of the variance.
So, I'm not asking you this question. I'm telling the council, my understanding is that what we're seeking to consider in this first item is to provide those activities that we think, rumor has it, have historically been taking place on the property. And allowing some variances to let the existing structure serve the purpose that it's always served. Okay? This doesn't cover, none of this approval would cover any kind of event facility. So it doesn't make it a concert venue. It doesn't create those activities unless I've misread the substance of this. So I want to make sure we get to the piece of this that gets to be what I think is controversial. To me, the existing option to allow them to continue what they've historically done, as we've heard from people, both those in opposition as well as those in support, that activity isn't the activity that's problematic. So I wanted to find out if people were in agreement with that or people had problems with that kind of a statement.
Joe? Paul? Councilman Longoria, I'd like to respond to part of that. I am in agreement with you that the activities that have been happening on the property historically for the equestrian-related activities are probably appropriate. There's, except for one that I'll address in a moment. If you, what's also not addressed in the setback is also the fact that part of the riding ring, at least one of them, is in the 100-foot setback also, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, yes.
So there are a couple of things that have to be considered. In addition to the parking, the housing of the animals, there's also the riding ring that has to be considered. Those activities have gone on for a long time. The birthday parties probably have gone on without issue. Those are the kinds of things I probably can support. But when you layer on the other things that you've alluded to, that's when I begin to take issue with some of the way these things had to be blended. I wasn't on council at the time the alcohol permit was granted. I went back and watched that meeting very carefully. What I watched at one point was Ms. Jackson take control of the cursor so she could show where the wine-related activities were going to take place. And she stated there was going to be a clear line of demarcation between the two facilities, and that the events and activities were not going to be co-mingled. She was not asking for events for the winery. She was asking for events for the equestrian. She was not going to be, parking was not going to be any different. The traffic was not going to be any different. And yet, what we've heard is there is a significant difference in traffic. There's a significant difference in parking. But the parking is, for the winery, is now blending into the previously equestrian-used parking.
Right.
When you begin to layer on some of these other activities, I had the good fortune of visiting as well last Thursday and went with an open mind to see the kinds of things that both individually or collectively these two businesses would present. One of the things that struck me both good and bad was something quite wonderful in one way, but very problematic in another. The part that was wonderful in one way, and Ms. Jackson pointed out very proudly, was a young man who is now part of her operation, who is a special needs individual. And he is apparently blossoming in his role. Try not to get emotional about this. I also have a special needs niece who has benefited tremendously from what's called hypotherapy. When you introduce these children to large animals, where they have a chance to groom them, pet them, care for them. And my niece also has blossomed as a result of that. So that part of the experience was wonderful. But where I became very troubled by it was this young man, who appeared to be very much in control of a significant animal, was walking it from one part of the farm winery, or one part of the total space, to another. He was probably moving it from an activity area to a stall through the parking area. That's where I became extremely alarmed. Because you've got, at that particular day, there were probably a dozen people or so, maybe more, who were enjoying glasses of wine out in the winery portion, well, actually, an extended winery portion, outside of what I would have been, outside of what I understood, the tasting room. In the immediate proximity to the tasting room, there was wine tasting or wine consumption going on well beyond that. But you then take that person who's been consuming wine in the hot afternoon sun, who's now about to enter a multi-ton vehicle, who may also engage with that same individual who appears to be very much in control of the animal, which are now introducing a motorized vehicle, an unpredictable large animal, a young man who appears to be performing at a very high level of his required skills. But I think it's a recipe for disaster. And that's where the two began to come apart for me. I'll have more comments to make, I think, as the evening goes on. But I would just propose to you that it's not as simple as what was going on before, when you begin to blend those two uses of that area.
So you're concerned about safety, is what you're saying?
In this particular demonstration, yes.
Okay. I'm just looking to, because the council is going to make decisions that are either going to allow the citizen to operate her facility the way she claims she has been, but do it legally, okay? Or we're going to deny her that right. So the second piece of the business...
Maybe offer conditions by which she might be able to operate differently than she's doing today, but still allow some of those activities, but just differently than she's operating today.
Well, my point is that we're either going to say, yes, you can do what you've always done, or no, you can't. And by giving conditions that she hasn't stated, we're saying, no, you can't, but you could if you did this. Okay? So I would agree with you. The second piece of business we'll get to in a second. But my inclination was to offer up a motion to allow use. But if there's still discussion that needs to take place on where we are in terms of just allowing existing use to continue, then let's have that discussion.
I think there are lots of ways. It's my objective tonight to find a way to allow the historical use that are not a nuisance to continue. It's a healthy equestrian, active farm.
So what needs to change?
Well, I'll get there. I'm also interested in allowing a farm winery that by right can take place.
I don't want to talk about a farm winery because this is about agricultural uses.
I agree with you. But it has to be considered when the applicant is blending the two operations in areas that she had said, in order to secure her permit, were not going to take place.
Well, we could deal with that later because...
Well, you can't.
Oh, the heck, we can't? We give her her permit. If she's outside of the proper operating conditions for her alcohol permit, based on what she told us and what we decided was going to be applicable, we can take that away from her.
You can go.
Okay.
And based on the current activities, that should happen. But I'm looking for a way to make it work. Where we can provide some potential conditions where both can be successful. Sure. I'm done. I'm done.
Yeah. Well, I think people understand where we're sitting.
I guess my question, as I'm kind of going to Councilman Longoria's point, is how can we mix by-right uses, restrictions into something, into a use permit that we're seeing today? Like, I think to your point, you know, I think we're all in agreement on the ag uses, what she's continually to be doing. Because, Robin, if you bring up that map, I mean, if we deny those variances, practically, she has to...
Rebuild.
She has to, like, demolish her buildings that she's had for years. So I think there are two, I think we have two separate issues here. And I think the first one, we know how to address. It's the second one we don't know how to address.
Could I say something?
Hold on, one second. Go ahead, Rick.
Okay. Where I kind of come down on this is listening to the neighbors, listening to the owner, looking at what's going on. I think the farm and the existing uses that have gone on for years from an equestrian standpoint have added value and are in line with a lot of the things that we need to do or we'd like to see go on within Milton. And I think I'm okay with trying to condition and make something work. What hasn't been there is she didn't have a by-right. And I think that's where we need to be clear from a definition. She didn't have a by-right use to do some of these activities that have been taken on. What we're considering is do we, which of those or all of those do we allow? And I think we've heard from the neighbors, most of them, in fact, are, they're just fine with what's gone on in the past. It's only what has happened since the winery, since we passed that. And I agree, looking back, and I was part of that meeting, what was presented to us is not what's been happening as far as some of the things that have become a nuisance from the neighbor's viewpoint. But as far as the equestrian things, I don't have a problem with that. And even trying to correct some of the, you know, bring in line the non-conforming places that have played a part of this, I think that's something we need to consider. Because I agree, if you just say, no, you can't, you got to move these buildings, then we're basically changing something that has gone on for a long period of time. I think the issue comes with the new activities that have been going on. The amplified music, the wine consumption, not in the wine tasting room, which we originally talked about. You know, we've heard different terms like the wine tasting room lawn. I don't know what that is. That what we approved was not a general facility for people to drink wine all over the property. That was not the intent when it was presented to us. So something has been going on differently than what we approved. So I think tonight we're considering, how do we bring and allow Ms. Jackson to have the activities that she's been doing for years that actually are a good, positive part, I think most people would support, within the community? But I think we do have to talk about what has been causing the issue and what do we need to do to bring things in line with what our expectation was and what we originally approved.
Yeah, so, Robin. Do we have documentation in the meat of this request that includes coverage of hours of operation? That includes coverage of maximum number of people allowed to attend? That includes all those things that I think you provided sort of as bullet items in your presentation. But I didn't want to make too many assumptions about what or wasn't part of the actual request itself.
That wasn't it. So there are a set of conditions that are part of your packet. I recommend that you look at the actual ordinance as they're numbered correctly. But they're the same as what's at the end of the staff report. And they are what I reviewed...
Okay.
In this, in the, in my presentation. So first, it would be the agriculture-related activities based on, you know, the list of items that I talked about in the beginning, but also said that's not all-inclusive. So it's, and then it would be coordinated with the site plan, the revision on May 25th that was submitted. And here are the days and hours of operations. These are based on the applicant's request, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They originally asked till 8:00 p.m. And it was my, and I believe the city planning commission, they agreed with the 7:00 p.m. reduction. And then during the discussion and deliberation during the planning commission, they made a reduction of the number of attendees. And so the applicant agreed to those, and therefore on 3B, that's it. There shall be no more than a total of 25 attendees per day, Monday through Friday, and no more than a total of 50 attendees on Saturday and Sunday for camps, birthday parties, and educational events. And then speaking to, this is what the applicant asked for, limited farm animal petting primarily associated with other events, no more than once per week for a limit of three hours, the barnyard experience.
Okay.
Okay? And then lastly, a maximum continuous sound level of 50 dBa with a maximum peak sound level of 55.
Right.
I believe their request was a little bit higher than that. But this was based on staff's recommendation and what the planning commission recommended.
Okay. So can you tell me what changes occurred to the request and to the, you know, what the applicant was asking for that caused our opinion to change or staff's opinion to change on it being a good thing and accepting it or it not being a good thing and proposing denial?
So from the staff's recommendation at planning commission, then as it continued on, you meet the change?
Yeah.
So basically, looking at, not just looking at it individually, because I think that's what I was doing the first time around. And then I think as you live with it, you talk about it, you kind of work through things deliberately, then we found as staff that as you put those different layers, you have the agriculture-related activities. You have the already existing equestrian, which are by right, the boarding, the horseback riding, the lessons. Then you also have the farm winery. And then at the time, as well as the rural event facility, and then those items that we'll speak to later. Obviously, the applicant, you know, they had requested to withdraw the last one for the outdoor event, which would be the concerts. But still, even once you take away that last use permit, you still have multiple different uses occurring on the property.
Right.
And so that was the reasoning throughout the report why staff recommended denial.
So the bottom line is, you started to consider how the blended activity, you know, it's the intensity of use when you combine all the things that were ongoing at the property that you started, the staff had started to have concerns that that's really what changed. So rather than look at this in a vacuum as what it is, you included it in the bigger context. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have a comment along those same lines. And for the very same reason, that's why when I look at supporting the agricultural activities, I have to consider the winery in those conditions. That would be the only way that I could support the agricultural activities. Yes, they've occurred for years, but there wasn't a winery there. And there wasn't, more importantly, consumption on premises. So that has changed everything. And I think that I can find my way. You know, there was a lot of good material in your staff report. You know, there was a lot of good material in your staff report. Our legal counsel has given us a lot of good information. We can condition the agricultural activities, uh, separate that, uh, separate it from the winery activities. And I'm prepared to do that tonight.
Apologize Carol.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm just. Let me see if this is logical. I think we're all in agreement. We want the farm to thrive. I don't think that's ever been an issue. But I think we ought to skip over to the winery for a moment because that has been like the genesis of where things changed and that change has conflated the uses and therein lies the problem. So I'd ask our legal counsel, Mr. Gerard. Does the applicant, is the applicant's, uh, business, farm winery business, is that supposed to be confined to a tasting room?
Well, I'm trying to figure out if you're talking about G as far as the, the, the actual layout of the site or from the use. But my thought is, is that the farm winery connotes with it the production of the grapes, the manufacturer of the grapes into the wine, got the consumption on the premise, the tasting, uh, and the package sales. So to me, that is all of those together, uh, come out of the notion of farm winery. As far as the location, uh, I believe what I said to council member Bentley earlier was locational aspect of this, at least the way I read our farm, farm winery code is that their premise, on premise consumption is a very specific defined term. And that premise includes, I believe, a structure. And then I believe that the premise can include consumption, uh, within those areas immediately contiguous to that premise. That's the way I, I view our code.
And as you view our code or Georgia's code, whichever.
They, they do work together. Yes.
Okay. So is that consumption then on the lawn or walking around, taking a tour, or is it confined to a structure?
I think in a perfect regulatory environment, it would be mostly curtailed to the physical location where the alcohol is purchased.
Okay.
Like, just like, uh, any other, uh, think of any other on, on premise consumption location. Unless it's in a specific perhaps mixed use retail where that's specifically allowed. If you get your alcohol in a restaurant, uh, and then you begin to walk away from the restaurant and continue to consume. Most of us would believe that would be illegal.
Well, when you consider consumption in one spot and you consider number of patrons, et cetera. We start to whittle away with the issues on the other side, which is being the setback, safety, et cetera, et cetera. So it really all gets down to what's happening with the winery. You know, what does that look like? What does that operation look like in the future? And I think if we, we put structure around that, that's amenable to all parties or most all parties. Then we'll be able to easily deal with the farm side, which is consistent with the growth and what we'd like to see on the farm side.
Yeah. I, I think that that's a really important point that you just made, Councilmember Crockerly, that, that the kinds of operations that come along with the production of the wine. And there's, um, what, what we've not talked about yet is the fact that there is a commercial component of this to actually generate some of the additional wine. On the, the tour that I took the other day, one of the lines of questions I went down was what is the yield of the winery going to be? And, um, Ms. Jackson shared that she had to start over with the vineyards that she planted because apparently according to the University of Georgia folks that are helping, um, at first winery was not done correctly. So she had to start over. So at, at this point, there's a couple of years before you're going to get the first yield from the first plantings. So it looks like a majority of the commercial or the, the wine production is going to have to come from uh, grapes or concentrate or whatever from other locations. So there's deliveries. You know, the movement of those barrels, there's a forklift on the site. And then my, my, my discussion went further about what will the likely yield be? And the, the gentleman who I think was one of the winemakers shared that the likely total production this year will be about, I think he said 48 barrels. And I asked what the winery yield will be from production on the property. And I asked when it was at full planting, which I think was going to be around six acres, which is several years in the future. Um, so do get the picture of 48 barrels, none of which can be produced from current yields from the property. All of which has to come from ingredients from somewhere else. That has to be, that's deliveries and movement of large 50 gallon barrels that have, you know, significant weight and whatever. So there's a commercial aspect to that. At the peak, um, what the gentleman shared with me was that the peak yield from the six or so acres who ultimately be planted will be 12 barrels. And their maximum capacity approximately every year will be about 48. You're talking about 36 barrels still coming into the equation that will be from outside resources, outside supplies. There's a commercial aspect of this that has to be taken into consideration. So there's trucks coming in, forklift being moved, uh, throughout the property to, to move those things. So I think there's a commercial aspect that should not be able to be blended with the equestrian activities that are historically been non-event. But I think that you, again, I'll go back to the safety issue. You have to make sure that the winery aspect that has to do with different kind of activity that brings a different kind of safety concerns is separated from the equestrian activities. I think you can do that.
So if all of that that you just mentioned was over by the house.
Yes.
Where currently then you'd be good with that.
That's where I wanted to go. You know, I think that, that there is ample space currently dedicated per the permit to accomplish all of those winery activities, including parking and receiving of the, um, supplies separate and apart from the activities for the question, which goes back to the original line that Ms. Jackson showed on that May of 2019 meeting where she said, this is where the winery activities will be. This is where the equestrian activities will be.
Okay. So, but I'm curious about, and anybody can respond. There was a projected 10 attendees with the, the winemaker who they would have a tasting. Now we're at a hundred people out on the lawn. So this is, this is the crux of it. What is, what is the take on quantity and the structure of that?
Well, what I'm worried about right now is that we're taking independent variables and we're making them dependent on one another. So what language are you seeking to add, Paul? Or do you think would clarify your concerns in terms of this first request? Because carving out buildings and saying that this equestrian, um, I'm sorry, agricultural activity can only occur in these zones? I don't, I don't know how we're going to put that in there.
Well, I do because Ms. Jackson has already said that a hundred percent of her equestrian activities can take place in an area separate and apart from what we now, well, well, what she's that.
No, no, no.
Winery area.
I'm sorry. I'm maybe I've miscommunicated. This request is trying to make legal use that historically has been occurring, but was non-conforming.
Right.
Okay. So what she's doing is she's taking the available uses for AG1 and she's just tacking on these. There's not too many places that I know of where we say AG1 property allowable uses include this, but only in this area or only at this intensity. Or only, you know, there aren't many restrictions tied to what we say legal uses or by right use. And so how are we going to work this in so that it makes sense in that context?
Can I make an, or a statement? And this is an observation and I'm certainly appreciate what everybody's saying and, and respect it. But kind of going back to where you were going, Joe. Let's face it, from all the activities in the past for however many years, haven't really heard many complaints about that. Haven't really heard many complaints about the, you know, the farm winery. The re, the real thing, and I, I'd venture to say 99.9% of feedback I've got from anybody is, you know, large crowds, amplified music, concerts, things like that. So, you know, again, I think we need to keep that in, in mind, what people, you know, are, are unhappy about and, and what people are happy about. So, and again, I, I see where you're trying to pare it down, but overall picture, that's kind of where I'm looking at.
Let me clarify though. I'm not trying to pare down anything with, that the, the applicant has already suggested that she couldn't operate under. She suggested in the May meeting of 2019, that she could operate her equestrian activities over here and her wine activities over here. What's happened since that permit was granted, she's blended the activities. So you can't, you can't offer up the equestrian or the equestrian, um, variances without taking into consideration, there has to be an extraction of a liberty that was taken by the applicant to blend those two activities. I'm, all I'm asking is that she go back to what she suggested she could originally operate under. And that would take the parking for the winery out of the equestrian activities. It's one of my biggest concerns.
Okay. So, so you have an idea of how you're going to craft language that sets that?
I do.
Okay. Do you want to offer that up? Do we want to change? Cause I want to vote on something right now. Because it makes the most sense to me that we go ahead and approve this. I'm ready to approve it with the two caveats that are included here, but it sounds like you want to add something. So what do you want to add?
Yeah. I want to add some things that I believe will bring it more in concert, no pun intended, with what the community has suggested are their biggest concerns.
Okay. So would you allow me to make a motion and then we can tack? We, you can tack on the things that you think are needed to make that happen.
I think there's more discussion required before we get there.
Okay.
And you're entitled to make a motion anytime you like.
No, I understand. I'm not trying to, you know, dig a hole and then fill it back up again. So let's keep going.
In reference to the applicant, we just need to go through a couple more layers.
Well, and I, I would say too, and Ken, you guide me, but I think in all fairness, the applicant, applicants here that you can ask specific questions. If you have specific items to, to give at least, you know, respectfully get feedback on that.
My opinion is that if they stopped being a winery tomorrow, this permit needs to cover what they're doing day to day. And this permit can't have language about a winery in it because the winery is not connected to this permit.
But as soon as you grant that variance that allows her to continue those activities, based on her current activities that happen every day right now, she'll be in violation of the use of her permit.
Why is that?
She's taking farm, she's taking her wine activities onto the area that's not approved for wine activities.
A little bit confused on that.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like, you know, dig more into that. And if staff or, or legal's got any input on that too, to make sure we're clear on that.
Well, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. The only, the, the thing I'm thinking is, is sort of a variation of what we've already discussed before with respect to consumption being on the premise. I don't know if that's what Councilmember Moore you're getting at, but again, let me just reiterate. Farm winery connotes to me the manufacturing, the growing, uh, and then the sales. Okay. So it's sort of the three big categories. I'm not talking about that in my analysis. I'm talking about your alcohol license. That's what's limited to the premise. So I just want to clarify that. So if we're talking about where on the property you do stuff, I'm not talking about our zoning code. I'm talking about our alcohol licensure, where, you know, the city has robust regulatory authority there. And of course we can change the rules with respect to alcohol code every year.
So I, I have a comment on that. I, I do have a problem if we grant agricultural activities with the cross, cross concurrent uses. Okay. So I, I don't want to see children's birthday parties on, going on in a barn where there's alcohol. I, I don't think that's responsible. So that's why I do feel like we have to separate these two by right uses. I mean, there's a farm winery now and there's, we're, we're wanting to support this, these agricultural activities. So.
I think what I'm hearing is let's, let's assume there was not the by right of the farm winery there. The council would probably be okay with this item, with the variances if you just allowed to continue the existing activities before the farm winery was, was introduced. Is that correct? But now that farm winners introduced there, you don't want to mix them.
Right. Because what, what, what we saw in our visit are, were people carrying, you know, wine around over in the direction going towards, you know, where, you know, it's.
Are you concerned about safety too, or is that what you're expressing? Okay.
Absolutely. I don't know anyone that would ensure a farm where alcohol is part of the business plan. Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's so the consumption on premises is the root of this issue.
So we approved the consumption on premises.
But it was contained. By the house where the farm winery is.
Okay.
Therein is our issue. It is supposed to be there.
Okay. So the solution to that problem is to, um, take away their, their license to serve alcohol. The solution isn't to deny the permit request for them to do the business that they say they've been doing forever and a day.
Joe, I think the issue is to try to find an opportunity for them to coexist and in a manner in which they can make a living and, and, you know, listen.
So look, the council gives direction to our staff on how to manage the city's business. It can't be part of our job on every single permit to request to review the safety standards of a business. That has to be inherent into the business itself. I don't know how to make wine. But if somebody is a winemaker, they have to understand how to operate a farm and how to safely allow the production of that wine to occur. If they don't do that, they won't be in business for long. Okay. So, so when a permit comes up for a farm to operate as a farm winery, I can't sort of get into the details of their business and say, you need to do this for safety. You need to do that for safety because they need to understand that themselves.
Joe, last year, when these things were said about what operations would be, you voted on it based on expectations.
I agree.
If you had heard that there would be a hundred people and this and that, da, da, you probably would have said, whoa.
I agree. And that's why I'm saying.
Voting on safety. You wouldn't be voting on these things. So.
No, no, no.
I don't, I don't.
That's why, so where we're going is we're trying to conflate the alcohol license with the agricultural use right now. And I don't want to do that.
Well, I do.
Well, well, but hold it. Then we need to get an item on the agenda that says, review the painted horses alcohol permit. That's what we need.
I think some of us have been saying that.
Well, but why isn't it on the agenda?
But the, but the point of tonight is to see if we can strike a balance.
No, no. The point of tonight is either to approve or not allow the use that they're asking for. The use that is documented as being historical.
But you're looking at one piece of.
Well, I can't connect everything together because otherwise we'll never get anywhere. You have to like go after the, the safety element.
I have a question for Ken. So. And if you can't answer this, you can't answer this, but I think you see the predicament that we're in here. And how do you put what the city says on their presentation, which, which is a by right with the winery and all that stuff? How do you restrict that under a use permit for AG equestrian?
Well, tend to be a, you know, else fails resort to the law. So what I would tend to say is this, a use permit is a use that is allowed under the zoning designation, but it's conditional. Other words, it's something that might be appropriate, but it's going to take the city council making its specific determination that this use is appropriate under these conditions. And that's what we're here about this evening. Not really here about the farm winery because that's, uh, as of right use, that they can already do that. We're here to decide whether these other uses are appropriate with that, those as of right uses allowed. So that's sort of the framework by which the council needs to approach this is to decide. And for instance, based upon what I've been hearing, I'm just, if y'all want to know my, my thoughts, what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing. y'all want to know my, my thoughts, what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing is, based upon the, the as of right uses, this conditional use isn't appropriate, because you believe the intensity of the use is too high based upon the as of right use, and so therefore you think the conditional use is probably inappropriate. That's what I'm hearing you all say. I mean, I don't mean to make your mind up for you. This is up to you. That's the way I, that's the analytical framework I would approach it is, is, okay, they've asked for something extra, something additional over and above the as of right. I get it that they said they've been doing it a long time, but we, I think we've already held that ground earlier.
Right, right. I agree.
Doesn't mean that, that I agree with that, or the city agrees with that. But whatever they can do without a conditional use permit, they're going to continue doing in some variety, and perhaps that may get regulated further. But I'm not sure the use permits as requested are a fit, based upon the discussion I'm hearing, because we believe the, the uses are too intense as it is, based upon the traffic and the noise and the congestion, et cetera. That's, again, that's just me. That's, that's...
I understand where you're going. I understand where you're going.
Paul? I would, I would add to that, Ken, that we, staff's recommendation this evening was basically to deny all these things because of intensity of use. That's, that's a pretty bold, powerful statement that we're being asked to consider, is that staff's recommendation, after consideration of all these characteristics of what we're seeing, both in use by right and use by permit, is too intense. And they're suggesting that we deny everything. What I'm hearing from council this evening is, or several of us, is that we're trying to find a way to modify the intensity, or we can allow all those things to coexist with possibly some additional conditions. We've heard the neighborhood, the neighbors talk about intensity of use. We know that the applicant has acknowledged the intensity of use, because they've put police cars there to control traffic. We've heard the members who, members of the community who spoke in favor of the winery talk about the traffic concerns as well, acknowledging that they were in support of the winery and the equestrian, but concerned about traffic and volume and the blue lights and those kinds of things. So, I, I think there's a way. Councilmember Bentley and I had talked about some potential conditions by which might be acceptable, the council. And I would encourage, at some point, Councilman Bentley, Councilperson Bentley, share those for consideration.
So, just real quick, the intensity of use issue is obviously there. That's, that's why we're in this discussion, right? But the intensity of use is not connected with the activity that's part of this permit. In other words, the, the noise level is supposed to be 55 decibels max, 50 sustainable. The maximum number of people has to be, you know, 75 at this time and 100 at this time. So, so this isn't sponsoring the intensity of use. The intensity of use is coming from somewhere else. Okay?
But the intensity of use from somewhere else is flowing into those activities, and it affects the safety, the welfare, and the...
So, we need to go do something about whatever that is.
To do.
Okay?
I believe that there's a blending that's necessary of conditions to make this work.
So, what you want to do...
Where you can approve the by right and the variance requests for the equestrian activity, the equestrian related activities, and offer some conditions on the wine-related activities, the consumption on premises, to make them coexist in a safe and healthy manner, where both businesses can thrive.
Well, I would say if you've got some conditions you'd like to discuss, feel free. I would also say, you know, out of respect, you know, also any questions for the applicant, you know, to run some of those by. But, and so...
It might make sense to propose the conditions, and then we'll see.
Sure.
Okay. So, and this, this is information that has come from our legal counsel, and Mrs. Smith, neighbors. This is the, all right, U-21-01, conditional use permit for agricultural activities to include horse camps, summer and other school break camps, agricultural, farm, equestrian-based educational activities, farm tour, limited farm animal petting, birthday parties, children 14 and under. These are separated, interactive wine classes, wine making classes, wine pairing classes, and the note that goes with those is within the confines of the tasting room. Prohibited activities for profit, horse shows, zoo animals, exotic animals, kennel, overnight camps for events, live music, BYOB, alcohol sale consumption is restricted to the on-premises defined tasting room area. Conditions associated with the approval of U-21-01. There's a slight adjustment here. Hours of operation for ag-related activities, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This is straight from the agreement at the planning commission, limited to a total of 25 attendees per day, Monday through Friday, and 50 total attendees per day on Saturday and Sunday. Sound maximum 45 dB at the property lines. The 100-foot activity setback on all property lines. Consumption on premises is once again limited to the tasting room in adjacent outdoor patio area, whatever adjacent that is determined to be.
Immediately adjacent.
Immediately adjacent. The basement tasting room is to be closed, correct, on 9/28/21? Is that right?
End of September, I believe, was in the letter. I don't remember which the 28th...
We're going to assume that, because excuse is prohibited in AG1. The new tasting room must be subordinate to the primary residence, must be contained within the consumption on premises permitted area, must consist of four walls, not open air, is subject to the approval of the community development director to comply with all city regulations. Alcohol consumption is restricted to the tasting room in immediate adjacent area and is limited to 50 persons at any one time during the tasting room hours. Background music cannot exceed 45 dB at the property lines unless originating within the confines of immediately adjacent to the tasting room. Background music for the tasting room area cannot be advertised or offered as a free concert or otherwise promoted as the primary reason to come to the tasting room. Detail consumption on premises tasting room hours, Thursday, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 1:08, Sunday, 1:05. Winery business operations and production are 9:00 to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. All parking for the tasting room must be contained in the area for which the consumption on premises license was issued. And as far as the variances for the agricultural activities, approved for the wood pavilion. The wood pavilion can only be used for approved agricultural activities, not for wine taste or consumption. Variance approved for the equestrian riding arenas. The riding arenas are for equestrian use only. Variance approved for the driveway. The driveway is to be used only for the ingress and egress for equestrian patrons. Variance approved to allow the structures housing animals. And then, the final one, which is denied, is to allow parking in the 100-foot activity setbacks, except for the ADA parking closest to Bethany Way.
I'd just, first I want to just clarify and make sure, did this came from legal or both? I'm assuming it's, it's facts that you've got pulled from each one, but this...
From staff report.
This document is not.
Yeah. No, so, those are, that's, as I look, and this is just my motion...
These are suggestions.
Yeah, those are my, that's my motion that I'm comfortable with, because when I look at the whole property and want to support the agricultural use and the wine and, and the winery, but we now have consumption on premises, and, I mean, that changes everything as far as the activities are, are concerned. And that's, that's nothing that we did. That is what the applicant has brought to us to consider. So, separating, just as staff did, first they separated them and approved. What we've gone through here tonight, then they combined them. They're concurrent uses, and they denied it. So, these are the conditions under which I'm comfortable approving agricultural activities.
Councilmember Bentley, was that your motion that you just shared?
I don't know that we...
I'm just asking for clarification.
No, I, I read it. I mean, and I know that you're not prepared to, I, I know that y'all want to discuss it, but I can tell you, I gave that a lot of thought, based on my visit, based on my, you know, being deeply involved with the situation for a year. You know, visiting, hearing, being involved with the stakeholder group, going to neighbors, trying to understand the situation. And I'll leave it at that, and I think that we owe this use permit more discussion.
I have a question to Ken, is, you know, I agree with a lot of the stuff that Laura says. You know, I agree with a lot of it. My question and my issue is, how is, because we've been zoning a long time. This is the first time we've ever put restrictions on a city stance, a by right use. How is any of this, how is some of that, and how is this enforceable?
Well, it depends, obviously, if it's enforceable or if it's attempted to be enforceable based upon whether the council approves some or all of it, following some discussion. I think the mayor mentioned at one point, he might, or at least there might be some interest in having the applicant come up and address some of that, or ask maybe some specific questions related to that. As far as the enforceability of it, you know, Councilmember Jameson, that remains to be seen. It, it is a, a lot of conditions pertaining to the as of right use. But I understand the purpose of it is because of the blending. It's not lost on me, and I do understand the reason for that. And there are a couple of things, I'm hearing this news tonight, I'd like to think about, and as far as, as what I think the city's position might be. But I understood it. I understand the objective of it, and the goal it's attempting to accomplish. And I think I'd like to listen to a little more discussion and see, and see where the council gets to on.
Yeah, and I certainly, you know, understand too where you're coming from. As Peyton said, we haven't done zoning like this in a long time, and I'm trying to think back if we've ever had a situation like, typically, sometimes we may be to where there's a couple items, and, you know, we might say, somebody makes a motion and says, "Well, if you would agree to doing 75-foot buffer instead of a 50, blah, blah, blah," and the rest of it's as is. And you can ask the applicant, and they might say, "Yeah, I can live with that or I can't." But I think this is a lot of information to digest. I'm assuming applicant has...
But is it though? I mean, is it really that much to digest? Because if you follow the Georgia regulation, that it's a tasting room. And we start, I'm going to go back to that. If you start with that, as I listen to the motion, ingredients, some of which I've not heard, if you're in a tasting room, then it's a certain size, it's agreeable to the city, subordinate to the house, then you're going to have a certain number of people, which is going to impact a certain number of parking. It's going to be on that side of the property, which is where the alcohol license is. That music was low the other day, and, and Ms. Jackson asserts that that's typical for the wine side of the business, not when she has special events, which are not on the table. So, that would be confined to the tasting room. So, how do those things not all check off? And, and, and that's where the alcohol permit is, so you're not on the agricultural side, so they can live happily ever after. Am I being too simplistic?
Well, these modifications are only dealing with the way the situation is today. Okay? If what we're trying to do is regulate by right use, there's plenty other by right uses that are available for AG1. What happens if tomorrow, some of those become relevant? We can't do anything about them. So, that's why we need to separate these things into the right pieces. If we're trying to control alcohol, then it needs to be associated with whatever vehicle grants an alcohol license. If we're trying to control kids' birthday parties, then it needs to be associated with whatever thing is managing birthday parties. So, this permit request is about agricultural use. It's not about alcohol consumption. So, that's why I'm trying to tease these pieces apart and say, "This use is okay. This use is too intense. We thought that it would be okay last year when we granted it, but now, in retrospect, we probably should have had a little more control here." So, we go back and we offer up those controls where they belong, not tack them onto something somewhere else.
Councilmember Longoria, I respect your position, but you're backing some of us into a position of then wanting to forfeit the alcohol license when that's not necessary. I mean...
When you say forfeit the alcohol?
Well, get rid of the alcohol license.
No, no, I'm saying modify it.
Huh?
I'm saying modify it.
But, but I, I'm not sure that that's necessary to modify it. I mean, I...
You guys are saying it's necessary.
No, no, no. We're, we're using land use here. We had a conversation when we gave the, the alcohol permit. It was a box checking exercise. They meet these requirements, correct? Okay? And then we decided if things became a nuisance or got out of hand, we would do, we would put in controls with land use. Is this not, these special use permits, is this not a land use discussion? It is. Thank you.
And, and by, by working it through that way, we're trying to find coexistence.
Again, I think what's, you know, what I'm observing, both on both sides, and I think 90% of people would agree, 99 whatever that we've heard from, and everybody's concerned, it's really boiled down from, it wasn't the existing uses. It wasn't a, a farm winery per se. I know, the other day, I was up in the mountains at our cabin, and I ran into the guy that owns Stonewall Vineyards. And I started, I said, "Hey, we love your place." He said, "Oh, thanks," and all that. And I said, "But I got to tell you, you got me in a lot, a lot of heat." He said, "What are you talking about?" I said, "You know, we come over and we sat there and done some wine tastings, 30, 40 people there, maybe a good hard player, sipping some wine, looking at beautiful..." I said, "So, we passed one, you know?" But I said, "Unfortunately, then it's grown to concerts and, you know, lots of cars and traffic and whatnot." And again, I think that's the crux of the problem. I don't think anyone has complained about, or very few, that there is wine or wine tastings there with the other activities. So, I understand we're, you know, I understand your point, Joe. It's like, let's look at this and probably, I'm guessing if this was in front of us and it wasn't the other issues, this would probably pass in a heartbeat. But then, we're not going to have, we don't really have the opportunity to control the other stuff in, in, in something, the applications before us. So, you know, we're using this to blend the two. So, you know, I kind of, we'll go ahead Peyton, but then I'll ask, you know, Ken too, if you have some, some direction. And, and also, I'll ask the question, if nobody else wants, you know, to the applicant or Ellen, if she wants to speak to any of this stuff too, to, you know, give input of what the applicant would say about this.
I have a question for Ken, because I think what, there's, there's two sides here that we both understand. We both, all of us understand the issues, and I think it's, do we control it with the alcohol permit, or do we try to control it under this? And I legally want to do the best thing to put the city forward and all the taxpayers in the right, you know, put that forward. So, how does the alcohol licensing work? I know we've been discussing that. When was this approved? Is it up for renewal every year? And how does that renewal process work?
It's an annual renewal, and I think the law is fairly clear that alcohol permits are a privilege, not a right, and that governments, not just Milton, but every government has the right to change rules with respect to alcohol, and individuals that want to sell and be purveyors of alcohol in your jurisdiction have to comply with those rules. Really don't work, the whole grandfather initiative doesn't really work with alcohol. So, it's a different, it's a different sort of, of concept.
So, it's an, it's every year it comes out?
Right.
Okay.
And typically, we probably haven't changed, you know, just tweaked them every year. But you're saying there's an opportunity.
Some jurisdictions are different. Some jurisdictions are a perpetual exercise of tweaking their alcohol code. Some, some, of course, Milton just went through a fairly significant rewrite.
Yeah, but I'd just point out that if they're renewed every year, we don't talk about them every year. them every year. So, so there's a renewal process that takes place with approval implied in the original approval from the council.
Say approval is expedited.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did, we did, you know, this last time, so we definitely talked about that.
Yeah, but in, in continuation of that thought, have you had any other complaints as significant as we've heard about this alcohol permit from any other restaurant or entertainment?
That's a good question. That's a good question. Stephen, well, let me ask the question. How many complaints prior to the winery opening up at say, as a farm winery with these tasting events occurring, prior to that, how many complaints did we have on the property?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay. After that, how many complaints have we had?
You get some of them every weekend.
A hundred? Five hundred?
Not five hundred. So if this has been going on a year and a half, I would say twenty-five, if I had to guess.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number.
We get some, we get emails and, you know, calls, no, but I don't.
Oh, no, I know, trust me, I understand. I read those emails.
I'm talking about calls, I apologize.
Okay, calls or official complaints, okay.
My point remains the same, is we haven't had any reason to not renew some other licenses in the past, or permits in the past, because there weren't any complaints about it. So this one has warranted review because there are additional variances that are asked for to allow the operation to continue. There were some activities that have been expressed concern about by the neighbors where it's becoming a nuisance. I think those things are appropriate for consideration in this, in this hearing, and if they were to continue, they would be reviewed under the appropriate procedure as to whether or not the permit would be renewed.
Okay, well, I know we've got another item for the same property that is gonna require equal amount of discussion, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve agenda item number twenty-one dash one six zero with the conditions as documented by staff.
I'll second that.
They have a motion for approv, for approval with the conditions staff submitted from councilmember Longoria with a second from councilmember Jameson.
And I would say that the reason I'm just basing it on what staff submitted isn't with any disrespect for the work that's been done and to try to understand what the complexities of the issue are. It has to do with us putting things in the right bucket, and I really believe that this permit needs to be considered on, for what it's asking, and not something that's outside of its domain.
So before we do that, may I ask you a question?
Yep.
This is the discussion part.
Yeah, all right, so we, we have a motion second, and then we have discussion.
Right.
So how would you see control through an alcohol permit? What would that look like?
Well, first of all, the, the challenge that we're having is that, is that we've got these sort of open air concerts that are occurring because there's a wine tasting capability based on the farm winery's operation as a tasting facility slash quasi-alcohol serving permit, because they're allowed to serve alcohol that's not their own, that includes wine and distilled spirits and beer.
No, I don't think.
Hey, I take that back. Did I say? Is this thing on?
Yeah, I don't think we have distilled spirits.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's just wine? Okay, well, then it's just wine. So, but the point is, the point is, they didn't have that capability prior to us granting them an alcohol license. The alcohol license is the catalyst that creates the intensity of use. Okay? So if we take away the alcohol license, or if we change the alcohol license parameters to operate within, under the conditions that we think the intensity of use is controlled, then we've solved that part of the problem.
By your motion, you have removed all of the opportunity we have to put some of those controls in place.
Why is that?
Because you're not giving any consideration.
Well, the next, the next motion comes up.
The next one has nothing to do with on premise consumption.
Neither does this one.
It does when they're blending where they're using the winery activities when it's bled into the equestrian activity area. You've missed that point from the beginning, and you're still missing it.
And it's the intensity, it's, it's the intensity on the property, so.
But I think is, the councilman's Longoria's point is, to control the intensity is to control it through the alcohol permitting process.
And I asked, what does that look like?
I mean, so I, I think, you know, I mean.
To that point, I'm gonna ask, you know, ask staff to, Ken.
I, I, I think to put the city in a better legal standpoint moving forward, I believe that is probably in the right direction. That's just my opinion.
But you don't know whether that's doable.
Well, let me ask this question, and I'm gonna go back and, and this is looking at from a simple, you know, high level. Ken and, and staff, please feel free, you know, if we looked at this or the next, next item that we have, and again, it goes back to what I said earlier, that really, how can we control concerts, no concerts, no amplified live music, and bring this back to where what everybody seems to be okay with? I know there's some give and take there, I'm sure, you know, obviously the applicant, you know, would love to have more, but I'm asking the question, based on, on this item right here or the next one, is there a way to do that, to at least get rid of what ninety percent of complaints and issues are?
May I make a point before you answer that? In the process that we were presented, I think I can say this legally, in the process that we were presented, for opportunity to address these, one of the suggestions is that we entertain an omnibus solution. I think councilmember Bentley has presented an omnibus solution this evening, and now we're about to walk away from that. Because of a motion that does not comprehend all of the considerations that we were asked originally to consider, both by the applicant and by staff, and by our own discussion, we're off, we're, we're, we're about to throw away a really good opportunity for an omnibus solution.
That's not what I said, I, I said, where is the room between this with the next?
I'm offering up for additional consideration to your point, Joe. I'm, I'm building on what you're suggesting is, you're asking for how, how can we get there, and I'm suggesting it was offered to us, an omnibus solution was a proper, a proper consideration to get us there.
I want to read what our attorney said, Ken said, last year on this same night on May sixth. Mr. Mayor, if I may, we had a discussion about this today, and what might be part of the confusion is we were thinking land use as opposed to permitting, and so this is simply a permit, you know, typically alcohol permits are one of those things where you have a number of boxes to check, and they all, all the boxes they get, if all the boxes checked, they get the permit. Land use is totally different, to the extent that this begins to take on the character of land use, which is what has transpired, the council's uncomfortable, obviously, we have all sorts of tools to begin to rein that in and tweak the allowable use out there. That is the same discussion I had earlier, that's land use, that's what this first one is about. And if, if you move away from that and you start messing around with the alcohol permit, nobody knows what that looks like, and we don't want to jerk the alcohol permit. These were relatively benign to try to have those coexist.
And that conversation went further with an affirmation by Bernadette, who spoke that same evening on that same topic, and offered up those same land use considerations as controllable, as controls for inappropriate use.
Is the list of things that councilmembers, Bentley, read just moments ago, is that the omnibus solution that you're referring to?
Yes.
But I thought an omnibus solution was when both parties agreed beforehand.
No.
True, but in that effort to reach an omnibus solution between the applicant, the neighbors, and the city, it became apparent by the applicant's response that there was not a willingness to get to that point. And the, and the community recognized it as well, and said they don't see any reason to continue the conversation because there wasn't a solution available.
So, so I would agree that it's a list of items, you shouldn't call it an omnibus solution.
I'll get that, omnibus. But I think it's a comprehensive way to look at all these things we're being asked to consider. Throw away the word omnibus.
Okay, so how long would it take us to vet the list? Because.
I'm having a discussion on a motion.
Well, but I mean.
Yeah, that's pertinent to the motion.
And the list could be, you know, you have the right to tweak your motion too.
But your motion is to approve.
Yeah, well, okay, I'll stop talking then.
You want to withdraw it so that we can continue discussing?
Nope, nope, I just soon vote on it.
Okay.
I get, if I can say something, I guess the question is, Joe, what you approved, I'd have to go back and look at all the conditions, because staff, staff suggested denial, we're suggesting approval with conditions, does it capture all the stuff that, that Laura had kind of detailed? Because the details are where we get in trouble. We don't detail it, we get what we've had, what, what we've had happening, because we did spell out what we wanted, or what we thought was gonna happen, that's not the way the business has been run. That's why we're here with this discussion.
The list that was read was over and above what staff already had documented.
And certainly understand your discomfort with, I mean, or just wanting to, you know, go through and look at all of these different components, which I'm willing to sit here all night and do. But, you know, if, if the applicant is not willing to entertain these conditions, then that, you know, that's something else that we just.
Yeah, that's what I want, I want, I want to get to, because again, like I said, you know, never had a situation like this where, almost feel like, and all due respect to this, but we just made a motion with these and passed it, applicant wouldn't even know what we're, you know, what, what they've got decided on. You know, to, so, so we've got a, we've got a motion.
That is our right to do that.
What's that?
That is our right to do that.
I know, but I'm just trying to, but then does that just put the city in a whole big league on the taxpayers and the citizens, because everything gets dug out, you know? To, to Joe, to the motion, the second's on, it's on the table, I'll just say, I would have a hard time voting for it, just as, as read. But, you know, again, if it could, could, could take care of the problems that, what we've really been dealing with, and what we've all heard that people unhappy with, I'd certainly, you know, could, could, could support it, but I don't know that we can get there. It may not, but as we're sitting right now, just giving my opinion.
I, I haven't heard anybody say that the activity covered by this request is activity that they don't want to see happen, okay? No one has said that. In fact, we had people on both sides of the discussion offer up, we have no problems with agricultural use, no problems whatsoever.
Yeah.
Joe. Which part is hard for you to understand, when you, when we've said repeatedly, that you can't consider that by itself, when the applicant is blending the activities from one part of the property to the other? You cannot ignore that the applicant is using this area to conduct activities that are inappropriate to be able to approve that straight up. You have to look at all of it.
Well, you're saying that they're inappropriate activities. That implies that they're somehow breaking a law or a rule.
They are. They're taking, they're extending the use of their winery approvals for the use permit area to take their parking and activities into the equestrian area. That's not approved. There's a very finite area of the property that's approved for the alcohol permit.
It wasn't what we talked about when we approved the alcohol.
It's not what was pledged to us.
But, but hold it, are, are they, did we put language in our approval that is now not being followed?
We did not, because when we approved the consumption on premises permit, we were told it was simply a, a, a box checking exercise.
Well, we were told number of people and how it would be run. That's what we based it on, that's what we all nodded our heads.
That we could condition.
And this is that day, Joe.
So, no, 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 this is to my whole point. You're saying that what we assumed was gonna be true when we granted the alcohol license turns out not to be true. And so therefore, we can go back and walk back on the alcohol license and say, hey, look, this is not what we thought. You don't get an alcohol license to do that. Then their petition needs to become, okay, well, if you don't like that, can we do this? And that's when we get to have more control and document in very rigid language what parts of the property the alcohol permit pertains to, and how we isolate the traffic between the two.
By the way, you've made your motion, you're not allowing us to say to the applicant that you cannot continue to do the activities on the equestrian area where these, where these variances are about to be granted, and that's not appropriate.
But I can take away their alcohol license whenever I think that there's a problem.
You're gonna do that tonight?
Well, do we need to do it tonight?
You're forcing me into that kind of a.
Well, no, 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 really, Paul, do we need to do it tonight? Is it that grave of a situation?
Let, let me, we're not gonna do that tonight.
No, of course not.
Of course. We're gonna have to follow a legislative process to modify the code, and the check, the box checking, that's true, but it's the box that's checked is the key, and the box that gets checked is our code, which you draft. My, my only purpose, my only point on the box checking is, is that in any sort of regulatory licensure like that, the council gets to set the terms of the license, and then if the applicant meets those terms, they get their license. But those terms can be, can be formidable, depending upon the sort of activities. I just want to clarify that, and I know we were being, just having some rhetorical discussion, but.
So, Joe, the way that this is written is, if it's approved in this way, then parking is allowed in the setbacks, that parking services the farm winery. The parking is over on the equestrian side. We're trying to use land use in a respectable way to come to terms with what we were told that has not come to pass. It is, something very different has come to pass.
And when, we don't want to shut down the winery.
And it was told to us that land use is a perfectly acceptable way to curtail activities if they're unacceptable. So you can argue it all night, but why drive it to the alcohol permit? I mean, why drive it that far?
Oh, well, to me, because it puts control in the right places, but by, the idea behind this motion was to make lawful what already exists, okay? The parking is already in the buffer. Parking takes place there already, okay?
Is that fair?
No, it's not fair.
Well, then why are you gonna pass it?
Because I heard the people that, that are next door to these properties say, hey, look, we have no problem with that use. We have no problem with what's going on there.
But you've heard other people say that they do.
No, 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 I've only heard people say that they have problems with concerts and five hundred people showing up on the property on a Friday night.
But if you also read all the emails from the community, it talks about the parking and the ability to see it and the traffic.
Right, no.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Those are all winery related.
Whoa, whoa, without.
Those are numbers.
It's all about the numbers.
Or the farm winery, you have a hundred people.
Can I suggest this?
That's parking in the setbacks, Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
Respect. It's starting to feel like it's everybody against Joe, and Joe is somehow irrational. So I will either give up for a vote so that we can just squash this right now. I don't want to withdraw my motion, but we can certainly squish it, and, and somebody else can attempt to come up with a motion that we can vote on.
One quick question, and Mayor, I apologize. When you were talking, why did you say you couldn't support the motion on the table? Did you say that or not?
I said I'd have a hard time, as stated, if the motion could be amended to where, what I see is the biggest problem is the, the concerts and the number, if we could limit the number of people. I, I personally don't feel like I should get in the middle of somebody's business and tell them, you know, you put product here, you don't do this. I think. I think even some of these folks said, that's up to their business.
How do we limit the number of people?
Well, that's, to me, that's what, you know, and legally and staff wise, if we could take the motion, I'm just telling you what I would support. If you could take the motion and add a limit to where there wasn't the concerts and the number, we'd have to limit the number.
So this permit doesn't allow for concerts beyond, what was it, 50 people or what was?
Birthday parties, this is birthday parties, kids' birthday parties, 25 Monday through Thursday and like.
Right, so, so the.
Don't start negotiating on the fly, guys.
I'm not negotiating.
I'm not, that's already in the documentation.
What is?
The number of people that can show up for these events.
And I'm looking at between the two because I know that's the big picture, but I'm doing.
Mayor, are you talking about?
And I don't know that how we tie that into that.
Are you talking about the amount of people for the, my screen uses.
Because again, there's, I haven't had any complaints about that. The complaints are, are on.
I agree, and so I think where this, at least I think where Joe's motion is, is going is we are going to be discussing this again for a long time.
The next one.
Or not on the next one, but when the alcohol licensing comes up.
But we don't, alcohol.
We can modify our alcohol.
But I don't know when I knew. I don't know what.
It, isn't the, isn't the issue, one, one, one of the issues that we have right now.
Decide that you want to change the regulations for the alcohol license, you can instruct staff to do so. But you do not see them year over year.
If you don't want to construct an alcohol license based on one particular applicant, that's not a good use of.
It is, isn't the issue with alcohol license, it's.
Sorry, she's gone, was that what we were told was going to be the use and what is the actual use are two different things. Therefore, we granted an alcohol license under a false presentation, false premise. So the, I mean, Stephen, what happens when we think somebody's gone sideways with what is allowable for their license?
You have the ability to commence a revocation process.
Okay.
Um, and that involves all the due process that is afforded normally in that and involves a hearing and all that kind of stuff. Um, if you feel that you have, we have either incorrectly granted one or they're noncompliant with laws of the state of Georgia or the city of Milton, it's, it's a whole section on it, but it is, it's fairly involved.
What we're trying to do is not kill a winery business. We're offering up some conditions that will allow a winery business to coexist with an equestrian business. I'd like to see that happen tonight.
I'd like to see it happen too. I'm not trying to kill a winery business.
I'm okay with some of that if we can legally do it. And that's what my main, that's my.
So is it legal?
Ken, is anything that was proposed in Councilmember Bentley's illegal?
Well, thoughts, number one, the, the omnibus solution was a product of the last council meeting when we agreed to sit down with stakeholders in the community and individuals from the farm winery. And that was the basis by which the omnibus solution began to get discussed. The blending of the concepts now of adding basically to the use permit conditions on an as of right use is challenging. Uh, is it illegal, Councilmember Moore? I would need to sit down and look at what has been read tonight, which I have not had an opportunity to do. Um, I understand the thought process behind it. I understand why it's been proposed. But I will also say that I don't, for instance, what if the applicant says, listen, that's a deal killer. I cannot run it with those volumes, I'm done. They may want to say, I'm just gonna pull the use permit all together because the price of admission is too high.
It is that.
If that's the conditions upon which you're gonna let me have a use permit to have a day camp, then I, I don't want to, I mean, I'm just suggesting to you in real time, I can see that argument being made.
That would be a decision made by the applicant.
Correct.
Not something that the council forced. That's a decision that they would have to make. Because if, what we're, what we've done at this point is presented some conditions that we believe would be appropriate to the applicant to not be so restrictive, that they can't conduct or they can have a thriving business. Based on the things that we've heard either from the applicant directly in the course of our meetings, in the course of our tour the other day, I don't believe that there's anything the Councilmember Bentley has proposed at this point. It would be egregious to the applicant where the applicant would say, I can't, under any condition, go forward with my business that way.
You may be right.
I would also offer up that the proposal that Councilmember Bentley has made is also considerate of those concerns that she had heard from the community and from conversations with councils that we believe might be appropriate for that. So I, I think that there is merit to the serious consideration that Councilmember Bentley and others have put into this, getting to this point where she could, she could present that this evening.
Peyton, did you have? I was gonna say, maybe we should, can we ask Ms. Jackson to come up and ask questions?
Well, and that's, and all due respect to that, and I, you know, trust what you're saying, Paul, that you feel that it's, it's, you know, not too restrictive. But as, as Councilmember Bentley read off two pages, I think, I can't remember all this. I'm assuming that applicant wouldn't know if we said we passed it, may not know. So I, that's why I would promote to at least ask the questions. And that way you know when you're making your motion or whoever's making their motion, you know, is this a deal killer or not? You can still make the motion, still vote on it, but at least you'd know what the ramifications are. But right now, we've got a motion and a second on there, so.
Could, could I, could I make?
Councilmember Moore, if you want us to take a comment?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I, I think, at least my, my perspective is the issue is not the alcohol license itself, it's where consumption is taking place. And the issue is not the farm winery, but the music and the number of people that are coming and sitting all over the lawn and being invited to have a glass of wine on different parts of the property. So I think what council person Bentley was trying to do is to say, okay, let's redefine. We'll still, we, we're not changing the alcohol license. We're just defining where the wine tasting room is, which is what we originally made an assumption. We didn't put it into that motion when we, when we granted the farm winery and the alcohol license. We just assumed based upon what we were presented and we said, okay, we're good with that. We didn't put the details in there. That's why we're at this point. Because what we had originally saw, saw presented to us, we all said, oh, that looks good. But that's not what's been happening. So the, the challenge here is how do we boil it down to where we're, we're allowing the stuff that we all agree that has been working well with her equestrian business and the birthday parties? And then we tweak where the comes, consumption of the, the wine has been occurring instead of having it be a, essentially like a venue or, or the wine tasting room lawn. We go back to what we originally thought we had approved and now we define it. I think that's what we're trying to do, aren't we? And to eliminate the issue of the amplified music and, and the big crowds. I thought that's what we've been hearing for the last like, like four months from the neighbors.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and then ask for about, the Domino's guy is gonna be here in just a minute, so.
Well, now I'm, now I'm jealous, I got nothing to eat here.
Rick, can you hear what the mayor is saying?
I heard him say that the Domino's guy is gonna be here. And I'm saying, that's not, that's not good for Rick. Yeah, okay.
All right, one quick point. Paul, just one quick last point. One of the things that the applicant has proposed to us on a site plan that I have dated May 25th is that the future winery and tasting room structure will be smack dab in the middle of what she originally portrayed to us would be her equestrian area that would not be used at all for the winery use. Just food for thought.
Are we approving that as part of this motion?
No, I'm just offering it as another point of consideration that, that there is a blended use suggested right here by this, by this land, by this site plan.
If you erode land use control tonight, you throw that in jeopardy coming our way.
And right now on this, I think it's, it's an 8,000 square foot winery and tasting room that is not subordinate to the principal use of the property, the primary, the primary parcel.
So how does that motion affect that though?
Because it comes into play for this is going to be used in the equestrian area that we're about to grant.
The, the site plan.
Uses for.
And, 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 you know, this is just so new that we're, that I just, I, I.
Not new.
No, the site plan.
No, putting restrict, yeah, not, not talking about site plan, but I'm talking about everything else. Putting restrictions on by right uses within a use permit is very new.
Me either.
I mean.
But hear me out in this.
Yeah.
This is a site plan that's, that's been being considered. And it's, it's the setbacks, you know, where these things can take place, all being proposed to us for equestrian activities.
Which has been going on for.
Except for this 8,000 square foot proposed structure that's for a winery.
But we're not approving the building, the building's not.
The site plan is in the recommended conditions from staff, right here, okay? 5A.
So, so we, so let's just get this straight here. The motion on the table from Councilmember Longoria says we approve this site plan with that 8,000 square foot building?
I'm, is that correct?
Is that true? If that's, if that's the case, then.
Substantial compliance with the site plan received by the community development department, correct? I mean, you looked at this as a whole. Isn't that right?
I mean, the applicant, they, they would have to comply with the, with the site plan generally as it's put out there. But then with each, with each aspect of that site plan, they would still have to get it approved by community development. Now, as to the size of that, and even location, by the way, of that, of that potential tasting room, that's going to be up to the interpretation of the community development director.
Okay, a simple question, if the motion was changed to totally exclude that off the site plan, would that affect that?
Because I think the whole motion on, I think the whole motion on the table is to approve what has been going on for X amount of years where no one's a problem with it, but if that's.
But it includes a site plan.
Well, that's what I'm just saying, if that's a part of it, different.
Right, or could that be taken out?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna ask, Ellen, do you have a comment on that? I'm gonna ask, I'll ask the question, nobody else.
Please God, take it out. Um, yes, please. It, the purpose of showing that building was not to get it approved. The purpose of showing that building was because the winery is permitted by right use and they have transparency about what any proposed structure might look like on site in the next foreseeable future. There is no plan to build that building for any foreseeable future, take it off. We're fine with that.
But here's where my dilemma begins. So that's the first step of a negotiation with the applicant this evening. Then I'm trying to avoid negotiation on the fly.
I agree.
So do I get to ask the applicant the same thing about, are you willing to agree to no winery parking in this area that we're about to approve for what has been used historically as equestrian area? When there is winery parking taking place in what we're about to approve without any initial conditions? I have a problem with that.
I agree.
We're, we're now, now we're back to blending the issues.
I have the same problem with, we have two pages of, pages we're gonna put on there and then put on it and the applicant doesn't even know what they are. That's fine. All right, I'm gonna call this vote.
Yep.
All, all, we have a motion and from Councilmember Longoria, Secretary of Councilmember Jamison on approval of this applica, this application with staff's recommendations. Any discussion?
Well, my only comment is the staff's recommendations, that site plan is not included. I mean, as far as that building is not included as far as the, the approval, right?
I'm just.
Yeah, okay.
No, it is, with this motion, correct?
Oh, no, I'm not going up.
No, 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 that's, that's the motion now. I mean, if somebody wants to amend it, but whatever, but that's.
So.
You called the mo, you called the motion. You have the.
Hey, okay, I called the motion, let's go.
All in, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve agenda item number 21-160 with the removal of the site plan that staff had included.
I will make a motion to approve it, agenda item number 21-160 with the removal of the 8,000 square foot building. With, with staff's rec, staff's recommendations.
I mean, I.
Oh, I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion approval minus the 8,000 square foot building that's shown on there from Councilmember Jamison and a second from Councilmember Longoria. I'll open it up for discussion. Rick, do you have any?
Yeah, the que, the question I've got is, does that, does that solve the issue of where consumption is occurring? And.
Building doesn't exist.
Okay, that built, that future building doesn't exist. We still have the issue of wine is being consumed today with a lot of people, not limited to the number of people that could be there, and it's all over the property. It's out on the lawn, it's on the patio, it's not in a confined place. Is everybody saying you're comfortable with that? You don't think that's an issue?
I have a question for Ken on that point, or staff. But per what we passed, in your interpretation, that might not be an issue, is that correct?
What I can tell you is, is if there is a concern with respect to compliance with the alcohol license, that can be addressed independent of these proceedings.
I mean, it may be happening now, but what I'm saying is, if you look at our ordinance, it probably, it shouldn't be happening. Is that what we're saying? So, so that doesn't have to be in that motion, it would just have to be, we'd have to enforce it.
Is there a motion on the floor right now?
There is.
Yep, there is, but.
I, I just would offer up, got an indication from applicant's counsel that she might be willing to consider some of the conditions that we read earlier that might make this all.
So let's just fail, let's just, let's vote on this motion, fail it and then.
Okay.
I mean, we can, or you guys can withdraw if you want.
I can withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw my motion.
All right, do we need to do anything for withdrawal, they just need to say it?
Floor is, the floor is open, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so what I will ask is that, um, the applicant or the applicant's attorney, and I think, Paul, your suggestion.
Allow her to, allow her to. Offer some her, her thoughts on the, on the conditions that were presented earlier.
And I would ask, so we all know.
It's not necessarily a negotiation.
If you can read them out individually, so. Correct, I mean.
Let's, let's hear maybe a broad brush stroke first and see where we need to go.
I, I think I took pretty copious notes, although I may have missed something. My only, and, and thank you. My only question, and I understand the concern about parking and access with the blending of use. You have another permitted use, right, which is the equestrian facility that's operating with or without these variances. So the parking that is there within the 100-foot activity center serves, because it is closest to those barns, right? So just from a clarification, you would prefer for winery parking to happen elsewhere on the other side of, of the residence or somewhere else? But there was an exception maybe for handicapped?
Aren't there.
Just clarify your.
Aren't there a couple handicap parking spaces that are located in the front, which is easy for them to get to, and those are in the activity setback, correct?
Actually, I don't think they are, I have to go back to look.
Okay.
But my question was, your exception was handicapped could be used for winery.
Yes.
Parking, and it's a question.
Presentation of the handicap spots, as I see them on the site plan and as they were pointed out to me on the day when I was on the tour, was they were pretty much next to the winery already. And so those are okay, because they're within the area that's been permitted by the alcohol license. So they're, in my mind.
I just wanted to clarify because I, I didn't know if I heard the full part. But also you do not want access to go down the hill in between the barn and the, the closest adjacent property. For winery.
Winery use parking.
To be able to go out and exit on Hopewell, is that?
All the winery use parking would be up on the winery area to the west of the structure. And you, you portrayed the other day that there was ample parking for what you expect. And you, you portrayed the other day that there was ample parking for what you expected a normal winery tasting room occupancy would be.
That's correct.
That's what allowed me to think about that as acceptable parking, that I wouldn't have to be concerned about the safety issues with the blending of the two businesses, because it was portrayed to me that the winery parking with the numbers you were talking about could all be contained primarily to the west and the additional handicap spots that are in the, would be in the north side. That that would be sufficient, and I can support that.
If, if you do, would you mind coming to the.
It's, it's okay. Uh, the only other question that I had, and I, I wrote it down. Um, fifty people maximum for the tasting room.
At any given time.
At any given time. Uh, forty-five despoils at the property lines and no live music.
No, live music must be contained either within the tasting room or immediately adjacent to the tasting room.
Okay, I, I miswrote them.
Wine, actually music of any kind, live or otherwise.
Okay, I thought there was a specific prohibition against live music, so I was just trying to make sure I understood the.
You can still have live music.
I think that, I think the prohibition had to do with.
Okay, so we, we, we did, um, that was associated with the agricultural activities. So, you know, trying to accommodate the background music.
Yes.
If you have a guitar player, that is, that's, that, I consider that live, so, um, I guess the prohibited activities related, and that's not clear, so I'm sorry about that, that, that would be.
If I might go back to the May meeting of twenty nineteen, one of the things that was said by Pam was that their activities would be on the equestrian side of the.
Correct.
And then it, for whatever circumstances, it morphed where some of those activities were in the lawn and where the band stage is and further beyond the tasting room and the immediate adjacent area to the tasting room. So I think the, the prohibition of live music for the equestrian activities is intended to be no live music over there. But live music where the tasting room is and immediately adjacent to is okay.
I just wanted to make sure I heard because I didn't catch that.
Good, good clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
So Ellen, is that, that was the extent of your concern about the conditions at this point? Basically, everything else that you heard, I mean, we can have Councilmember Bentley repeat them.
Here. I would give you this. And, and the spirit of trying to accommodate the things that we heard when we were there, um.
Yeah.
No, you can. Is it the one, KB?
I brought. Yes.
Hang on.
It was a coup, Joe.
Nah, not by me.
Okay, so where are we?
I just gave, uh, the applicant the list.
Okay, okay. Just give them a minute to look at that.
You wanna keep it? Unfortunately, I think that, that parking and access, uh, is not acceptable, um, for the applicant. So, we appreciate it very much.
All right. So, I think we're headed back to where we were. With, without a motion, um, certainly can entertain another motion.
Well, without managing the parking, then we're not separating the uses. So, um, I would just ask, having toured the property and seen the area by the garage and the other building and on that side, are you sure you couldn't park over there for the winery?
Yes, unfortunately, I think that's just basically reserved for at least the part closest to the house, reserved for employees and residents. With respect, I appreciate the concern that you raised. Um, there hasn't been an issue with respect to safety, and if we have taken the items and we are more than happy to limit the number of people and hours of operation of the tasting room and otherwise, and if we have taken the number of people down substantially and withdrawn the application, you know, for the concerts and agree to prohibit any number of other uses, then the safety factors are also mitigated because you, you do not have, you, you all were there, you do not have people partying it up. They're not drinking bottles of wine while the equestrian uses are happening, or while the summer camps or others are using the equestrian activities.
With all due respect, though, we were there at two something in the afternoon, and my friend was there in the evening, there were a hundred people. So those people, though, were parked.
And there were not equestrian events or children.
That would be my question, is there.
Where children's activities happening.
Times of the events.
During that same time.
I wouldn't think if there's a children's birthday party at two, you would have a big wine tasting at the same time.
The hours do overlap of the tasting, the consumption on premises and the agricultural activities, because those ag activities go from nine to five, and that's during your, you know, that's, that's during the tasting room hours on, uh, they overlap on Thursday through Sunday.
They do, and the tasting room hours end at eight-ish, I think, I apologize, I don't.
Yeah, no, that's right, yeah.
Um, but we're also happy, again, if you limit the number of people, and I think your condition's proposed fifty as opposed to a hundred, and if you want to further condition that there won't be a child's birthday party happening when more than twenty-five people are onsite for the tasting room, or fifteen people. I think that that mitigates the risk that you're concerned with.
What is it about the parking? If you were to take, you're suggesting that the area to the west is reserved for employee parking? Couldn't you move the employee parking to the other area and make that available to the, to the wine, uh, guests?
We could, I think that it comes down to question of enforceability as much as anything. So, if a city code enforcement officer is called, and if I'm a mother, and I am, which I am, and I'm having a birthday party for my child, and I've dropped my child off to ride, be part of the birthday party, and I want to go get a glass of wine, where am I supposed to park?
That's where we went, we were gonna go at one point about trying to, we, we didn't go down the path of suggesting that you could not have, um, two events occurring at the same time. We didn't, we didn't want to limit that.
I think it's just, I, I think it's operationally a challenge, and one that has not presented that the parking concerns and the traffic concerns related to high intense use, combined use of the property. We've agreed to limit, and, and the omnibus solution, and, and I will apologize, I'm distressed that you didn't see the letter from July eighth as a good faith willingness attempt to respond.
That was our measure, that was the measure of the community, the stakeholders.
So, it, it was an attempt to say that there are permitted by right uses, farm winery use, that has no limits on it right now, from the city's perspective. I, I'm not talking about the liquor license, I'm talking about the farm winery use does not have a limit on the number of people. The ag-related activities has no parking requirements at all under your code. So we've provided more than enough parking, but we also have said we will submit to you that we will limit those permitted by right uses and proposed conditions. And they may not have gone far enough, um, but they were significantly, you know, proposed after looking at the totality of uses on the property.
So, let me ask a question, Paul, too, just on the parking, because, again, I think not only is operational, logistically would be tough, but also from enforcement, to separate the two. To me, the magic of that is the limited number of people, that helps the safety issue and whatnot.
Well, say, I'm pleasantly surprised from what I'm hearing.
I am too, and I need to think about it for a minute, but I'll, I will, I'm gonna say some things out loud that I'm thinking that are still a concern for me. One of the things that was important to me was a clear separation of those two activities. Now, you suggested that there isn't anything, that there hasn't been an issue.
On parking.
There hasn't been an issue on parking where there's been an incident because of consumption and equestrian use.
And I don't disagree, I, I, I have not had the benefit of looking at the May nineteenth, twenty nineteen, or the May twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, or the limits on the alcohol license, but from a location standpoint, we don't have any objection, certainly, to limiting that use. I think the parking part of it.
So you really are, so the, the thing that's really, really important to you is having the parking in the setback.
Leaving the parking where it is.
So that's by the barns?
That's what I was concerned the other day about, where, you know, if somebody walks down from the winery to their, to their big vehicle, and they have this very nice young man walking the horse, they were interacting. There was a chance for an incident there, but I can't overlook.
I, I think, eh, with respect, and Councilmember Longoria said it maybe best, there's only so many things you can control on a piece of property. And, uh, you know, there is insurance or all those things. We have very high concerns for safety, not only of our employees and staff, but of patrons who attend. Um, I, I understand the concern. I think that there's a different way to handle it than by having parking separated in a manner that is gonna be almost impossible for anyone coming onsite to know or for the city to enforce.
Well, one of the things that crossed my mind in looking at the parking solution would be that any equestrian-related activity attendee would enter off of Hopewell, off of the roundabout. Any wine-related attendee or guest would enter off of Bethany Way. And then there is a clear separation. Employees can park wherever you deem appropriate because they're not consuming alcohol. I wouldn't be concerned about their wherewithal.
Right.
On the property because they're not consuming alcohol.
Right.
So they could park on space available to the west of the homestead, or they could park in what is already gravelled areas with sufficient parking in the equestrian area too, especially if you look at the fact that the eight thousand square foot proposed building is not gonna take place. That's already gravelled up there, and there's ample parking up there.
I, I understand the concern, I just think it's from an enforceability and a, frankly, a traffic flow standpoint. I think you're creating a potential for conflict more by having different, I could be wrong about that.
Put a couple of cullens up.
But I also.
Demonstrated you, you're really good at putting fences up, because there's a lot of them, but you separate the two uses.
And the uses are separated by fence.
But let me.
The parking is not.
Let me ask a suggestion, because there's a difference between absolute and recommend, yeah? And again, even if, even if we let legislate this, who's gonna enforce that, you know, somebody parked here or didn't? But there could be recommendations where, if we make a recommendation that you have signage and, you know, wine tasting park on this side, you know, other events, whatever, ninety percent of the people will follow it now. You know, if a mom pulls over here and drops her kid off for this and then walks over there, you can't, but would that help that situation?
Yeah, I can, I could probably sign up for that. I still, I still am uncomfortable with what I personally witnessed. It wasn't an incident, but it was the opportunity for one. I know it was not intended for, to present that, it was, you know.
There's an opportunity anytime we get in a car, kill someone.
Exactly, but I also appreciate your consideration of the limitation by the head count. And that's a, that's a big deal. And I, I recognize that we're asking you for a big deal on that versus what has been there historically. Those are the things that were creating the intensity of use for the neighbors that were so problematic. So if some, some of that goes away by a head count limitation to not exceed fifty at any given time on the winery side, and I think it was twenty-five for a given, any given party.
I think during the week.
Fifty on the weekends.
For agricultural related activities and fifty on the weekends.
Yeah. Maybe we're getting.
So is that the, is that the cap? I mean, there's no other kinds of parties or festivals or anything else?
We haven't gotten to the next permit.
So, so.
But.
There's no, there's no events in what Councilmember Bentley has proposed.
So, let me just say this about the equestrian program, I mean, it, these horses are very acclimated to their job, and, um, they're, they're around cars, they're around vehicles. It's really the driver's side where they're not activated to the horses and that issue, so you know, the risk is yours, and, and it's a big risk, you know, having people come on the property there. And if you're willing to entertain that risk, I'm not sure that we can protect you from every risk. What we do need to do, though, is protect the people who are sincerely concerned about property values, et cetera, bringing down that number, reducing traffic, reducing noise, et cetera, so that it is a benign pleasant presence in the neighborhood. I think, you know, are we, can we get feedback from people who are vested in, in that number, in what that number should be? Just like we're getting feedback here, can we ask them, does that work? I mean, we're negotiating on behalf of people, I feel like we should be able to ask them.
I don't, I, I think you'll have to make that judgment based on conversations, input, meetings and whatnot, you know.
Okay, well, I think the motion, okay, within your motion, I think, takes that into consideration, I mean, you're, you, what you did, so I'm gonna assume that that.
I have another question, so just on this parking, so you are, um, you, you accept not parking in the activity setback, but not separating the parking or the, the different uses, correct?
I'm sorry, say the first part again?
The, the act, not parking in the, yeah, in the activity setback.
Uh, no, I don't accept that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. No, existing parking that is located within the hundred foot activity setback, we would respectfully request the continuance of that use.
Okay, so can you, where is it that you need that?
It's, it's where it's currently built, so it, um, is, I think there are eight or ten spaces on Bethany Way. So it's.
Good.
It's right where the arrows point.
I said I wasn't gonna do this, I said I wasn't gonna negotiate on the fly, but I, I could subscribe.
I don't, and I don't need to open that, I, I didn't understand that you wanted parking. I, I think there's.
Well, I'm trying to get a, just understand how many of the spaces that you.
All of the existing spaces.
Does that include parking in the riding arenas?
That, those are available if we need it, but if we're reducing the numbers.
You shouldn't need it.
We shouldn't need it.
So, so tell me the spaces.
Saying you wouldn't park in the intended use as a riding.
Why would you have an objection to it if it's?
Why would you?
I don't, unless there's a special event and we've applied for a special event permit and the city agrees to it.
Then you would, you would, in that same event, request, ask for those kinds of conditions.
I would, I would have to count the number of parking spaces, but I think we would be more than fine, uh, even at the city's number with the parking spaces that are there.
One of the things I'd like to get to is parking where it can't be seen from the road by anybody going by.
Yes.
So whether you've got two people or fifty people on the property at any given time, nobody's aware that there's anything going on. So that's where the Bethany Way parking is problematic for me.
There's a huge berm.
Yeah, but it's still visible.
I, I have photos if you guys would like to see them, but it's.
But, but is it? But, but is it, is it the, the view of cars or the number of cars? Like if it's limited to fifty people, wouldn't it...
I can, like, you know, the other parking that's down here, Joe? I can look at that.
You know what? I, Paul, fifty people, we could be talking about twenty-five cars or twenty cars or eighteen cars, or maybe max thirty cars. And I, I don't, I just candidly, I don't think those particular spaces are... And we've gotten to a good number in terms of total attendees. They're going to assume all the risk on the, the issue about which you're worried.
The other part, Carol, is the, right now, they're also, it's not depicted on any of the site maps, the parking that's taking place over or off of the Hopewell entrance. Now, there'd be a new drive over there, but there are...
There's an existing driveway there.
Right, and you're parking off of that driveway.
Yes.
And that parking is not depicted on any of the site maps. It's off of Hopewell.
I know you're saying it's off of Hopewell. I think it is depicted on the maps.
It's not.
Okay, where?
So the, there's green, there's grass on both sides of the driveway on the Hopewell entrance that's gated today.
Is there truck, is there farmhand parking?
It's next to your, it's next to the, the historic barn. Up near the historic barn, on weekends, you're parking cars on the grass on both sides of that driveway. That's not depicted anywhere in the parking.
And, and the reason for that, if it's not depicted, then that was provided when there were more people? If we limit the numbers, parking will be as shown on the site plan.
So, yeah, so what I'm suggesting, though, is that that would not be an area that I could accept for parking because that is so visible up there.
Understood.
You've got ample parking in other areas, both in the gravelled area, that's probably not being used to its capacity area, that's going to where the proposed new, future use would be. Plus, if we're willing to cooperate on some of these other parking areas, you should never have to park up in the Hopewell area that is so visible.
Okay. I don't object to that. I, I will note this, and Robin can correct me. The hundred-foot activity setback, I think, has not been always in existence. I think that it was, that this parking was established in this access well before, even in Fulton County, well before there was a hundred-foot activity setback. I just...
The activity setback comes with our willingness to cooperate with the agricultural activity permit.
Yes, I, I just wanted...
That's where the hundred-foot introduction...
But it also comes in after the adoption of that, even in Fulton County, is my point. There wasn't a prohibition against parking within a hundred feet, even if it's, it's not here, neither here nor there.
That's a grandfather debate. I don't think we want to go there.
I respect that.
Hey, is there anything else?
So are we okay on the no parking up here at Hopewell?
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, just out of, we keep some order here, but we understand.
Yes, we agree.
We understand, okay.
Yeah, they agree. They agree that no parking in Hopewell.
Visible.
No visible parking.
Would you... And I'm gonna ask Ms. Jackson if you wouldn't mind stepping the dais, and Ellen, you're welcome to stay there with, you know, answer any questions or questions, sorry, be on the microphone.
I would just offer up Ms. Jackson, your consideration. There is an area up there that's really visible.
Yeah, it's...
Probably can't park more than fifteen, twenty cars up there on your busiest of the weekends. And that's the part that people see that are finding, they find that offensive. It's not suggesting that you can't, you've got, if we are going to cooperate with what's being suggested here, you're showing, I think, I don't remember the count, but it was something like forty parking area, forty, forty parking spots in the area where the future wine structure was going to be. There's twenty spaces over on the, I'll call it the Bethany Way side down in, near the riding ring, another eight right uptight on Bethany Way. So that's, let's call it forty plus another twenty, that's sixty, and another eight, that's sixty-eight parking spots. That's, that's should be ample parking without adding another twenty or thirty over near Hopewell. I just asked that you...
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, I mean, I don't have a problem. I'm just a bit overwhelmed with everything.
I know you are, but this is a big deal. And this is, and tonight, you have to kind of come prepared for a big deal. We're trying to work with you. Okay. Because you're asking for a lot.
So are we, all right, are we at a point where somebody wants to make a motion?
Sure.
Well, wait, 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 can we, let's just...
You're, you're making it such that I cannot operate my business with everything. I mean, okay, I understand. I don't know what to say. I'm totally overwhelmed and just blown away. I, I'm, I'm under a loss because we have given up so much of what we were originally requesting. And I, I just, I'm not going to be able to operate. That's just the bottom line, and it's... So what, what is it? Is it the parking is, or is the... Well, I mean, it's just all comes, this is all very confusing still. I don't, I think, don't think all of you even really understand it. I, and it's, I'm not sure I understand what you've suggested. I mean, it's...
Can we, can we just then take a breath? I think, Ellen, I may call you that because I don't know your last name. I'm so sorry. What she just agreed to was a fifty-person cap at any one time, and then we've gone back and forth for ten to fifteen minutes on parking and what's applicable or what's, what would work. And I think we're willing to make a concession on the parking that originally was a problem. So I'm sorry, it was a problem for Councilmember Moore over by the stables, closest to the stables in the riding area. We're, we're willing to push that aside because we've reduced it down to fifty, which I understood, fifty for the winery. Was it twenty-five on the other side?
Twenty-five on the weekdays, fifty on the weekends.
Okay, so the balance, there are fifty and fifty on the weekends. Is that, Ellen asserted that that was okay with you. Does that work for you?
So are we talking about fifty people on, I don't know.
No.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. So, so we understand now the cap isn't working for you. That's, that's a big deal. Well, I'm not saying that the cap's not working. I don't know, are we talking about just for birthday parties? Are we talking for the winery? Are we talking... So the winery was...
For the winery, tasting room, fifty, at any one time.
That, I, I mean, that's going to put me out of business. I mean, I can't do that, so...
You actually said that would work for you the other day.
Well, I, I thought we were talking about fifty for the, for the farm side, equestrian side.
That was what you already agreed to with the planning commission.
But that doesn't have to do with the, I'm not trying to be deceptive. I am honestly very, very confused on what you all are asking. I'm, I, I'm, and I'm trying to just say, I've got to be able to run a business, but I'm not understanding the parameters you all are trying to put on it, and I need time to understand that. I need it to be able to see it before I agree to it because I'm confused.
What we're offering back to you is what you agreed to for the equestrian side with the planning commission, and we're offering back to you this evening what you told us on Thursday you could live with on the winery side. The fifty is a moving number, meaning that it's fifty at any given time. You may have a hundred and fifty people come through the winery in any given day, but the maximum can be fifty at any given time. That's what you told us you could work with the other day.
We told you that the other day? And I, I don't remember. And, well, I, 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 I respect that, but I mean, it's just at any one given time. Well, how do I control? Okay, so, so if we're talking fifty on that side, twenty-five on the farm side, and then on weekends, fifty, we're talking collectively a hundred, a hundred people. Am I understanding that correctly?
No.
Okay, I'm confused. I don't know what you're...
Fifty children, fourteen or under, I think, was your age limitation for...
Yes.
Events.
Yes.
Yeah.
For a birthday party. It's not really an event, it's a birthday party. And I'm using that word, avoiding the word event.
I get it. Fifty people, fifty children under fourteen for birthday parties on Saturdays and Sundays. Looking to make sure I say it right, twenty-five.
Okay, well, where do the parents come in? Because they're over fourteen. So how do we, how do we account for that? I mean, it's, it's, it's very, very confusing. And I feel, I feel like I'm just being set up to get into trouble because I, I can't even understand this, and how is it controlled and how is it enforced? And...
I, I will, I will say for, for the benefit of the applicant, to throw a couple pages of uses on here, this could last a very long time. And usually decisions like this aren't made correctly when we're...
Especially with... In defense of what was offered up this evening, there is nothing inconsistent with what has been discussed at some point.
I'm just curious if Ms. Jackson is, is thinking that these limitations are associated with the equestrian uses? Because these limitations are associated with the winery. I don't know if this Mr...
They're both.
They're both.
These don't.
Both.
I think they're both.
Both, yeah. Things that she agreed to with the planning commission and things that we heard in our tour.
I just want to make sure they understand.
Yeah, these were feeding back things that were already agreed to in the planning commission and that we heard on our tour the other day, but stated by the applicant.
Just because Councilmember mentioned something, I don't think we ever discussed a limit on equestrian uses. So, and I...
You're not restricting your equestrian uses?
Oh, I thought, I just heard you say we were.
Numbers, probably.
Numbers.
Numbers.
Numbers, yeah.
I mean, that was...
Your uses, there is no equestrian use that you're doing...
That's what I would like to clarify. Is it fifty, understanding with respect to the agriculture-related uses? And I don't mean to belabor this or take up everyone's time. I'm happy to do it outside of this. Is it fifty, your, your proposed condition is fifty people total, farm, winery, and equestrian permitted by right uses, aside from the fifty on the weekend for agricultural-related activities?
Was fifty for the winery at one time, fifty for the birthday parties, agricultural activities? What, okay? You also have a thriving lesson program. That's, that's not even addressed in those numbers. Okay, yeah, no, that's a good question.
That all stays, that's, that's...
Because when you just said use, and you said you're not talking about equestrian use, but we are talking about numbers, that's what I want to...
I'm sorry.
Clarify because that was not clear just now.
Right, your lesson programming...
So you're saying that there's a total of a hundred people, fifty and fifty allowed at a time plus the lessons or not?
So lessons go on, lessons go on with no change whatsoever, because that's an acceptable use under, you know, by right, and then the community's taking no exception to that. No change in activity. All, the only suggestion that we've got in terms of a cap with regard, with regard to the equestrian part of the business is with the birthday parties, and that was a maximum of fifty. And you had agreed to that in the planning commission.
Birthday parties, I'm good with that.
So that's not...
With the birthday parties, that's, that's fine.
So that's not new to you.
The second question.
So that's fine, great, we just, we just hit a milestone. We're good, we can, we can park that. Now let's talk about the winery part. When we toured the other day, you suggested that fifty at any given time was an acceptable number, knowing that you could, in total, in a given day, heaven forbid, it's five hundred, a turnover of five hundred people, but you can just not have more than fifty winery guests at any given time. But over the course of the day, in the course of your open hours, you could have hundreds of people, but just not more than fifty at any given time, because that's where the intensity of use comes in. That's where it gets, gets all parked up. That's where all of a sudden you got a great big event.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't think that would, I, I don't recall saying that to you. I do, I don't know if either of you recall that being said. So that I do not recall. I apologize. If I did, fifty's going to be difficult. And, and how does it come into play? Because like I already said, hmm? But, well, no, but David and I have ten children between us, and with spouses and grandchildren, we have thirty there just ourselves for Easter. I mean, it, it's like, well, where does that come into play? Am I now down to twenty people at the winery because we've got thirty family there that's...
Damn, why not?
No.
I'm, I'm, so I'm, I don't know what you're defining.
Paul, you want to do something by parking cars?
No, because I think, because it's intensity of use, because then you, if you've got more than fifty people, all of a sudden, you're, you're, you're filling up areas that will take you beyond the confines of the tasting room and the immediately adjacent area, which is the area for consumption.
And, well, again, I mean, my problem is, is this is all so confusing. I don't know what you're defining as what.
Part of the, and one of the things that is an issue is the fact that the tasting room that you have currently using and that you've proposed, which we, we know there's a condition that still has to come into play, which is it cannot, it has to be subordinate to the primary residence, so it has to be less than three thousand square feet-ish, whatever the number is. If your footprint is thirty-two fifty, it has to be less than thirty-two fifty. So at thirty, call three thousand square feet for the sake of the example. If you start talking about more than fifty people, you're thirty, you're, you're three thousand square feet with wine tasting, your, and your immediately adjacent area, all of a sudden, you're, you're blowing out the seams on your area to be able to use, to make it reasonable where it's not too, too intensive use again.
I, I think the tasting room that we had proposed was something like four hundred and sixty.
I know, it was six hundred total. If you took, the building was six hundred, three hundred, which was going to be with the open air, that shared facility with the barn, that was, it was a...
My only point was three thousand, no one's asked for three thousand square feet.
I know you haven't. I'm just saying that you, but you did ask at one point for eighty-five hundred or twelve thousand. Those were numbers that were being tossed around in the full...
Which was not for a tasting room.
No, it was full production.
Then the, the building was looming out there. So there's...
But the part, yeah, that hasn't been addressed is the fact that it has to be a subordinate structure to the primary residence.
Forgive me, I, I would have to look at the code to see where that comes in because I'm not quite ready to...
It's an accessory building.
Give that...
You know, I, I understand that.
As an, as a concession.
Right, but what's, but here's, here's the disconnect that you and I are having right now, and that is you're telling me that right now, your winery is operating with about something less than a thousand square feet in your tasting room, and you're proposing another temporary tasting room that's only going to be about six hundred.
We do everything outside, and that's why, so we're outside, we're an outside...
Which is I think the council member's concern with the license.
Yeah.
In fairness, which I've heard for the first time, I don't know how many hours ago, but this evening, so forgive me for not having a full, robust response on that.
But isn't that a Georgia requirement, a tasting room?
I don't know that it's a requirement. I think it's an opportunity.
So...
So it's your understanding that you, you have the right to, I mean, say that...
Not a liquor license.
Okay.
Here's, here's a thought. We, we don't have that many choices tonight. We can approve something, we can approve something with conditions, or we can deny something here. We're not going to, we already, you already heard, we're not going to approve something straight up. We're offering up approval for something with conditions. It might be worth trying our proposed conditions rather than having us deny something. And then you don't, then we're at a horrible place because you don't have a business, and we're trying not to shut you down. That's the last thing we want to do is, is take away a business that we believe in can work. Both businesses can work. So help us help you is what I'm asking you to do. And it may very well be that there's, at the end of the day, there's something that you discover is a hardship, and we'll be happy to hear that hardship, and maybe find a way to do business together with an expansion of that, but just at least gave it a shot with some things that we've worked pretty hard on to get you to be helpful.
I respect and appreciate that. I, I think this would be a... I respect and appreciate that. I, I think this would be a very different conversation if this were an applicant who was coming before you, who didn't have a proven track record with respect, with respect to these uses. And I, I respect the concerns with respect to the farm winery. I, I, I do. I, I think this is a, this isn't a new applicant or a new piece of property, which may also be part of the concern. So I, I hear you. Let me, forgive me if I-
Maybe you take a sidebar.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I, I want to say something, Ken, and get your, I'm getting a little uncomfortable. It's one thing if it was one or two things and, but, you know, kind of negotiating on the fly.
Yeah, I hate it.
These, these meetings should have, you know, this should have been discussed prior. So, you know, I don't really know what the answer is. We, you know, I see, I think we're all hearing everybody's concerns. I think the big picture is concerns of the big concerts and the two hundred people there and-
And we gave that up. That's gone.
I'm saying it. So I'm just wondering, you know, we had a motion earlier, we added a couple things, people were getting close. You know, and then on this next item, could seemingly be addressed or not, I'm just trying to get a, either solution or, I don't want to force an applicant, I don't think it's fair for those that are support or, or, or against this, on the fly, not, you know, know what they're agreeing to. Saying they agree to something, then later, you know, I'd rather, I'd rather deny it than you come back and agree it and then find out that, you know, it was totally bad for you. It'd be better, I think, for us to deny it, but not fill up your, get forced into something. So, I don't know, Ken, if you have, I'm putting you on the spot. If you had, in fifteen years, I don't think I've had one like this.
No, I mean, I, look, it's, it's, it's gonna be difficult to me. The council obviously is, is, got a lot of strong feelings about this. And, and I don't think it's my job to step in and just try to, you know, overcome every, and I know that's not what you were suggesting. I do think we have some tough decisions to make. We have a rule that requires the council to approve going past midnight. Um, and we're, you know, not through, we've got another one after this one to get through. But, but again, it's difficult. I mean, the, the, the party appears to still, still want to engage and, and the council seems ready to continue engaging.
So is there a mechanism where we can adjourn this meeting for engagement between the, the parties and bring it back at the next council meeting?
There, there is always that opportunity.
Absolutely, but that's-
There's always that opportunity. The only, the only reason I'm sheepish about offering is because the last time we postponed the council was very divided on the postpone.
Well, but if- If that's offered, I mean, I, 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 yeah, I mean, this is too overwhelming and I don't even really know what's being asked of me. So I would accept it. Taking the time to go then to understand it to the next council meeting.
Well, I bring it up because I feel uncomfortable giving away a land use control opportunity outlined at the very beginning at the time of alcohol permit, which is where the power would be if things become egregious. I think things become egregious when you go from projected ten people to a hundred people just on, on wine tasting, regardless of events, et cetera. So to me, with the points that have been made tonight, we're making progress. And I, I feel like if we're capping numbers of people substantially and, and scaling back and finding agreement on where we're parking cars and where we're not parking cars for a line of sight, that we're taking care of concerns that people have, that we might be on a path that could be solved in a meeting or two, perhaps maybe in the spirit of your letter that you think perhaps we, or that the, the folks disinterpreted, although they don't think they did. Maybe you would take another pass at tone and intent on, on negotiation and we could come to an agreement outside of this chamber. You know, the old saying, if it don't fit, don't force it. I mean, I, I feel like that's where we are. So are we, because I don't, I don't think we have any energy or passion to give up an opportunity to control something that'd be negotiated. You all correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Because I'm not speaking for you. I'm just giving my opinion. I'm welcome to hear your, your, your opinion.
So I, the last thing I want is for you not to understand, you know, what, what was attempted to be done. So I, I don't want to do that. I also know that we've been at this for a while. And I know that I, I understand your hesitation on the numbers and the parking, but that was the control that, that we were really trying to get to. And, you know, it's, this is not easy. So I, I don't, I don't want to deny this, but I, I feel like I don't have a choice.
No, well, I'm not-
Because I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, um, you know, what we've been living through as a community for a year has been difficult. And, and we're trying to get the intensity of the use to a point that is acceptable. And I don't know if there's a point. Well, and, and I'm willing to work on those things. My problem at this particular moment is I haven't really had an opportunity to look at what you've suggested. And I've got to sit down and see if that's even viable for me to run a business that way. Because off the top of my head, I mean, I've been so, I have to make, it has to financially be self-sustaining. Um, and if it's not, then it's not worth it to me to even stay there. So that's what I need to sit down and look and see the conditions and the restraints that you are putting on that. Will I be able to financially survive that? And I don't want to just pour money into something. I mean, it's just, you know, gonna be a money pit because I don't, not able to make the money on it. So I will make a prediction. You are going to make more money selling wine than having horses and equestrian activities. Okay, I, I mean, that's just, and, and so that is why the protections are here. Okay? That's, that's why we're trying to limit and separate. Okay? And, and that's just what I see as my responsibility.
Hey, Councilmember Bentley, I thought of something. Would it help in your motion or maybe anyone's motion that it sounds like within this use permit, it sounds like the uses are not the issue. It sounds like it's the variance request or the parking. Is that correct? So could we approve that, so could we approve, you know, the use but defer the variance? Is that-
I, I, why, why do that?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just because it's-
Because look, I'm not willing to give up a land use tool when we need to sort and applicant needs the opportunity, council or private citizens needs opportunity to sort through it. We need the, you know.
I just don't know how they're gonna sort through all of that and-
The part that's frustrating for me-
Same reasonably intelligent.
Yeah, the part that's frustrating for me is that we're, 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 we're giving-
Well, I understand.
We're, we're, what we generated was in response to what the applicant told us.
Throwing a idea out there.
And now the confusion part is puzzling to me when it's things that I heard. So that's what drove the hours that went into this preparation of this. That they were all conditions that we believed to be acceptable on what we heard.
So Paul, I think where we fell short was that normally when we go off after a deferral from a meeting, we get to do two things. We get to agree on what the things are that we need to put into language in the, the item we're gonna approve. And then we actually get to put it in, in the item that we need to approve. So we've gotten half of this done. You guys think that you've got a list of things, or, or maybe it's an incomplete list. So we need a little bit more work with the applicant to make sure we've got the list right. And then we can put that language into something that we can approve. And that way, we're not coming in at cold, right? It's, it's not something that we have to read off a piece of paper. It's, it was provided as part of the packet and agenda.
Just to be clear about the process that took place since the deferral, was it was suggested that there would be a series of meetings that would take place between the stakeholders and the applicant, supported by staff and two members of council.
Right.
There was a staff, uh, staff, council and stakeholder meeting. It was a healthy discussion. Applicant didn't participate in that one. I don't think, I don't think they were invited to that one. Then there was another meeting that took place that included the applicant, same list of people, but included the applicant. Generated some healthy conversation that there was probably, I don't, I wasn't in that meeting, so I don't know exactly how it went down. But I got the impression there was gonna be some, there was some, both sides were heard. Then both sides generated their list of must haves. And then when they both generated that, there was a parting of the ways because the stakeholders couldn't agree to the list that the applicant provided and the applicant couldn't agree to the list of the stakeholder. Well, okay, but hear me out. So then, just like I was talking about the processes, I understood it so far. You can correct me in a minute. Um, and then, so then, in an effort to try to find another way to get to the end result, we, we offered a chance to get together and we took advantage of it on Thursday of this week. So it was the eleventh hour because everything else had fallen apart. So that we didn't have the normal length of time to process all these things, where it ended up in a staff report for all of us to consider as a part of our packet.
So if we defer this-
That's what generated the list tonight from Councilmember Bentley.
No, I understand. I figured it was fairly hot off the presses. But how much more time do you think we need in order to be ready to vote on this?
That's on them. I'm ready to vote on this. I think we've made some really good suggestions. Also would like our city attorney to-
That's my point, is I want to be ready.
And I don't know, you know, and it may not be fair to, to advocate through or the, and the, and the public that are either for or against the, the meeting. You know, from my-
Joe.
And allow you to use, do the same uses you've been doing, that no one seems to have a problem with. Also, run a farm winery, but keep it quaint towards the asset, and not, not a deterrent to the neighbors. Obviously, you'd have to figure out, you know, how to make it profitable. But because the big issues I've seen all along was just on the big, huge concerts, the traffic, the noise and all that.
We pulled all that.
If we could, if we could, that's the end goal, my perspective. That's a win-win. Tell them.
Joe, Joe.
You gotta figure out, how do we get there? Or, or is that where everybody else wants to get?
Well, okay, but that is-
Let, let Rick, let Rick say something, then Joe.
Yeah, could, could I ask, could I ask the applicant and her attorney a question? When, when we initially, when you initially, Pam came before us and proposed what you wanted from a business standpoint, what you needed as far as, you know, the, the tasting, the number of people and whatever, it had nothing to do with, with what you've been doing. And now what you're telling us, at, at least what I'm hearing is, what you initially proposed to us when we approved the winery and the tasting, you're saying that that's, you, you can't run a business with what you requested from us initially. You need to do what you've been doing the last year with the outside music and the large groups?
Uh, we can. Uh, we absolutely agree to no outside music and no large groups. I'm not sure I totally understand your question. It, you knew what was proposed.
Well, I, I guess, what I was trying to understand is I thought I heard in some of the discussion, and I apologize for not being able to be there in person, but I thought what I heard in the discussion a few minutes ago was that you needed to have these large crowds for the wine, for the winery in order to, to make the business sustainable. I thought that's what I had heard Pam say.
You still know, didn't say what that number is, I think.
That, that's right. And, and to be fair, and not to backtrack, no part of the three applications that were filed by the applicant ever contemplated limiting or addressing the farm winery because we understood that that was a permitted by right use. And so what you have is an applicant who is, as of July eighth, when I sent back a letter, and just to correct, the, the process that we had was the city's hosting a meeting on June twenty-eighth, I think. Send us your list of needs before that, which we did. And the community also sent a letter and we sat down and had a very robust discussion. And then we were told, please resubmit, you know, you've heard these things, submit more conditions to respond to that, which we did. And we'll have another meeting, which we were teed up to have. And then we were said, we were told, nobody wants to meet with you. They, they reject your conditions. So it hasn't been, there's only so much negotiating against oneself that can happen. Um, but I say all of that to say, the farm winery, I hear the concerns and I hear your desire to hold on to land use, the stick, if you will, to, um, address that. I think that you have an applicant who had proposed in our July eighth conditions limitations on the farm winery. It sounds like they didn't go as far as you would like. And the opportunity to address that and go back to the drawing board and consider it after we've heard respectfully what you've proposed and think about it from an operations standpoint, we would like that opportunity. Uh, we don't want to waste anyone's time.
Can I ask a good question?
Yeah.
What were those numbers? Do you remember?
Uh, I think it was a hundred. I, I, I could go back and look.
Only, only reason I ask, I mean, we talked about parking, we talked about a couple other issues. Sounds like we were close until fifty. And then that was kind of an impasse on your side. Is there, you know, is that-
I think ours was, I think ours was a hundred. I deserve the right for her to go back and check. But as I recall, what we proposed-
Was it a, but, but let me, we were just to go back to something I want to make sure we don't lose sight of. And that was when you portrayed what the winery and tasting room was gonna look like when you pursued your alcohol consumption permit, was it was gonna be ten people by appointment?
I didn't even have-
Ten people by appointment?
Well, I don't know. I don't have, I mean, I haven't gone back and looked at that. And, and I'd have to go back and to, to see it again. That was two thousand nineteen. I don't recall exactly. But what I do know is at that time, I didn't have any customers. I didn't have, I mean, it was new. Things progressed. I mean, if I were to stay at that, I, I wouldn't have a business. So it wasn't that I'm being deceptive or trying to change what was originally there. Things just naturally progressed.
But, but please understand where we're struggling is that when you go back to the May meeting, there was a permit granted based on the portrayal of what the winery was gonna be. And we can quote you, your own words that were read earlier this evening, again, it said, ten people signing up on a Thursday by appointment. And then we went to concerts with two hundred and fifty people. That was a way too intense use for the neighborhood. And now we're talking about a hundred or fifty. So you, can you appreciate our frustration a little bit with that?
I do. And with respect, I would like the opportunity to, for myself, because I haven't and you have had the opportunity to go back to look at that hearing, but that also, uh, to Mr. Gerard's point, is a liquor licensing matter. And, and it has not been, until we proposed the sort of omnibus solution three weeks ago, the farm winery use has not been part of this application process. And so you have an applicant who, I, I do understand the frustration. I think that staff and everyone else so bucketed these uses that it made it difficult to understand the total intensity of the operation of the farm. And so the July eighth proposed conditions were an attempt to say, here's the totality, including the farm winery. I, I understand your position. I need to go back and look.
Ms. Poe, can I make a point, please? Look, and, and Mayor, I have to respectfully disagree. When, when we talk about what's transpired and we say, well, we've gotten rid of the concerts, et cetera, et cetera. So then we're basically, it comes across as in the clear in terms of nuisance to the neighbors. And I, I don't think we are. And I think that if we go up to a hundred people at the winery, plus you still have the activity on the equestrian side, you're looking at more cars potentially than you have legitimate parking spaces for. So then we're back to the issues that have been the rub from the get-go. So I would, would hope that you could huddle, or if, if we're going to pursue this tonight, that you would rethink that because that's a very high number on a, on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That, that's, I, I'm guessing from what we've heard from the neighbors this whole time, it's, it's, it's too much.
Is it safe to say though, that we hear from the neighbors is when there's a huge event and music and whatnot? And, and here again, let me say this in, in, in respect to everybody here. And we're not putting you on the stand. I mean, don't feel like when we say, well, you only said this and you're changing your mind. Anybody's had a business or anything in your life, you know it changes. We didn't know what to expect. We approved a winery thinking something, it's different. The neighbors didn't know what to expect. They were probably okay with it and until bigger events and more traffic and all that. So right now, we're kind of, we have a second chance to look at it and everybody's- Right now we're kind of, we have a second chance to look at it in everybody's perspective. So. I think that's kind of where, where, you know, we're trying to not force you out. Give you something workable, but also protect our neighbors and, and protect our, you know, our, our citizens as a whole too. So. It, it's a, it's a tough, tough situation now. So. I know it's hard to say, well, you know, I said 10 now, but is it, is really the number 100 or is it 75 or do we split the difference or something like that? We're all in this, you know, trying to figure out what the right thing is.
The issue for the people in the vicinity becomes, let's say you have a hundred people and you have 50 on the other side doing the equestrian thing. It comes to the end of the hour and people are ready to go. I mean, that's, that's the time for the, the police. You know, it's another blue light at the intersection and you got all this activity. And, and that is not what we've heard for months and months. My, you just forget this thing about the big events. That's still a lot of people leaving at one time. It's the equivalent of a concert. So if you could find a way that you can negotiate that piece of it. I think that then we, we have opportunity to find common ground. Um, because that's problematic. It's a lot of people. That's a lot of stuff.
And all due respect, I agree too, but I just don't know exactly what that is, the number of 25, 50 or 75. And I don't know that you can, you know. We're coming, is, is ours, is the number we came up with or somebody came up with thinks it's right, but.
You know, at the end of the day.
Somebody has to pick a number at some point.
Well, okay, but here's the other thing. At the end of the day.
Remember too, I'm sorry, Carol. What you remember too is at the end of the day, the, the intent of this is to find a business. To accommodate a business that's already existing that can also coexist in Milton with what we call a very special place, Milton-esque. And, and so. It, it got too intense. So it wasn't Milton-esque. And so that's when you got the pushback from the community.
That's when we pulled the third application that was what caused that.
Okay, and, and I hear you, but this has the, this has the opportunity to be the same with the volumes about which you're speaking. And so you, you're, you're still at a threshold of troublesome, 150 people and all those cars leaving. In a short time span. It's no different that in a concert. Yeah, maybe not the noise, but et cetera. That's a lot of commotion.
Let me offer something that if, you know. Let's say, I'm trying to be practical about this, the birthday parties, equestrian things and whatnot. I know they overlap. But in reality, would those things, people be leaving at five o'clock mainly, four o'clock, six o'clock? Would the wine tasting be more coming at five, maybe leaving at eight? I think the number was eight or whatever. You know, and is there a number, you know, let's say, I know you might've mentioned a hundred. We've had 50 is, is 75 a number on that? And then you adjust the number with the others. They leave at a different time. I'm just looking for. Possible solutions to make a reasonable decision. If not, we could, not, we either need to.
Well, we.
Agree to defer.
Offer up a critical consideration that you, I, I like where you're going with that, Joe. But here's a, here's a, here's a part that's not movable. And that is that the consumption on premises is still confined to the tasting room and adjacent, immediately adjacent area. That does, that's not negotiable. That's a, that's a requirement.
Right.
It's not negotiable.
A, an operational and a.
But hear me out on the rest of it. So right now. You have until the end of September with your existing tasting room. That has to come to an end because that is the, that's where that ends. And you proposed a temporary tasting room that was going to be about 600 square feet. And you'd be the, in a proper, a, a patio immediately adjacent to that. So how many people, you can't put a hundred people in a 600 square foot tasting room and a patio immediately adjacent to it. Because of what you've been doing historically where they're wandering into the green area, that, you can't do that. That's not under the tasting room and immediately adjacent area. That's not available to you regardless.
I don't know how it is with, with the city. I don't recall all that, but I do know that that whole area, green area going down to that first vineyard is bonded by the federal government and state government as winery. Now, I'm not trying to argue your point because I don't recall what was said at that and we would need to go back.
Well, but, but to be clear, your understanding of what the definition is and what has been stated as the definition, that trumps. The date, stated definition is tasting room and immediately adjacent area. And if you propose the 600 square foot tasting room in the immediate adjacent area, that's not going to accommodate 100 people. After your existing temper, your existing tasting room comes to an end, the end of September. You've, you've got to scramble pretty quick to get up your 300 square foot tasting room. Plus your immediately adjacent area. Otherwise you can't have. 20 people there because you can't accommodate them in that area because the lawn that's defined as a winery area. Is for other wine, winery related agrarian activities, not for the consumption.
I don't think we're prepared to respond to that.
Well, but it's an important consideration that you have to think about because your, your existing tasting room is coming to an end. You have to have a solution. You, right now you said to us that the larger tasting room, you hadn't contemplated 3,000 square feet. You had at one point contemplated 8,000 and 12,000. But those are not happening anytime soon.
And not for tasting.
I know, right? Would the, would the tasting room have existed within that?
Yes, and I think we proposed a maximum of 1,500 feet.
Okay, so let's, let's work with 1,500 square feet. As this, this is a, for, for, for a working example. Do you see where I'm trying to go with this?
I understand your example.
Cause your numbers aren't going to mesh because you can't put 100 people in a 1,500 square foot tasting room. And an immediately adjacent area for consumption. Your business model doesn't work. Under that. That's, that's not something we're imposing upon you. That's a, that's a something you signed up for when you got your consumption permit.
And we'll look at the square footage for that area.
That, that's a, that's a, that's a problem that we may not be able to overcome.
So I think we need, we need to know the interpretation, you know, of, of the boundary that we. Allowed the consumption on premises for. And if that is attainable. It, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I mean, the, the, the boundary is, is what's set forth in the code and that's that immediately adjacent. And I know what that is and I think I can better explain what it isn't.
Okay.
Right? But, but I will also tell you that. The city as a whole has shown some forbearance and grace with this establishment, and I think that's been reciprocated, not maybe in, in some ways that some of the citizens want. But there has been sort of a detente while we work through this use permit. And I think everybody from the city's perspective understood that when this matter was decided one way or the other. There was likely going to be sort of a regulatory reckoning. But that makes a lot more sense after this process than before it. I hope you, the council understands what I'm trying to say. But dependent upon what occurred this evening, it's, I'm very aware that I need to get with the city manager and our regulatory staff and I'll be dealing with Ms. Smith and Mr. Pacilius and I'll be. But we didn't know what the outcome of this was going to be first. And so I think even Ms. Smith would agree, there has been discussions and there have been forbearance. While these use permits went forward, so we can have the will of the council and some of these land use back. So for in term, for, in terms of a process standpoint.
Sure.
Last thing we want to have happen tonight is to find an impasse and get to a denial. Because a denial then also prohibits them from coming back before us for a year, correct? On a land use like that?
On the same, substantially the same application.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. That means they can't operate for a year.
Well, I don't know that it means that. I mean, again, this use permit is pertaining, not pertaining to the winery. Now that is. Broke into it because of the amalgamation of uses. I understand that. Um. Anyway, I mean, we're getting into an area there that I really.
Can do we, but if we approve this use permit, do we lose any regulatory control over the farm winery?
Well, I mean, we're, it's a difficult question to answer. Let me tell you why. Because, because the applicant is showing a willingness. To want to, to want to work with you all to blend those in. So when you say, are we giving up anything? Have we denied? Yeah, a little because they're willing to, to, to have those be condensed and consolidated and collapsed. But I also believe that we have formidable regulatory authority in addition to our land use controls on what AG1 looks like, but also our alcohol licensure is very powerful as well. And that can, that could affect things like where you can consume, further tightening that down. That could, that could go to volume. A volume of alcohol that can be consumed. That could go to hours of operation. Sure. All sorts of alcohol codes regulate that. So. But again, I, you know, I was, I was optimistic and I still am that, that there might be a sort of a symbiotic coming together here.
Yeah.
That might make the regulatory landscape more amicable than adversarial.
So previously I mentioned a deferral because I don't think that we are, I mean, I would hope that with that. But have much more intense discussion and I can appreciate that both sides in the audience would be very frustrated with that. But if it is a shot at an amicable agreement that works for both sides. Um, I think that would be outstanding. And furthermore, I would really hate to see. Uh, this body have to do something punitive with an alcohol license because I think that takes us into a different realm. And takes us into an adversarial relationship, which I don't think is, um, what either of us want. I'm just guessing. So, um, that would be my hope. And my colleagues, what do you think?
So because of potential alcohol use, we're denying the right. To operate as a birthday party venue and as all the other things that are on the list.
We're deferring. We're deferring so that they have an opportunity to negotiate quantity. It's really.
That's what we originally deferred it for.
I know.
Okay, so we didn't, so it didn't happen. Okay, it, they don't have time. So it didn't happen. Okay, so what are we going to do about it? Force it?
What we, what we didn't have at the time that we now have something is.
Right. We put something together.
More accommodating, well, let me say differently, that, that was more palatable.
Right.
By some of the members of council, by based on the discussion I've heard this evening. That's a step forward.
It is a step forward.
We didn't have any of that the last time. We had, we had two parties that were not, there was no meeting in the middle. There was an attempt to meet in the middle tonight by, with what Councilmember Bentley put forward, but if it's still unacceptable with the applicant, we're closer.
Yeah, and.
Maybe.
So let me ask this question.
You know what, for example, my limit is. That's too high. And I, you know, that's a non-starter for me. So I think you're hearing from everybody.
Let me answer this question. If we're going to defer this item, do we defer the next one as well? Because, you know, it's the same open door, right? If we approve anything without clamping down on what the use is, we somehow lost an opportunity.
Well, or the question I was going to ask, since it sounds like we were getting somewhat close other than the, maybe the number, but if. You know, if we could eliminate all the negative, the huge negative issues. And then deal with, maybe deal with the numbers of the alcohol consumption with enforcement based on our code. Which even, let's just say, and I'm just, I'm not saying we're going to pass this or, but let's say we set a hundred. And applicant was okay with it, the council approved it, then also you got to live by the code too. And maybe it's only 85 or 65 or, or, or whatever, you know, based on. People coming and going. I mean, is that a way to enforce it on, on this particular issue? And that way we at least. Could approve the, the, the uses, you know, the agricultural uses they had been using, but still have some control later to make sure it doesn't get excessive. Again, with the numbers.
That, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's always, that's always an option. But what I'm hearing is, and this is going back to Councilmember Moore's point. Is I think everyone learned something this evening and sometimes actually being in front of the tribunal that will make the decision and hearing their mind in a collective way. And be very illuminating to those who would be regulated. And so I suspect there is now at least an appreciation of where the council's prepared to go, which did not exist two weeks ago. So I do think that is a powerful tonic that has been applied this evening. Uh, from the standpoint of the regulatory alcohol code and then the land use code, yeah, they still have to work together. They still have to fit together. I suspect if you meet or we have further discussions with the applicant. They are going to want at least some semblance of finality. Uh, as part of this process. But again, that just remains to be seen. I think they will come in, however, eyes wide open with where the council's prepared to go on this.
So what would the process look, I know obviously we can defer it. I mean, I hate to do, you know. Spend a lot of time, everybody in the audience and folks that were here earlier and applicants had, you know, spent a ton of time. So. Deferring it's not a palatable option, but. If it makes the most sense, what is, you know, what is that likelihood? Obviously some of the points that Councilmember Bentley brought up. You guys can digest some of those. You guys can, well, staff can talk about them and all that and the staff come back to us and say. Here's something kind of that, you know, we think makes sense that both sides, you know, how, how, how do you envision that? Again, because we've already deferred it once.
It, well, yeah, I mean, deferral obviously is just procedural and that's just a matter of setting it to whatever the meeting, the council wants to go to. But in the meantime, what would need to happen is, is candidly, given that Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Bentley obviously put some time into this, somebody. Who, 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 who has the interest in putting together those conditions would need to get with the applicant and their attorney and, and pound through them. Um, and, and, and bring something back that they think that therefore the applicant would be in support of and, and maybe not, but maybe it's close enough. Is the point, but somebody needs to, need to take the initiative.
All right. So I will open up for a motion of some sort of action. Approve, approve the changes, deny or, or make a motion for a deferral.
All right, I'm going to make a motion. Mr. Mayor and Council, make a motion that we defer for further negotiation with the applicant. Uh, let's see, um, section 64 dash 1797 in print D. And section 64 dash 1797 in print E.
Okay, do you have, did you say it before for a time period?
August 2nd. All right, so I'll say, do you want me to say it again?
Difference with normally have a zone in on the second? Does that matter? Okay.
Do I need to restate?
It is.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I, I, Ken said I didn't have to restate.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, have a motion for a deferral till the next meeting. And I apologize to everybody in advance just for the time, but. I'm Councilmember Cochrane and I, Councilmember Bentley.
Any discussion? Just ask that in this course of time. Number one, we take action, actions to have some discussion collectively. How, when or where that takes place, we'll look forward to arranging. I also ask with all due respect, to please be a good neighbor. So that we don't have issues to address because you haven't been a good neighbor between now and the next hearing. Please be considerate.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm abstaining just for the record. I can't feel like I could vote either way.
We got four minutes to hear the second.
Yeah, well, actually.
No, I just deferred both of them. You just voted on both.
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did. She announced that. People are wide awake. Come on.
Ken, are we good on that procedure wise?
I am. I mean, that means that when the next one comes up, when it, when it is deferred to, we will have the, we don't have to have the hearing to get on this one, right? Cause we just, we've already done the hearing discussion only, but when that, the next one comes up, we will have to have the hearing on that. We haven't had. That's perfectly in order though. That's fine. Candidly, we're three minutes away from having.
All right. Okay. I don't, we don't have any staff report, so. Um, I'll open up for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.